Good morning, everyone. My name is Mike Terry. I'd like to welcome you to this regular monthly meeting of the Cobb Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is an advisory board appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and it's our job to investigate every zoning request and land use permit request that comes to the county. We then make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, but it's their duty and their right to make the final decisions and the binding decisions, and that will be done at their hearing, which is generally two weeks after this. And their next hearing is August the 16th. So if you're here for any case today, you'll need to be back here in this chamber on the 16th and do it all over again. So that's the rule. It's our custom to invite various members of the local clergy to open our meetings with an appropriate brief comment or a prayer, and it's my pleasure at this time to introduce to you Father Papa Giorgio from the Holy Transfiguration Greek Orthodox Church, and we're glad to have you here this morning. When, where's our Officer of the Day? We don't have an officer here yet. Okay, we'll figure that out. Jason, would you want to lead our pledge? When the Father is through with his prayer, I'll ask Jason Campbell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. When you see Jason stand, if you would stand as you're able, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please start for the prayer, too.
You sure can. Start with a prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly King, comforted the Spirit of truth, present everywhere and filling all things, the treasure of blessings and the giver of life, come and dwell in us and cleanse us from every stain and save our souls, good one. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mordor have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mordor have mercy on us. Holy God, holy mighty, holy mordor have mercy on us. We thank, we offer thanksgiving to you, Lord, for all your gifts and blessings. We humbly come to you and ask that you may send upon us your heavenly Spirit to enlighten our hearts and our minds. Give us of your wisdom and knowledge, help us to know your will for your people whom we serve, guide us in all our decisions to do what is best for them, help us to shine with your love and compassion, grant us your peace and your love. For glory and fight is your name, of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, now and always and unto the ages of ages. Amen.
Amen. Jason?
I plead the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, gentlemen. First on our agenda this morning will be the consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and the zoning staff have fully investigated, and we have found that all the pertinent issues have been resolved and handled, and for which there's no known opposition. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, this is John raising his hand to my left, will read these cases into the record, and he'll ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak to or speak in opposition to any of those cases. If there is, we may elect to pull these cases from the consent agenda, and we would then hear them in their regular numerical sequence. Next on the agenda will be those cases that were either held or continued from a previous hearing, and then lastly will come the list of our regular cases. We have quite a few of them today. Again, those will occur in their regular numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked to come forward and identify themselves, be sworn in and present their case. Then the opposition will be asked likewise to come forward, identify themselves, and be sworn in by our Officer of the Day, Mr. Jason Campbell. Jason, raise your hand. Jason's on the front row, so you'll present yourself to him, and he'll take care of the swearing-in. He also has a sign-in book that you will need to put your signature on that assures the correct spelling of your name for the record. So be sure you do that. I would remind everyone that we do have a rule. We like to enforce it as best we can, and that is that each side, both for and against, has 10 minutes collectively to make their case. That's not 10 minutes per person. That's 10 minutes total for per side. If we go a little over, that's okay, but we like to try and stick to that rule as we can so we can move forward with all these cases. Remember when you're speaking, that is not a time for rebuttal. That's not your time to ask us questions. It's time for you to make your case. We may, though, call you back up to answer some questions that we might have for you. So that's how it will work. John, do you have any other information for us or any other instructions?
Yes, I do, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is one case on the printed agenda today which has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. That's rezoning case Z-59, CCIC Incorporated. That case was withdrawn and will not be heard today or at the VOC hearing in two weeks. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-18, Open Land Enterprises Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the September 8th, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-18 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-58, Lidle, U.S. That case was continued until the September 8th Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-58 would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-68, Cal Atlantic Group Incorporated. That case was continued by the staff until the September 8th, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-68 would not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-70, Front Door Communities LLC, a Georgia limited liability company, was continued by the staff until the September 8th, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-70 will not be heard today. Addition, Mr. Chairman, Board, and people in the audience, there are two cases on today's consent agenda which are being continued by the staff and will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-61, Victor Okeriki. That case was continued by the staff today and will not be heard today. It will be heard at the September 8th, 2016 Planning Commission zoning hearing. Secondly, rezoning case Z-65, Olimpec, U.S.A., LLC by its attorney Anderson Tate and Carr PC. That case was continued by the staff until the September 8th, 2016 zoning hearing, so Z-65 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please mute the volume. Ringing of the phones does interfere with the broadcast and presentations, so if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one request for an early head count today. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z-47, Pebble Brook Development LLC? Please stand and raise your hands. Let the record show that 32 people here opposed to rezoning case Z-47. I do want to remind the opposition to have one or two people stay here if you're going to leave to represent the opposition.
John, was that 30 or 32?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Thank you.
Can I get a show of people here who are in support of rezoning case Z-47? Please raise your hands. In support? Let the record show there are three people here in support of rezoning case Z-47. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Please go ahead, John.
Cobb County Planning Commission's zoning hearing consent agenda for August 2nd, 2016. Rezoning case Z-62, Venture Homes, request rezoning from R-20 to RA-5 for the purpose of single-family subdivision in land lots 549 and 562 of the 19th District. The property is located on the easterly side of Milford Church Road, east of Powder Springs Road. Staff recommends approval to the RA-5 zoning district subject to the farm conditions. Revised site plan received by the zoning division on July 12th, 2016 with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Landscape plan to be reviewed and approved by the county arborist. Water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Fire department comments or recommendations. Stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-62? Let the record show we have one person opposed.
Let me just ask you, person opposed, do you wish to stand up and speak in opposition? Do you have?
Yeah.
You do? Okay.
So we'll pull that off and set.
Yeah, let's pull it off and let's hear that case. So that'll be pulled off the consent agenda.
Okay. Rezoning case Z-63, Yosef Kagan, request a rezoning from R-12 to R-12 with stipulations for the purpose of single-family residential in land lot 827 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Johnson Ferry Road, north of Lake Ridge Court. Staff recommends approval to the R-12 zoning district subject to the following conditions: Site plan received by the zoning division on June 1st, 2016 with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. All previous zoning conditions from rezoning case Z-26 of 2015 not in conflict with this approval. Water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Fire department comments or recommendations. Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-63? Let the record show that two people opposed, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we need, we need to pull that off, consent agenda. We'll hear that case as well.
Rezoning case Z-69, Donna C. Jennings and Gary A. Jennings, request rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of retail in land lot 637 of the 16th District. Property is located on the southwest corner of Canton Road and Blackwell Lane. Staff recommends approval to the NRC zoning district subject to neighborhood retail uses and professional office zoning. No automotive repair or automotive uses, no outdoor storage or outdoor display of merchandise, allowance of parking variance to 29 parking spaces, subject to the Canton Road Design Guidelines. Water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. And no contractors as a special exception use. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-69? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LEP 15, Brian C. Young, request a land use permit for the purpose of creating crafts to be sold at other locations not in the home in land lot 225 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Middleton Place, north of Drayton Hall Drive. Staff recommends approval for 12 months, subject to any code enforcement complaints that the applicant has been found guilty of will result in an automatic revocation of this land use permit. No employees, no customers or clients come to the home, no deliveries or signs. Water and sewer division comments or recommendations. Fire department comments or recommendations. Stormwater management division comments or recommendations. And Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 15? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Okay, are there any amendments to the consent agenda items, Kristi?
I'd like to add one, if we can do that, Z-64.
Is it Z-69?
Is it? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I think it's Z-64.
Oh, you want to add? Okay.
I'd like to add that to the consent.
All right, let me go ahead and read it in, and then you can read your conditions in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Rezoning case Z-64, Stratus Property Group LLC, request a rezoning from GC to RM8 for the purpose of multifamily residential, which is student housing, in land lot 61 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Shiler Road, south of Benton Res. Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-64? Let the record show there's no one opposed. It's back to the Board to make a recommendation on it.
Okay, are there any, are there any other changes or amendments to the other items on the consent agenda?
For Z-64, I just needed to add, in addition to all the staff comments and recommendations, I'd also like to add that the district commissioner approved the architecture.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes, additions, amendments? Okay, need a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'm sorry.
Did you need to add that letter for Venture Homes? Oh, thank you.
Okay, we have one other amendment. Go ahead, Gault.
Oh, we pulled that off. Sorry about that.
I didn't say, I thought that was off.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of Z-62, 63, and we're adding Z-64 to the consent as presented.
As presented, okay. Any other changes, alteration, discussion? All in favor? Consent agenda? Whoops, I'm sorry. There we go. Got it. Thank you. Okay, John?
Okay, all those folks on consent agenda, if you were approved, you're free to go. Just come back in two weeks. Moving into the continued case agenda. Rezoning case Z-40, Elite Auto Collision and Sales, request rezoning from ALI to CRC for the purpose of a collision and service center in land lot 46 of the 18th District. Property is located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, east of Lake Shore Drive. Representatives, the applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-40? Let the record show there's two people opposed. All those listed addressed to Board, please come forward to be sworn in.
While we're waiting on Mr. Sams to have his last cup of coffee here, there were two items that were added at the last minute to the consent agenda, Z-61 and Z-65, so if you aren't here for those two cases, those will not be heard today. They were continued. The reason being, the letters that need to go out to folks that live within 1,000 feet did not arrive in a timely fashion, so we felt the need to continue those, and we'll hear them next time.
I was anticipating you taking Z-47 out of turn and hearing it first with a number of people, so I apologize, Mr. Chairman, for the, for the dawdling on my part. Good morning. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. I represent Elite Auto Collision Sales concerning this application for rezoning. This is an application that's been continued on a couple of different occasions. My firm represents Elite in connection with this application. My name's Garvis Sams of the firm of Sams, Lark, and Huff &amp; Ballin. I have with me today Mr. Kevin Schuler, who is the owner, the manager, the operator of Elite. Also, we have with us today Mr. Victor Bell, who's the chief officer of technical and mechanical operations. And where are they sitting? Stand up, raise your hands. All right, on the front row. So they'll be there to help me with any technical issues that, technical questions I may not be able to, to answer or respond to. I've handed out to you a couple of things. Both of them are important, but one of them is clearly more important than the other. The first one is a consent regarding the rezoning application of Elite Auto, and it's on the back of that, the front of it are petitions signed by each and every contiguous neighbor to this property. On the back of it, the very last page, is a legend that shows the position of where those people live. Unfortunately, I realized when I made the copy, mine were outlined in yellow highlight, which didn't translate to yours, but I'm going to get the clerk, if I can, if I can get this original back, to, to just pass it down the board where each of you can see that the corresponding exhibit certainly matches the signatures that we have of all of the contiguous property owners to this, to this development. We think that's key. We think that's the key that Commissioner Porter and certainly Commissioner Cupid have focused upon during all rezoning and entitlement issues. The other handout we've got is, is another compilation of information that shows a number of different things, more exclusively or more specifically. It shows the various locations, the three locations that Elite has had since their inception in 2004, and how they've taken the buildings that they have, and then how they retrofitted and rehabbed them into the, into the buildings that they, that they have today. And today, they have one, one heck of a building. It's, it was in November of 2015, Elite filed what's called an other business application. Elite went to staff and said, "Look, this was zoned back in 1999 for light industrial for furniture use only." It was Bolton Furniture Company, as I recall. It was then called Bankhead Highway, not Veterans Memorial. Since that time, the furniture store's been out of business, but it was zoned light industrial specific to furniture sales only. And obviously, my clients are not in that business. At the time, the light industrial property was in an industrial compatible area. Inexplicably, a couple of years ago, the county planners at the behest of the policymakers, me and the Board of Commissioners, changed the future land use map designations on this section of the Veterans Highway Memorial Corridor and changed it to a neighborhood activity center. So imagine the existing buildings there of a commercial or industrial bent that are stuck and become non-conforming because of the change in the future land use map designation. After filing this other business application, Elite was finally told, "Well, gosh, this is not a minor amendment. This is something that needs to go through a full rezoning." That was filed in February, and then, once they found that out based upon some, I won't say faulty information, but perhaps a misunderstanding from the zoning division, they withdrew their application for another business application and filed its application for rezoning through me. Since then, I'd only have received a favorable staff's recommendation for approval, resounding recommendation, if you look through all the Steinberg criteria, but in addition to that, as you see in front of you, we have signatures, the acquiescence and concurrence of those people who could be most affected by this, and that's the people that are the contiguous. And when I say contiguous, I mean right up against this, most of them living on Lake Shore Drive. So we think that Kevin Schuler and also Mr. Bell has done extraordinary job getting out into the community, alerting them and informing them about the nature of the business. Interestingly, the opposition we've received from the Mayleton Improvement Coalition, all the way back to February, when this was in the context of another business application, hasn't really changed. They're, they're saying the same things they said over six months ago, notwithstanding the iterations of the site plan and the stipulation letters which have taken place addressing and resolving the concerns articulated primarily by Commissioner Porter and by the Mayleton Improvement Coalition. Elite, if you don't know the business, it can best be described as a, as a high-end collision repair shop which specializes in multi-level automotive collision repair, catering to a diverse clientele base. Now, break that down into reality, what that means, that they like to, to work on high-end cars, Maybacks, Mercedes, Porsches, Ferraris, Lamborghinis. There's not an abundance of those in South Cobb, so their clientele consists of a lot of professional ballplayers who live in the metropolitan Atlanta area and do have the money that perhaps I or you may not have to buy these type of automobiles, but they also do about 60 to 70% of their work is, okay, Judy can buy a Lamborghini, but, but 70%, 60 to 70% of their work is based on insurance industry referrals that comes, comes to them. That's the, that's the bulk, which is interesting because it started out, instead of 80/20 insurance industry, started out with just the opposite demographic since they have moved to Cobb County. Elite offers direct repair work, obviously. They're very responsive. As I mentioned, staff's recommended approval, and it bears noting what staff has said. The rezoning proposal will permit a use that is suitable in the context of existing development. Now, see, staff, they can look forward into the future, but they also have to look into what's reality, what's now, what poses the best transition for the future of the Veterans Memorial Corridor. Staff says Elite's proposal will not have an adverse impact upon the usability of adjacent or nearby properties, not only the preponderance of which, almost the totality of which are either industrial or commercial. Staff said the proposal will not result in a use which would cause an adverse impact upon the county's infrastructure. Well, that's clear because they don't affect AMP and peak hours in terms of traffic circulation. They don't provide children for the school system. It's a benign type of business in terms of infrastructure and the county services. It also says, staff, I mean, that Elite's request for rezoning is appropriate because of its positioning to adjacent industrial uses, and that Elite's proposed location on a major thoroughfare arterial supports Elite's request for rezoning. There's not a single tenuous or adverse component of staff's recommendation for approval. It's unbridled. We were buoyed by, by getting that because staff stepped outside the box a little bit, knowing that it changed from industrial compatible, like I said, inexplicably, to a neighborhood activity center, but staff recommended the context of development in which Elite is in. And by the way, this is a 30,000 square foot building, more or less, which was used for the Bolton Furniture Store. It was built in phases and is shown on the site plan on Track A, as you can see here along the front edge of the property. We originally filed just Track A. We came back and we filed an amendment to the application adding Track B, so we'd have the totality of the site. However, there are no immediate plans to develop Track B, which is a tough piece of property. Originally in 1999, when I handled the rezoning for Bolton Furniture, we did show some development back there in the detention pond, but for right now, Mr. Schuler and Mr. Bell are going to have to phase their operations from an economic perspective. We have submitted a stipulation letter, as we typically do in this, to set aside the parameters within which Elite will work. All of the work, I repeat, all of the work is going to be done on the inside of this 30,000 square foot building. The architectural style and composition will be as handed out to you with the various stipulation letters. If you see what the building looked like, say, six months ago, it was not only dark, it was dank and deserted and dilapidated. Well, they paved the parking lot, they, they put up new signage, they painted the building, they striped the parking lot. They've begun things that some people wouldn't begin, knowing that they may or may not get this, this rezoning, but nevertheless, they've made vast improvements to a, to an area that was sorely in need, in need of that. So you see the architectural style and composition of the building. The scope of their operations will include the performance of light and medium body work, a collision shop which will have automobiles, utility compressors and other tools of that nature, and vehicle storage on one of those. I've run out of time, Mr. Chairman. I'll wrap up as quickly as I can. We have covered the hours of operation in here. They, they service between 90 to 100 cars per month, and they've had a very successful round of business. The interior workshop area, this is very important because the way the property's configured, the interior workshop area will have walls which constitute a double wall system, including double drywall system, porous, expanded polypropylene, acoustical panels, known as silencers, and this will be installed in order to ameliorate any perceived adverse impact because we've done decibel checking, and we don't find that any of the decibels, even in the absence of these ameliorative sound attenuation devices, work quite fine. We've covered the hours of, of delivery and that type thing. No cars will be delivered except during office hours. At the end of the business day, all cars will be brought inside. The rear parking area will be surfaced, and we think in all respects, particularly in light of staff's recommendation for approval, and even more particularly and even more importantly, in light of the support of the contiguous neighbors, that's the people whose back door we are at. This is an important rezoning and something that will help revitalize the sorely needed steps revitalizing the Veterans Memorial Highway. In closing, just let me, let me say this, that Elite is committed to this. It's a, it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking for a firm which has proven itself over the past 12 years in Buckhead, in Dorville, and now in Cobb County. If you have any questions of me, if you have any questions of Mr. Bell, they're here, as am I. And so for those reasons, consistent with your staff's recommendation for approval, the consistency with the future land use map, we do ask that you, as a planning commission, recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the application be approved as we've presented it to you today. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, we're available to respond to any questions. You were the... You or the commission may have.
Garvis is earning his money today. Thank you.
Sir?
You earned your money today. Went over by two minutes, so we'll add that time to the opposition in case they need it. Let's hear from the opposition at this time, please.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the zoning committee chairman for the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and I can agree with Mr. Sam's about one thing right off the bat, and that is that the basis of our opposition to this application has not changed since its original incarnation as an other business agenda item last year. First and foremost at the top of that list is that this does not conform to the future land use map. The rear property is located in medium density residential, which, as you can see, makes a great deal of sense since it's surrounded by R-20 zoning right now and RA-5 to the east. And the front parcel is in the NAC, the Neighborhood Activity Center, as is all of the adjacent commercial property. It was located in this NAC when Mr. Schuler bought it. An auto body shop and the CRC zoning it requires does not fit into a NAC and certainly not into medium density residential category. Any way you look at this, it negatively impacts the single-family homes that surround it. The county's ordinance, with good reason, requires a 35-foot buffer between CRC and residential. The west side of this building is only 20 or 25 feet from the residential property, and all of that width is taken up by the alley, so no buffer is possible. Not only is there no buffer, but the noisiest, busiest part of the operations would be in this area, in that tiny courtyard where the site plans call for a dumpster, deliveries and vehicles to be moved into and out of the building. That's also where the doors will be open when this happens, and those compressors, paint, paint machines and, and other equipment used in body repair, the noise will escape. There's no getting around that. My husband has a small home compressor, compressor in our garage with the garage door down, our, on our detached garage, 30 feet from the house, all the doors and windows closed in the house. I could hear that little Craftsman compressor come on. As you can see from the, from the GIS map, there are single-family homes all the way around both these parcels. With expansion into the, into the rear parcel in the future, you could see that granting this request would bring, would open the door for a body shop in the backyard of nearly 15 homes. Cobblestone Creek subdivision is located directly to the east of the rear parcel. You've received a letter of opposition from their HOA. They also suffer from excess stormwater runoff from many of the businesses in this area, and, and this property has no detention, so any additional impervious surface on this property, even, even the small repaving, is bound to intensify the impact for these homes. Additionally, I will pass along to the clerk a petition with the names of more than 40 homeowners in the immediate area who opposed the application last fall when it was an other business agenda item. There's been no change in the application since then, other than to add the large parcel in the rear, making it even more of a threat to the, to the neighborhood than before. Another issue with this application is that the site plans are inconsistent and inadequate. The application was submitted with a drawing from DGM dated April 13th, 2016. This is the latest of several revisions we've seen over the year that this application and the other business agenda item have been pending. The stipulations letter contains an undated, unattributed drawing. On one, the alley is 20 feet wide, on the other, it's 25. The undated plan shows a dumpster, scrap area and car storage in the small rear court, as noted on the site plan. There are no dimensions for this area, no parking lines are marked. It's simply wishful thinking that a dumpster truck, delivery trucks and tow trucks will manage to work in this small space. The site is not suited for an automotive use. Whether the alley is 20 or 25 feet wide, it's hard to see how it can accommodate two-way traffic. One is the edge of, one side is the edge of the building and the other is a fence. That's the same fence that's up against the backyards of the houses along the side street. An essential feature of a body shop is moving cars from one place to another. Here, they would come from Veterans Memorial, down the alley, behind the houses and into the building. When this was a furniture store, it was different. Shoppers came to the front and parked, went in the front doors and shopped. Each customer did not drive to the back, as will be the case with each customer's car. The only traffic in the alley were deliveries of merchandise for sale, the deliveries, and the delivery stores' trucks leaving to take purchases to homes, which can be staged and scheduled. This alley is suited for limited retail, not for use as an essential integral feature of a business. Additionally, much has been made of the high-profile nature of ALLETE's customers. I can tell you from my own personal observations that owners of prestige and collectible cars do not move them around on the back of tow trucks. They're moved in enclosed trailers, often 18-wheelers with lifts inside. Vehicles like that cannot navigate in this tiny area. They will be unloading in the front parking lot or in the middle of Veterans Memorial. Lest anyone think that's a good idea, Cobb police were called in February to direct traffic around an 18-wheeler that had grounded its trailer using this parking lot. It took several hours for the tow trucks that service such large vehicles to come and free it so the traffic could again flow freely on Veterans Memorial. And lastly, I have to address some issues related to the applicant. I'm very sorry to have to do that because we pride ourselves on zoning the property, not the applicant. We never, ever want this to be personal. But ALLETE has been operating in our community for several years at another location. My July 27th letter includes a summary of the code enforcement history there, which is not pretty, nor is the property. Despite the interaction with code enforcement, here are Google Street View, view photos of this property. This is 2013. As you can see, the sign has not yet gone up, but it's been painted red, which was the signal that, that the use of the property had changed. We have parking on the grass and the, a vision of what's to come as far as the sort of cars that are worked on. Next is 2015. I should be pushing the red button. Okay, there we go. 2015, you'll see a variety of, of, of cars there, but one thing that is similar with all the cars is that they are, they're, we see no high-end cars, we see no movie production cars, we simply see wrecked cars, which is what we've been looking at at this corner for quite some time. And then in 2016, this is June of 2016, we've grown used to the barbecue operation on the corner. The car that you see to the left-hand side of the building tucked back up in there, in the woods, has been there for well over a year. So, it's sort of our feeling that if Mr. Schuler has, has grand plans for this new property, we would have seen it here in this property where he has been for the last several years. Code enforcement has also been called to the new location of 380 Veterans Memorial, where they've been, where ALLETE Auto has been operating continuously without a, a business license for much of the time or without an occupancy permit. None of this looks like a high-end or prestige clientele to us, which is another point we have to make. Cobb County has no distinction between a regular body shop where I might take my everyday car and a high-end body shop. A body shop is a body shop. If this property is an CRC for use as a body shop, then there's no way to enforce these promises of movie, movie set cars, collector cars and the rest. It's great to read about the plans from, for ALLETE's future, and we certainly wish Mr. Schuler well, but they're not the basis for a zoning decision. You've made and are making many zoning recommendations in this area. Later today, you will consider the SAE schools application. Their property is less than half mile east on Veterans. Timber Ridge, the Girl Scout camp, is accessed from Allen Road, just across from this property. Volunteer Ridge subdivision, which you've considered in the recent, in the recent past, is just across the, across the Veterans from the future site of the SAE school, and it is almost sold out. This area is changing, which is why the future land use map calls for neighborhood activity center and medium density residential, not the CAC required for a body shop. It's common to worry the government is only reactive and doesn't see into the future, but in this case, the county's plan is right on target. This is not the right place for a body shop. Help the thousands of families who have invested in this part of Mabelton by zoning our commercial corridors in ways that support and do not diminish our neighborhoods. Please deny this application for CRC zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else wishing to speak to Z-40? Come on up. Have you been sworn in? Okay, good. Come on up and give us your name, please.
Good morning, commission and, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Ray Thomas. I am the president of the Legacy Homeowners Association Advisory Board, and I'm also on the zoning committee for the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. I am here basically to speak to one particular issue. Now, Ms. Myers has already outlined many of the concerns that we have in the community, but there's one thing that I, I believe that's missing here in this case and the argument that has been going back and forth for some time. But I wanted to digress for just a moment to address a point that Mr. Sam's made in his presentation about the high-end vehicles that are being repaired at this particular location. I work for the largest automotive financing firm in the country, all right? We finance the, the only Aston Martin, Lamborghini, McLaren dealership here in Atlanta. We also finance the Ferrari and Maserati dealership in Alpharetta. So, I believe I know what high-end vehicles look like. Now, I've lived in this community now for about a year and a half, all right? And I drive by this particular, the existing location very frequently. I have never, never seen a high-end Maybach, a high-end Bentley, a high-end Maserati, nor any other high-end vehicles. And I think those pictures attested the type of vehicles that are being repaired at that point. Anyway, I, I just wanted to digress a minute on that point. Back to my original point, okay? I've lived in Fulton County and, in Gwinnett County, prior to moving to South Cobb a year and a half ago. I've been involved in, in, in zoning issues for many years. This case, to me, is one egregious example of complete disregard and respect for local ordinance. Why do I say that? I've never, well, there's one case in Gwinnett County that I've seen similar to this.
Ray, you are nearly out of time, so you need to wrap it up.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just wrap it up and just.
Please.
In this particular case, here's a applicant that's applying for rezoning so that he can put his business in that particular location. Yet, during the rezoning process, he's gone through, and as his attorney has pointed out, has basically retrofitted the building before getting approval. Now, if this is a type of precedence that we want to sit in South Cobb, I'm sorry, I'm against it. Anyway, that's all I've got. Thank you very much for, for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. We are out of time for this portion of the hearing. This is in District Four. Mr. Gault, this is yours. Why don't you lead our discussion, please?
Okay. Thank you very much. This is an interesting case, and there's a few things I'd like to, to comment on. I'll start with some of Mr. Sam's remarks. One was on the petition, he said all contiguous property owners, he has most, but not all. And actually, most of them aren't property owners that are on that petition. Most of them appear to be probably renters and not property owners. There's some that, that are questionable, but, and also missing, obviously, is Cobblestone Creek's contiguous and their HOA owns the property contiguous, and they've sent a letter of opposition, and they have 100 and, I believe, 151 homes within their community. And there is on their petition, one home within the community. It's not a contiguous home, but there's one home, but that still leaves 150 who didn't sign the petition. Regarding the future land use map, this is not a property that was changed a few years ago, when we changed a number of other sections of Veterans Memorial. This property was already in a neighborhood activity center. And regarding the stipulation letter, it did address some of my concerns, but certainly not all of my concerns and certainly not the biggest concerns. And with regard to sound panels, I believe Robin Meyer pointed out that the door where all the cars are going to go in and out, around the back in that courtyard, which is, points directly to the houses, so no matter how much you soundproof the building, if you're going to have the door open, and I can tell you, I've visited the property a few times while this application's been pending, and each time I go there, the door's wide open and they're working inside, even though they don't have a business license or certificate of occupancy or any right to be in there doing anything. In addition, they've been in there retrofitting the building and, and doing things without permits as well. You know, I do, I do agree that, that there's no 35-foot buffer possible on this property. You know, the, and I'm not sure whether the survey we have's correct or whether it's drawn properly on, on the GIS here, because the GIS seems to leave out the, the alley, which would be the only 20 to 25 feet space in there. Otherwise, the building's basically from one boundary to the other with no real access. So, you know, I would agree that this building's not well-suited for an automotive use. It was previously zoned light industrial, but it was primarily a retail furniture business with some light assemblies, my understanding. And the board of commissioners was very concerned about putting, I would say, about putting light industrial on it because they made it for the existing furniture business only. They didn't even want a different business coming into it with that kind of zoning. So, I would say there was, there was concern, you know, that they put that very limited approval on it before. I will note that in the smaller building in the back, I could see there's a very large crack where it looks like the foundation's falling away, so I think that building should be checked just for structural soundness. You know, and the, the applicant bought the building intending to use it for a, a body shop, but with any due diligence, one, you'd know that it was approved only for a, for the previous furniture business, but you'd also know that with light industrial, you're not allowed to have a body shop contiguous to residential. So, even just if it was wide-open light industrial zoning at the present, when he bought it, it wouldn't have been allowed to have a body shop either. As Ms. Meyer pointed out, the zoning analysis in our book does have an error in it. It says that the entire property is within a neighborhood activity center where the front portion is within the neighborhood activity center and the rear portion is within medium density residential. And we did have a number of citizens visit the community zoning meetings that Commissioner Cooper and I hold, and there were concerns, and, and one of the concerns that, that somebody brought forward who lives there and didn't sign the petition, one of the contiguous neighbors, was the noise that he hears at night from the business right now, when they're not supposed to be operating. So, that was, you know, something I noted as well. There's very limited parking on this site. You know, this is a 31,000 square foot building, plus or minus, or buildings, and on the site plan we have, there's only 19 parking spaces. Now, I think they could get a few more on there, but it's, you know, I think it's important to note that, that this building's way underparked. They might have to add some parking for any use that they put on it. And certainly, there's land-ed parking, but the terrain makes it difficult and, and that. So, I think it's going to be important that the parking plan for whatever type of tenant goes in or occupant goes in is reviewed to make sure it's adequate for the kind of business going in there. You know, as I said, there's only 19 parking spaces on, on the plan, but the application says they'll have up to 20 employees. So, even if they- they'll have up to 20 employees. So even if they park every vehicle being worked on inside, and they have their employees there, there's no places for customers to park. You know, so it's, you know, so from that regard, it's not very well-suited for it. From the regard that you have to drive down an alley, and on the GIS alley looks 20 feet wide, but when you drive down it, it's only cleared to 10 or 12. You know, you couldn't pass two vehicles in that alley at the same time, or it would be very difficult to, let me put it that way. You know, there's variances, obviously, for an as-built building. And one of them is, on one side, it says it's a foot and a half from the property line. On the other side, it didn't list the variance, so that makes me assume that the GIS map is not there. But it also didn't list the variance needed for the required 35-foot buffer. You know, and the noisy part of the whole operation's on the side of the building that goes towards the residential. So that concerns me. You know, initially, when this came forward, you know, what they had said is wrecked vehicles would be dropped off at night. That's just the way body shops work. That's, you know, and they'll be put inside the next business day, meaning if they got dropped off on the weekend, they'd be out there till Monday. They even said when they close for business for the Christmas holiday, they take a week off, and the vehicles would just pile out for a week. That's- now, they've come back and said, hey, we'll put the vehicles, we'll only have them dropped off during business hours. And, you know, I have to wonder if that's really something that will occur, you know, or whether we'll have vehicles sitting outside. Let's see. You know, as has been mentioned here, the applicant's been using the premises, knowing that he doesn't have a certificate of occupancy, knowing the fire marshal hasn't signed off on it, even though, you know, auto body business involves lots of chemicals that can be very dangerous and that. So he's, you know, there's a risk to the community from that and to anybody working in the property. You know, and this building, being so close to the street, all glass front, really is more of a retail. So those are kind of the comments I have. Does anybody else have any comments before I-
Any questions or comments before we move on with the motion? I think you've given lots of reasons. Yeah, so let's get our motion.
Okay. With regard to Z40, I make a motion to recommend that the, that the property within the neighborhood activity center be rezoned NRC, and the property within the medium-density residential be rezoned R20, with all the, subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. For the portion being zoned NRC, the following stipulations apply: to the site plan dated April 15, 2016, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications; neighborhood retail uses only; uses should have a low-intensity parking requirement unless sufficient additional parking is added; parking plan for each occupant to be submitted to the zoning division and subject to district commissioner approval; building facade and color to be updated prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy; the color shall be submitted to the district commissioner for approval; buildings to be evaluated by a structural engineer for safety and soundness; all parking and access to be on hardened surfaces; the existing gravel areas to be paved prior to certificate of occupancy being issued; all dumpsters to be within dumpster enclosures that meet county development standards; for the portion being zoned R20, the following stipulations apply: site plan and building architecture to be submitted as an other business item for approval. And that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to, be sure I get this right, to delete the front portion to NRC and the rear portion to R20 with the stipulations that you have laid out. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, a call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, we need a second. I have a second from Skip. No other comments?
I just have a question.
Okay, Kristy. Okay.
The structural engineer requirement is unusual for what we normally do. And I wonder, John, during the permitting process, does the building department or community development get involved in any way through CO? So I think that that stipulation doesn't belong in our motion, because it's handled otherwise. Is that correct? Okay, that's the only one that I-
Maybe we could change that to a clerk's note, so that alerts people, because there's a severe portion of that one building that looks like it's falling down into the ravine. So I want somebody to be aware to be looking for that.
That would be allowed, would it not? Clerk's note? Okay, let's do it that way then. So you're okay with that? Kristy, you okay with that? Okay. Okay, seconds, okay. And you had a comment. Okay, Judy.
Then my question was deleting the light industrial to the R20. Where was that line going to be? And why are we going to delete it to R20?
Because it's in a medium-density residential, and-
But would that be something that he could, I mean, before you could build on it, you have to come back for rezoning anyway?
Well, if we give him R20, he could come back just with the site plan as another business item.
No, not without, not if he was going to do like a high-density.
Well, if you want to do high-density, you have to come back. But if you wanted to do R20 that matches the surrounding properties, he could bring it back.
How would you access the R20? And who would build R20?
He would either, he'd probably have to buy one of these other lots and go through it, more than likely. I mean, you could build a road from the street, but there's no, he'd have to take down the building up front to build a road to build anything back there.
Because it's effectively a landlocked piece of property. I don't know that we're doing it, anybody else service, by putting it in R20 with it.
Other than, I think we need, it has no use right now, because it's for the existing furniture business only. So we need to put it in something, so it makes sense to put it in a category that matches the land use plan.
So in essence, what you're going to do is take that whole track, no, he can't use, nobody can use it, really, and make it a big buffer, a really big buffer.
It sort of has been all along. It also is a challenged track with creeks back there and that. So it's challenging between the terrain and the creeks to, probably to develop it anyway. But I think it makes sense that if somebody's going to develop it, it should be developed residentially to match the surrounding properties. So R20s is what most of the residential properties around it are zoned, so that's why I suggested R20.
Access to that parcel, I'm just looking at the GIS map. Can we move the GIS map up a little so we can see the rest of that?
There's, I don't know how you would get to-
Yeah, access to it is going to be the critical issue. And Gault is right, the only way to access it, if it's developed R20, they got to buy some property somewhere and cut a road through. That's not likely to happen, but it could.
It could.
You're just attempting to give him a use.
Right.
Judy, you okay with just leaving it at R20?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So we're okay with that portion. The front portion, which will become NRC. Okay, we have other comments. Seconds, okay with those. Let's call for the vote. All in favor of the motion as presented? Okay, it's not, there we go. There we go. Okay, so that's what we'll do. Thank you very much, folks. Okay. We are moving right along, aren't we here? Okay. John, what's the next one, please?
Okay, rezoning case Z47, Pebblebrook Development LLC requests rezoning from R20 and R80 to R15 for the purpose of residential neighborhood in landlots 29, 45, 46, and 47 of the 19th District. Property's located on the south side of Old Dallas Road, east of Villarica Way, and on the north end of Hickory Stick Lane. The applicant's representative is present. Earlier, there were 32 people here opposed. All those registered to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you might want to speak, but you're not sure, come on up and get sworn in. Doesn't mean you have to speak. Just get it all done at the same time. I failed to make one announcement early on, which sometimes I skip this entirely, but we do have a pretty large crowd here for this particular case. So you look like a pretty well-behaved group, and we appreciate that very much. When we have a large crowd, it is important that we maintain decorum, and so that we can move on with the case. I would remind everyone, and would very much appreciate it, if you would maintain courteous behavior, no applause, that sort of thing. We'd appreciate that very much. When this case is concluded, if you do want to leave the chamber, that's just fine. Please do so quickly and quietly through the rear door. Don't congregate back there and talk, because we're going to move very quickly to the next case, and we are televised. So we'll appreciate that. Garvis, whenever you're ready, sir.
Hey, Ms. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Garvis Samms. I'm the law firm Samms-Larkin Huff &amp; Bally, and I represent, in this case, Pebblebrook Development LLC concerning this application for rezoning. I have with me today Mr. Larry Thompson, whom most of you know, has developed over the years some 10,000 lots in Cobb County, Mr. Mitch Nyman, his partner in the deal, and then Mr. Thompson's son, Josh, who's incredibly experienced with respect to residential development. So the four of us will be able to respond to any questions you have at the appropriate time. The propiet issue is being shown on your monitor now. This is an aerial photograph. As you can see, it's sandwiched in between subdivisions on the west of Knob Ridge, on the south of Cheetum Springs, and on the east of Winthrop Manor, and on the north, Old Dallas Road, with individual subdivision lots directly across from that. It is zoned R20. There's approximately 1/3 of the property that is zoned R80. However, interestingly enough, it's in an area on the future land use map and has been for some time, that contemplates residential densities ranging from 1 to 2.5 units per acre. That is a policy, that is a land use guide. It's not cast in stone, but nevertheless, it is the embodiment of the policy of the Board of Commissioners, that that's how this property will be developed in accordance with that 1 to 2.5 unit per acre density. What Pebblebrook seeks is a rezoning from R20 and R80 to R20 for the purposes of a custom-quality-built, single-family residential detached subdivision consisting of a total number of 190 homes at a maximum density of 1.85 units per acre. If you're familiar with R20, then you know there are open space community overlays. With respect to each zoning district, each zoning classification under R20, if we chose on this property, as other developers have looked at, an R20 OSC overlay, the density that we could achieve would be 1.92 units per acre. So we are below what could ultimately be achieved as a maximum under an R20 OSC, and we are at the midpoint of the range between 1 to 2.5. While this application's been pending, we have met with representatives of Cheetum Springs, subdivision to the south, Knob Ridge, subdivision to our west, Winthrop Manor to our east, and other property owners and business owners in the area. We even had a meeting as late as this past Sunday. Luckily, Mr. Gunther was able to go on extended vacation, and he has just absolutely dedicated all his time since he's been back in town to this to the detriment of his family, but that's his problem. But we appreciate that, as do the Winthrop folks who attended that meeting on Sunday. What this has culminated in is the submission of a revised stipulation letter and a revised site plan, which was submitted yesterday morning around 9 o'clock, and sent to all the affected folks and those that are here in opposition today. The proposed subdivision is going to be known at the preserve at Ellis Lake. If you're not familiar with it, we've got a short video to kind of give you an idea of what this pristine property looks like and how Mrs. Ellis and the estate wanted it to develop. Here you're going down Old Dallas Road, heading in an easterly direction. The subject property is on the, is on the right. There's Ellis Lake. As you approach that, going down into the property towards Ellis Lake and traversing the lake back towards the preponderance of the property, you can see that the lake is beautiful. And there's an excellent aerial photograph of the subject property, the two lakes, Ellis being the southernmost, Sage Bush being the topmost. These lakes feed into each other and ultimately feed into Knowsis Creek. This portion of the property is property, the only portion of the property that has been developed somewhat, except perhaps for farming over the years. So this is a gem, it's a gem of West Cobb County, and that's the way Mrs. Ellis and her estate have looked at it. And during her lifetime, Mrs. Ellis was a committed steward of the property, not wanting it to evolve into the neighborhood activity center that you see there at Barrett and Dallas, and Dallas Highway. And so during her lifetime, as the committed steward, there were numerous developers that approached her. When I say numerous, I mean, four or five, three of which were my clients, production developers for the most part, who have a different approach than Mr. Thompson and his group with Mr. Nyman. Without exception, without exception, Mrs. Ellis rejected these developers out of hand. The estate's done the same thing, but as her expectations was that all of those developers, every single one of them, until she got to Mr. Thompson in Pebblebrook, wanted to masquerade and clear-cut this property. Masquerading and clear-cutting a pristine piece of property like that would be devastating, and Mrs. Ellis and her estate wouldn't countenance that. So the plan Mr. Thompson and his development group had is not to masquerade or clear-cut it, because you get into topographical, you get into subsurface geological circumstances. And so instead, what they are doing, and if you can go to the subdivision plan, very good, David, thank you, you can see that the road network follows the ridges of this 100-acre track. And so what that leaves are the draws, in which the trees will be preserved, the house pads will be installed, and it's a more expensive way of developing, but by the same token, it doesn't require the blasting, it doesn't require the absolute decimation of the trees and the beautiful vegetated portions of the property. Without exception, none of the developers, up until Mr. Thompson's, met with the estate's expectations. As you can see, Pebblebrook has taken a much different approach than its predecessors. Back to the latest and most recent occurrence. That was the site plan and the revised stip letter that was submitted yesterday. It embodies what we think are our best efforts to this point, to satisfy and mollify the residents of the three subdivisions I've mentioned, the residents of Old Dallas Road, and others that are far afield that have a far-reaching interest in this because of some overall general concerns, such as traffic and schools and the typical things that you hear. This will be known as the preserve at Ellis Lake. It'll be phased in four different phases over a period of approximately four years. The interesting thing is, we have submitted a straight R20 site plan to staff and to some of the members of the opposition, and we can yield 190-plus lots in a straight R20 plan. But if you saw the plan, you would see that what it takes is taking away Ellis Lake, because it has a faulty dam structure, utilizing that as detention, and packing the lots in there in a less-than aesthetically pleasing or proper fashion. Pebblebrook's phased development of this seeks a rezoning for 190 lots. It's going to be highly amenitized. The houses themselves will range from 2,800 square feet to 4,000 square feet and greater, with price points ranging from $400 to $550,000. with price points ranging from $400 to $550,000 and greater. Is it the million-dollar homes plus in Winthrop Manor? No. Does it comport with the homes in Cheetum Springs? Probably cut above. Is it similar, analogous to those in Knob Ridge? Probably on par with that. But it's the sweet spot right now for developers, for homeowners, for those looking to be in this part and the subarea of West Cobb County. As far as the highly amenitized nature of this, I told you about, there'll be a community clubhouse, a jogging and walking trail around Ellis Lake, multi-sports fields, and all sports courts, a swimming pool. Of course, all this is on the left side or the western side of the property, if you will, along the Noses Creek area, but highly amenitized. The composition and style of the homes you saw in the MDJ this morning, you've seen in the packages of information I've given to you, there'll be foresighted architecture, extremely attractive. As I mentioned, no masquerading or clearcutting. We are asking for a contemporaneous variance that because of the topo allows us to move the houses 25 feet instead of 35 feet from the street, but there'll be a commensurate increase to the rear setback so as not to increase the building envelope and to be aggressive in that fashion. Mandatory HOA, strict architectural controls and CCRs. It includes that the HOA will be responsible, the fencing, the amenities, landscaping, subdivision entrance signage, landscaping, irrigation, and lighting, and those things that are covered in the stipulation letter. We'll be submitting a landscape plan. We set up a landscape oversight committee with representatives of the various subdivisions that will take part in that, with the district commissioner being the final arbiter. Now, I've got four seconds left, and there's no way I can do this, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to ask for two more minutes because I'm at a critical juncture right now on this application. If you look at this site plan being shown on your monitor, you can see on our southern property line, we have direct contiguity to Cheetum Springs subdivision. We've agreed from the beginning to provide them with a 50-foot undisturbed buffer along that southern property line, which would encompass, and there's a typo in my stipulation letter, I said 40 through 70, it's actually lots, 49 through 70. And this buffer will remain undisturbed in perpetuity. It will be protected and demarcated during the construction and buildout of the subdivision. I realize it's an enforcement issue with respect to zoning, but that's what that subdivision wanted. That's what we were able to be able to give. It's unheard of. It's unheard of to have buffering between residential subdivisions, particularly as you can see, our R-20 lots completely comport with the spacing of the R-20 lots on the Cheetum Hill side of the subdivision. That buffer will be free of encroachment except with respect to connection to Hickory Stick Lane. We're going to have to put a water line through that, and the Cheetum Springs folks are aware of that. There's been talk of a fence along that property line. There's been talk of a fence that bifurcates those individual lots. I'll leave that to you. We're acceptable to a fence along the property line if that's what you want. I'll have to say, there was a misunderstanding between me and one of the representatives of Cheetum Springs as to the positioning of that fence, but you're all aware of that, so I'll let you be that arbiter that makes that decision. Stormwater management is an issue. I told you that the stormwater goes from Sagebrush Lane to Ellis Lake, back to Noses Creek, and then flows downstream from there. There's significant flooding along the Noses Creek, particularly with respect to the backyards of some of those homes in Knob Ridge, doesn't reach up to their houses, but their lots are huge as they go back down toward the creek. We are over detaining on the site, so that will improve that immensely. According to stormwater management, there's no lakes or bodies of water or streams downstream, which we are going to adversely affect. Historic preservation planner, there are no historic preservation necessities on the site, including civil war. We had archaeological reconnaissance done by RS Webb and Associates that balances that out or holds that out. We have a dam that is on Ellis Lake that needs repair. We'll be doing that and ensuring that all the house pads will be located outside the dam breach zone. We also have agreed that all the streets will be built to the county's design and detailed specifications. And that Hickory Stick Lane, we originally showed that as a connection, emergency connection through Cheetum Springs, but that was objectionable to them, so we deleted that and changed it so there'll be no extension of Hickory Stick Lane, except to the extent that there's a water line running there that will extend water. Mr. Davis, some of the water system want us to have dual feeds for water, so we will be doing that there. The voluntary donation and conveyance of right-of-way on Old Dallas Road to achieve 25 feet from the center line of that road, deceleration lanes at both points of ingress and egress on Old Dallas Road. And then we have done a traffic impact study that was submitted concurrently with the application for rezoning. We're amenable to all those recommendations contained by Jim Crowe's firm. Jim Crowe, as you recall, was the director of DOT here. We have set out construction hours or in the stipulations. I won't go through those, except to say, no work on Saturdays, no work on the holidays that we have articulated. And there'll be no wood chippers or chainsaws before prior to 8:00 a.m. on any day. All construction workers and vehicles will stay on the site. They will not be allowed on any additional or adjacent right-of-ways. One keynote on this is that if a land disturbance permit is not pulled within 24 months from the date of approval by the Board of Commissioners, should we get to that point, that this property will revert to its original classifications without any further input from either the property owners or the Board of Commissioners. Within 60 days, we'll be boarding up the buildings on the property, except for Mrs. Ellis's old home, which we'll use as an office. Within 90 days, the buildings that are boarded will be demolished. We've agreed to a Georgia native plant rescue. And of course, we have the usual modifications for a district commissioner to make modifications, except that district commissioner cannot make modifications on this with respect to the buffer, undisturbed buffer along the southern property line, nor in the stipulations or conditions relative to Hickory Stick Lane. That was at the specific request of Cheetum Springs. Those would have to come back in the form of an other business application. To conclude, I want to thank, and I mean this sincerely, the residents of Cheetum Springs, the residents of Knob Ridge, the residents of Winthrop Manor. They've been gracious. They've been attentive. They have absorbed what we have. They have differences of opinion as to how this should be developed. We would expect nothing different. But I must tell you this, that we are consistent with the future land use map. We are consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. We're within the densities allowed by code, and you will not find a more responsible, well-suited developer for this property, particularly in terms of not masquerading or clearcutting this and doing this, this is corny, but the old-fashioned way, the way it should have always been done from the very beginning. So we do ask that you, as planning commission, recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the application be approved. I'm sorry I went over, Mr. Chairman, but I thought those are important points. At this time, if you've got any questions, I'll be pleased to respond to them.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. You did go over about six minutes, so we'll add that to the opposition's time should they need it. Let's hear from the opposition at this time, please. Whenever you're ready, just give us your name, please.
Yes. I am Veronica Carey from the Cheetum Springs subdivision, which is adjacent to the Ellis property to the south. From early May, we have been working to get an R-20 zoning instead of the original R-15 that they requested. But even more importantly, we've also been working to get a 60-foot undisturbed buffer on the boundary between our two subdivisions to protect the beautiful trees that are there. We have met repeatedly with several of you, and we have met with zoning staff and zoning management. We learned from John Peterson and all of you at your working session last Monday that buffers are difficult to enforce and that you much prefer a conservation easement with a split rail fence on the new development side that demarcates that conservation easement. I talked to Garvis Sams that afternoon, and he asked me to write up our proposal, and I did. I sent him in writing the next day our request for a conservation easement. We then met with Pebblebrook and Mr. Sams on Thursday, July 28th, just last week. At that time, Mr. Thompson said his lender would not lend on a conservation easement, and he said he did not have the cash flow to finance the conservation easement portion himself. He said, "I'm not one of those big national firms that can do that." We then agreed at the Thursday meeting to a regular 50-foot undisturbed buffer, but when we asked him for a split rail fence to delineate that buffer on the Pebblebrook side, he said, "I don't like split rail fences. They're too easy for the homeowners to dismantle." His partner, Mitch Niemi, or Niemi, then said, "We should do a permanent 6-foot or 8-foot wood fence." And he said that in the context of some sort of fence to protect the buffer. We agreed a 6-foot fence was sufficient. And again, that was to protect the buffer. There was no confusion whatsoever in our minds that we were agreeing to a permanent 50-foot undisturbed buffer with a permanent fence to indicate the existence of that buffer. Pebblebrook said they would have their engineers draw a new site plan with the 50-foot buffer on Friday, which they did, and that's what they submitted to you yesterday. But it was yesterday that we learned that Garvis and apparently Pebblebrook believes that we traded away the 50-foot buffer for a privacy fence actually on the boundary between the two subdivisions, between Cheetum Springs and the new property. Nothing could be farther from the truth, and I can indicate that to you because Thursday afternoon, right after our meeting where we thought we were getting a 50-foot undisturbed buffer with a protective fence, I called Judy Williams, Skip, you were still out of town, and I called Judy and I said, "They have offered us a 50-foot buffer with a fence and instead of a conservation easement." Is that as good as a conservation easement? And Judy said, "That sounds like a good plan." So again, we were not under the impression that we had traded away our buffer. And I say "our" buffer, but it's all along the line of the connection with Cheetum Springs subdivision. I then contacted Garvis yesterday by email and by phone. I suggested that we revert to a less imposing split rail fence and the buffer. He refused, saying that it was, quote, "up to the planning commission." So we're here, throwing ourselves upon your mercy. We did not trade away the 50-foot buffer. We ask you for a permanent, undisturbed buffer, 50 feet along the entire boundary between our two subdivisions, which is recorded in the property deeds and the Homeowners Association CCNR, with an unobtrusive split rail fence on the Pebblebrook side of the buffer, all to be maintained by the Homeowners Association. We do not want a privacy fence on our boundary blocking the beautiful trees. We want a buffer with all those beautiful trees left undisturbed. If this matter cannot be resolved today, we want a continuance to clear up the confusion and discrepancies between what we negotiated on Thursday and actually over the last three months and what is in the most recent site plan, and then what is in the stipulation letter regarding this important buffer, because the stipulation letter only provides for the construction buffer and doesn't provide for the permanent buffer that Mr. Sams mentioned here today, but it's not in the stip letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Veronica. Next speaker, please. Give us your name.
Good morning. I'm Randy Hayford, a homeowner in Winthrop Manor for over 18 years and a Cobb County resident for over 30 years. I'm here on behalf of our neighborhood, and I have two points to make as quickly as I can. The first is, and I think you know this, that the residents of Winthrop Manor were informed of this rezoning request only about two weeks ago. While I understand that notice was within the letter of the law, until very recently, our neighborhood was not included in discussions about this request that have apparently been taking place over the last two or three months. We requested more time to understand the details of the proposal, to understand the ramifications, and that request was denied. We've done our best in the short period of time we've had to get our arms around these issues and understand what the request is and what the impacts might be, but there always seem to be changing facts and changing requests. Just yesterday, as you were told, we received a new letter, revised stipulations, a revised layout plan, a new report from a consulting engineer about the floodplain. All that we just got yesterday morning. Also, just yesterday morning, your staff graciously acknowledged the significant error in their calculation of the number of allowable units on the Ellis track. It's 144, not 162, as originally reported. Of course, the developer's asking that you make that 190. We also understand the size of the floodplain appears to be in dispute today. Is it six acres? Is it 16 acres? Nobody's told us yet which one is correct, and that's an important issue. Finally, for some reason, the staff report does not include Winthrop Manor in its analysis of the zoning and density in the adjoining neighborhoods. It includes the other neighborhoods but not Winthrop Manor. Well, and then it concludes that all the adjoining neighborhoods are R-20. Well, we're not R-20. We're built to R-80-plus, and if we were included in that analysis, it would significantly change the result. So the bottom line is, there's lots of moving parts here, lots of unresolved pieces, but yet we're told, "Sorry, no more time. Move it along. You've got 10 minutes between you." To us, from our perspective, it's kind of like when Nancy Pelosi said, "You can find out what the Affordable Care Act says after we pass it." That's how we feel right now, so we renew our request for more time. Second point, and I'll sit down. The proposed change in density is neither fair nor reasonable when you balance the interests of all the concerned parties. The Ellis track is currently zoned R-20 and R-80. Winthrop Manor's zoned R-20 and R-80, built to R-80-plus. Importantly, the entire portion of the Ellis track that borders on our property is currently R-80, not R-20. According to staff's calculations, that means that right now, no more than 18 units could be put in that parcel of the Ellis track that borders our property, no more than 18. The proposal from the developer calls for 72 units to be put in that same area, a quadrupling of the density. I'm going to suggest to you, there's no sensible rationale that supports such a drastic increase in density in that area. It's not in the interest of any of the surrounding neighborhoods. It's not in the interest of West Cobb County. People come to West Cobb because of the proximity to the National Park, the open area, the trees, and the quality of life. We ask that you deny, you recommend that this request be denied. We believe when you balance all the interests, that increasing density in that area by four times what it would be permitted today is in no way a fair and reasonable result. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Nancy doesn't work here, by the way. Go ahead, give us your name, please.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Fisher, and I'm a homeowner and resident in Knob Ridge subdivision. I'm here today representing Knob Ridge, and we are opposed to Z-47 rezoning application. The characteristics, let me see if I can get to this. The characteristics of this tract of land have proven difficult for the Knob Ridge properties bordering it. In the past eight years, Knob Ridge has experienced extreme flooding on a number of occasions, as you'll see in the photos. While Noses Creek and portions of the bordering properties are in a FEMA-designated floodplain, there have been numerous attempts by the developer to change the amount of acreage designated by FEMA for this tract of land. FEMA maps state that there are 6.5 acres of floodplain where the property is located, and Cobb County Stormwater has verified that number with me. Pebblebrook has challenged that number on a couple of occasions, trying to get that amount reduced to as low as 6.1 acres of floodplain. As late as yesterday afternoon, I was told that the number is still incorrect and should be 15.9 acres. Our concern is this revolving number that we continue to hear. Why are the Why are the FEMA floodmaps continually being challenged? We are extremely concerned that, given the high density Pebblebrook is proposing to build on this property, the amount of impervious surface that will only increase the flooding problems experienced by Nobbridge will continue. I have spoken to Cobb County Planning and Stormwater Management about my concerns and have been told on numerous occasions that all of these issues will be handled after zoning through the required stormwater analyses. What assurances do we have as residents regarding transparency and accountability when it comes to these processes after rezoning? In addition, Nobbridge residents were very concerned about the proposed location of the amenities package, as you saw on the site plans, and the effects it'll have on our home values and quality of life. Currently, the site plan shows the amenities will be placed in and near the floodplain. In the Cobb County Code, Section 134-198, Item 12, Number 6, states, "No residence or structures shall be built upon any adjacent lot within the development within which the facility is located until construction of the recreation area has commenced, to the extent that buyers of adjacent property will be aware of where the recreation area will be located." We understand this to talk about future homeowners within the new development and their rights to know where their amenities packages will be, so they have the ability to choose whether they want or not to live adjacent to those amenities. Does this code only protect the future homeowners within a new development? What about homeowners of those adjacent neighborhoods that were existing prior to the new development? Do they have rights and protections against a new development placing their amenities adjacent to their existing properties? Many of our Nobbridge residents who border this area purchased their homes knowing their property bordered a floodplain, and they would not see another development's amenities from their homes or backyards. A decision to allow Pebblebrook to place their amenities package in the position shown on the current site plan will cause undue stress to the quality of life of these Nobbridge residents, as well as an expected drop in their home values. In Mr. Sam's presentation, he talked about the beauty of the land, and we agree with his description and the beauty. We all feel the same. However, we would like to note, we feel that this property would best be utilized as a park, and rightly so. It has been recommended and nominated to the Parks Bond that's currently out there and is being investigated. Therefore, in response to these concerns, the residents of Nobbridge ask that the planning commissioners deny the rezoning application and recommend that the Board of Commissioners deny it and require Pebblebrook to develop the land to a significantly lower density, if it will be developed, so that the adjacent communities will not face the loss of home values due to their desire for the maximum density on this land. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have another speaker?
They did so good, I won't sit down.
Thank you. Okay, not seeing any other speakers. It's back to this board. This is, as most of you know, in District One, covered by Mr. Gunther, who's worked really hard on this, so we'll ask him to lead our discussion.
Thank you, Mike. First off, just to set the record straight, as Mike was fearful of, I did not get back last night. I got back late Friday night, and I've pretty much focused on this ever since. And my family has been quite happy that I was doing that because they had enough of me while I was on vacation with them. So having said that, I think we can get to the central issues pretty quickly, but first, what I'd like to do is just echo what Mr. Sam said. I would like to thank everybody who's been involved in this so far, and some of you are newcomers to this, specifically in the Winthrop Manor subdivision. I'd like to thank all of you for the great job that you've done to bring the issues out and to have a positive attitude with respect to negotiating a solution that's going to work. The applicant, Pebblebrook, led by Larry and Josh Thompson and Mitch Niemi, I think, have an impeccable reputation from everything I've heard and everything I've seen in the community, from the over 10,000 homes that they've built across Cobb County and elsewhere in the in this in the this region. The fact that they're willing to negotiate the way they are and and basically just explain why they don't want to do something or accept something the way they have, I think, is indicative of the kind of development that we can expect from them if this moves forward. I'd also like to thank Judy Williams, sitting right here, who sat in. I've been watching this and involved in all kinds of community meetings ever since May, when this was first put on the June agenda for us to to hear in June. But the last two weeks is everything kind of built to a crescendo to where we are today. I was gone up through last Friday, and Judy filled in, and I want to thank her for, you know, answering emails, phone calls, being a counselor, basically explaining all kinds of things to those of you who had questions. So thank you, Judy. Okay, so having said all of that, what I'd like to do is is focus on what I see as the issues. And there are a number of them. I'm just going to go through them very quickly and then start trying to pick off the easier ones until we get to the harder ones. There are issues of intensity, and I just want to be on the record that one of the principal reasons that I sit on this planning commission is to help deal with the growing intensity and the feeling of growing intensity that we have in Cobb County and in particular West Cobb. If there's ever an opportunity to get a balance that works with all the parties that is less intense, and I mean the impact on infrastructure, traffic, schools, and so forth, if there's ever an opportunity to get an impact, to get a solution that has less of an intense impact, that's all what I'm about. So I'm working to reduce the intensity. But on the other hand, we have to recognize that every landowner has a piece of property, and they have a constitutional right, if they want to sell it, to sell it for a price that can, the highest price they can find, and that usually implies higher intensity. So there's a balance that has to be achieved. In any event, there's an issue of intensity, and in this case, that relates directly to density, and a number of you in opposition, Jennifer and Veronica both, you know, mentioned the density issue. There's a stormwater management set of issues, there are buffer issues, and there are amenity issues. I think the easiest one to try to get to first is stormwater management. So I'm going to ask Dave Braden if he would come up and take the hot seat here for a minute. While you're walking up, I have two categories of questions. The first one is is the flooding issue coming in, you know, coming off of this parcel into the creek that's adjacent to Nob Nobbridge subdivision. How, the way this is currently configured, the the plan is currently configured, how would that plan impact that flooding that Jennifer talked about?
Okay, again, Dave Braden with the Stormwater Management Division. If I understand the question, you're asking what kind of, what's the potential impact of this development on the flooding for Nosus Creek?
Exactly, yes.
Well, as you, I guess this is dark as you can get in it. You can see that you can see the hatched area there is is the regulatory floodplain for Nosus Creek. One thing I'd like to point out is this site is about 0.17 acres, and Nosus Creek is more like 10 square, or I'm sorry, 0.17 square miles, not acres. And Nosus Creek is on the order of like 10 square, 10 square miles. So this site is 1% or less of the overall basin. Much of that basin has, as you get up farther up, is older developments, some commercial developments that were built before we even had stormwater management. So a lot of those don't have any controls at all. This development, on the other hand, will be required to meet our current standards, which are very stringent. So they're going to be required to provide full stormwater management on this site and not increase peak discharges from the site into into Nosus Creek.
So this development will not aggravate the problem. If anything, it will improve it, but it's not going to solve the problem.
No, it's not. Yeah, it will not solve the problem. You're going to pave pave part of the watershed, you're going to have increased runoff volume. So we can't get rid of that volume, but we can at least hold it back and not increase the peak discharges downstream. And one thing I did want to mention is that we will require, even though all of the site will have, it has some open space, it has some areas that are not going to have homes on it, we make them size their stormwater management for the full 35% impervious coverage that homeowners would be entitled to do on this property, even though they're not going to build that out. So that's another, that's another added advantage, so.
Okay, then, the second question is, there's, related to that, there's, there's the, some discussion that there may be additional detention that's going to be needed in addition to the Ellis Lake. I know that the applicant plans to reinforce and change the grading on the dam for that lake from 1 to 1 to 2 to 1 ratio, and that's going to result in an additional detention possibility in there. Is there going to be, in your estimation, additional detention required beyond that? Or is there a possibility of that?
There is a possibility of that. I was, again, the, all of the, all of the design for the development has not been done, and I think Tim is getting ready to pull up the topo on the site. There is a portion of the site, it's going to take a time, take a little while to load. Apologize for that. You can see from the topo, there's an area to the to the eastern portion of the site that drains to Sage Brush Lake, which leaves the property before it would ever get to Ellis Lake, which would be the onsite stormwater management. So they cannot increase, not only can they not increase flows to Nosus Creek, they can't increase the flows off their property before it gets to Nosus Creek. So there is the ability to engineer the site with the street, existing streets that they've got proposed, and additional stormwater management pipes along the property line to catch that water and carry it to the pond and not increase those flows. However, with the ridge line that's there and the size of pipes it would take to do that, it may be more advantageous and less expensive to give up a lot in that corner right there, put a pond in there to control those flows, so you don't have to have that increased pipe size all the way around to the lake. So I will say that there probably can do it. Whether we would want them to do it is a different story. So there may have to be a pipe in that corner, I mean, a pond in that corner. There may have to be one in the southwestern corner as well. There's an area that would bypass, some of the site bypasses there. So until we get to some detailed hydrology, hydrologic analysis, it'll be hard to say. But I would like to have the flexibility as staff to say, you know, you can zone this to a plan, but let us, they're not going to be increasing density. Let us maybe have to remove one and maybe a second lot if they need to put in a pond without having to come back through.
And that, that whole, that whole process, getting the hydrology report and so forth, that's part of what normally would happen in a plan review.
Part of the plan review process, that's correct.
But there's method of my madness, and I'm, I'm interested in knowing if there's a possibility that there might be additional detention.
There is a, I would say that there is a possibility. They can engineer around it, but it may be difficult.
And, and just related to that, if we decided that we wanted to know the answer to those questions or to that question now, how long would it take to to accomplish that?
Oh, I can't speak for their engineer, but it's.
Is that, is that within a month? Is that within six months?
Oh, one month. Frank is saying he could do it.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to know. The other, the other stormwater management related question has to do with all these numbers surrounding the wetlands. The original number that I understood, and this was an historical number that came from previous rezoning applications to this property, was that there are 16.50 acres of wetlands associated with this total parcel. Recently, in the last couple of weeks, the applicant has come back and said that there are, no, there are 6.11 acres of, of, of wetlands. I've come to learn that there's a distinction between AE and A wetlands, and therein lies part of the difference. But then I've come to find out also that the number may be somewhat different than either one of those. So can you address that?
Okay, I'll try. Part, part of, part of the confusion comes from the, the language that is required on our, on our FEMA flood insurance maps, what we call firm panels, the flood insurance rate maps. They show Zone A floodplain, which is approximate Zone floodplain, as no computed flood elevations. And up until maybe eight years ago, that, that was the case, not only everywhere, but in Cobb County as well. We had a lot of problems. Some of those approximate studies were very crude. You'd go to some areas, and they would be 30 foot up the hillside somewhere. And so Stormwater Management Division saw fit to go ahead and spend the money to actually do limited detail analysis on all the A-zone screens in Cobb County. So we have hydraulic and hydrologic models with cross-sections that compute flood elevations, even in those Zone A floodplains. So they're a lot more accurate in Cobb County than they are in some of the other metro, metro counties. So we do have computed 100-year elevations, and that is the floodplain that's depicted on our current firm maps. That was the same firm maps that, that the previous engineer had available to them. Was it '03, John? Is that right? And I'm not sure what methodologies they used to measure them. They may have phlegm or what, plenimetered them or whatever biographically, but they came up with, what, 16.5 acres? I checked it on Friday and again on Monday, just to make sure, and, and I'm coming up with 15.9 acres based on our current firm maps. So that's, and the number that they're using is the 6.7 is the Zone A portion, Zone AE portion, which is the detailed study on Mud Creek. So that's what you see as the, as the light shaded area, not the, not the floodplain that goes up Ellis Lake up off the property. That is, that is an accurate measurement, but it doesn't include the Zone A floodplain for which we have computed elevations. That's where the confusion comes in.
So that, that number for the wetlands is pretty critical when it comes to computing net buildable acreage, as we all know, because the net buildable acreage is the total acreage, the gross acreage, less the wetlands number. So that's, and then all units per acre calculations after that, including the future land use plan and so on and so forth, all are related to that net buildable acreage number. So it's important to get that number right. So my question is, do you feel confident at this point that that number will not change in the next weeks, months, whatever?
Let me, let me clarify that how it, how it could change.
Okay.
As of right now, this is our regulatory floodplain. So as far as stormwater is concerned, this is the floodplain until somebody comes up with more detailed information or a new study that FEMA would accept, and that, that is possible. So second point to make is that the mapping of that floodplain, the elevations are computed, but the mapping of the floodplain is based on the county's two-foot topographic information. So if they were one, if they were willing to go out and actually field run, survey contour information on the site all along the floodplain and map our computed elevations, some places it may be a little bit farther out, some places it may be a little farther in. In the area where there's a significant density of evergreen trees, it's very difficult for the photogrammers just to look through that and see the ground when they're doing those contours. So there's a chance in those areas, it could change a good bit. But this is our regulatory map, so until somebody comes up with better information, this is what we need, this is what we require from you. So if they did, if they did field run topo and mapped our elevations, it could change a little bit, maybe a couple percent, but not a significant amount.
So for the purposes of the planning commission and presumably the Board of Director, the Board of Commissioners, and when, when this is heard then, the 15.9 number is probably pretty solid.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
That's all I have, yeah. Unless you have something to add. Okay, I want to go, I'm going to skip around a little bit. I want to go to the amenities issue that Jennifer Fisher mentioned, and she mentioned, she referred to the county code, to the R-20 district code, specifically Paragraph 12.1.6, which talks about how, when an amenity goes in, whether that should be, who should be notified prior to that going in so that they can make proper decisions about purchasing or not purchasing a property. So what I'd like to do, and I've asked our lawyer, Deborah Blair, to think about this issue, I'd like to get a response from her on what the proper interpretation of that is. Does it apply only to new homeowners in a new subdivision, or does it apply to existing adjoining homeowners as well?
The, the code applies to the new construction subdivision, so it would be the proposed subdivision, the lots adjoining the, in the, in the subdivision.
Okay, so that's, that would be my interpretation, just as a layman, but I just wanted to make sure that it was a correct interpretation. Okay, thank you. I'd like to go to. I'd like to go to, to buffers. On the south side of this parcel, Cheatham Springs, as Veronica said, as Veronica Carey said very clearly and eloquently, and ever since my first meeting with her back in May sometime, at her house, I think it was your house, wasn't it?
Your house.
Okay. We, you know, it was, been real clear to me that you were looking for a fifty-foot buffer, you really wanted a sixty-foot buffer, and at one point, Pebblebrook came back and said, you know, we think we might be able to do that, you know, we're not sure, but, you know, we're willing to entertain that idea, and there was some, some hope that maybe even a sixty-foot buffer could go in. What everybody is saying now is, including the applicant, including Garvis Sams, and, and Larry, Larry and Josh and Mitch, is that they're willing to put in a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer. So, the issue really has to do with what kind of fencing goes with that. The issue from a Cobb County point of view is, if that buffer is owned by the HOA and managed by the HOA, then it's, it's, that's exactly what it is. The, the owner of the adjacent lot in the new subdivision does not own any of that buffer, it's not part of their property, it's commonly owned, and they can't do anything with it. And frequently, what we do is we ask that a split-rail fence or a sign go up on, at the edge of the new owner's lot, adjacent to that fifty-foot buffer, that announces to them that it's a buffer, and they're not to build beyond that. Frequently, what happens is owners ignore that, and they, they take the sign away, and they say, I don't like looking at that sign in my yard, or if it's a split-rail fence, they do something similar, they find ways to build a swimming pool, or a playground set, you know, or something, maybe a little more lawn back in that area, and just kind of take advantage of it. And most of the neighbors kind of look the other way. Sometimes not, but frequently they do. The alternative to that is to have the buffer inside each individual lot. So, if these lots along the southern border are two-hundred feet deep, right up to the edge of the total parcel adjoining the Cheatham Springs subdivision homes, if, if they're two-hundred feet deep, then there would be, if there were a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer, that fifty-foot undisturbed buffer would be the last fifty feet, and it would be owned, in this case, by the new lot owner, who would have, hopefully, and we would stipulate it, so hopefully that happened, in their covenants and in their deed, a statement that says they're not to do anything with that. Again, lots of homeowners say, oh, I didn't know, and they cut all the trees down, I saw that happen in my subdivision when I was on the Architectural Control Committee for our HOA. And so, they asked for forgiveness, and we said, well, you need to plant some trees, and of course, the trees weren't nearly as big as the ones they, they cut down. So, you have that kind of problem. Plus, further, you have the problem that it's very difficult, in fact, I would submit, virtually impossible for Cobb County to enforce that. And I would just like to, at this moment, just confirm that with John Peterson.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm putting everybody to sleep.
Just the last part.
Starting where? Now, with, if, 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 if we have, if, if we have an undisturbed buffer that's within the confines of a property owner's lot, that's difficult for Cobb County enforcement, code enforcement, to enforce. Is that correct?
It is very difficult, and as years go on after a zoning, after you have two or three different homeowners, it kind of gets forgotten about, and they do go into the buffers and clear it out, or put things in there, or put a garden in there, but they're, they're very tough for the county to monitor, and very tough to enforce.
Right. Okay, so, my, my, thank you, John. So, my, my conclusion from all of that is that if there is a buffer, and I believe there should be a buffer along that side, even though the Cheatham, Cheatham Springs subdivision does not have buffers, and as Garvis Sams points out correctly, right now, the lot spacing and sizing is such that it's a one-for-one backlot ratio along that whole stretch, twenty-thousand acre lots compared to twenty-thousand acre lots. There's, a lot of people would argue that you don't need to have a buffer in that condition, but I would argue in your favor, that says, and, and the applicant is willing to accommodate this, that you were there first, and it's a nice gesture to have a fifty-foot buffer along that line. So, I, I would conclude from all of this, that a fifty-foot buffer needs to be undisturbed, needs to be there, it needs to be HOA-owned. Then the question is resolved, gets, you know, the, the next question that comes up is, what kind of fencing? Just like you want to have a fence there to kind of keep everybody aware of that buffer, the new landowners and, and the, the HOA in, in the new subdivision likewise could argue that they'd like to have a fence right along the absolute edge of the total parcel to keep you all out, right? So, it's, it's tit-for-tat, it's both ways. So, I'm not sure how that's going to get resolved. I kind of lean in the direction of, of having a split-rail fence or a sign there, and I would say that that would be a negotiation point that I would prefer to leave to the applicant and, and Cheatham Hill. Then, then with respect to buffers, there's the additional question of, insignificant question over to the east side with the Wyndham Manor subdivision. We have, I believe, from where I sit, an issue that maybe needs to be addressed in the Cobb County Code, which says that adjoining neighbors within a thousand feet of a rezoning application need to be notified two weeks before the hearing. I think generally that works, but this is a case where clearly that didn't work. And, and so, maybe that needs to be rethought, but nevertheless, that's water over the dam. What happened in this, in this case was the, the Cheatham Springs subdivision and the Nob, Nob Ridge subdivision were very active in, very early on, when they saw the signs go up, and I'm not sure what kind of approaches they may have made to the Wyndham, Wyndham Manor subdivision, if any. I know I didn't go around and knock on doors, I'm not sure it's my job to go around and knock on doors, but in hindsight, I wished I had, in this case, because I wish that all of you in Wyndham Manor had been aware of this much sooner than, than you obviously were, just in the last two weeks. I think that in hindsight, Larry Thompson would say the same thing. He assumed, just as I did, and I think all of us did, that because there's a hundred-foot power line easement that's on the eastern edge of that, that large, that parcel, and the, you know, the forty-acre parcel that's zoned to R eighty right now, adjacent to Wyndham Manor, that, that, there, and there was going to be additional, there would be additional trees that would be left there to the west of that during the build-out, at least under the scheme of the, the build-out that Larry was, that, that Pebblebrook is proposing, that, that was not going to be an issue. It obviously is an issue, and it needs to be addressed. And I'm of the opinion that it's, it's not addressed fully right now, that we need a little bit more time to resolve that issue. The applicant has argued that, well, with whatever action we take here today, that can be resolved within the next two weeks, as it, as either it gets ready for us to rehear it again, or it goes to the VOC. So, I don't know how long that'll take, but I think it'll take a little bit more time than today to get that resolved. Okay, so, that's, those are my thoughts about buffers, I've talked about amenities, talked about stormwater management. To me, the crux of the issue is intensity and density. I think that if I look at the history of this property, and if I hear, I can kind of picture Mrs. Ellis. Larry talks about spending years and years sitting on her back porch, drinking lemonade with her, talking to her about how to best develop this property, and I believe that, I believe he's done that, Larry has a reputation for doing that kind of thing, and, and I believe that, that that's what happened. And I think that, you know, she had certain ideas about, she knew it would be, develop residential most likely, she wanted all those trees preserved to the maximum extent that they could be preserved. Larry has come up with a really innovative, creative, thoughtful approach for this parcel, I believe. In fact, I'll go back to sometime in April, Garvis gave me a call, and he just had gotten back from tramping through the property with Larry and Josh, I think, and maybe Mitch, and he was totally worn out. He said, I just did ten thousand steps today to skip on my Fitbit, and so, you know, I sort of smartly said, well, I just did eighteen, but, and I didn't mean to make him feel bad, but he had walked around that property back in the March-April timeframe, and he said, I want to tell you that we have a developer here who is getting ready to make a proposal to develop this property, and he wants to do it the right way. Well, everything I've seen since then has been consistent with that thought and that statement. I think that Pebblebrook wants to do this the right way, they want to do it consistent with what Mrs. Ellis wanted to have done. So, their, their proposal is to minimize the, the clearcutting, minimize the grading, I don't know if it's, you know, clearcutting would come in and bulldoze close to a hundred percent of this property. With their approach, I don't know what the number is, but it's probably closer to fifty percent, might be sixty, might be seventy, might be forty, but it's not a hundred, because what they're going to do is just grade where the roads are on the tops of the ridges, and then they're going to grade as they need to, the pads for the new homes as they become built, and they're going to do all this in phases, and they're going to leave all of the, the trees and, and the, the topography as-is in all the draws. I think that's phenomenal. So, the question is, they've, what should the density be? They have proposed a hundred and ninety units, I asked them to come up with a straight plan, which, if you're not familiar with that terminology, that's, if this were all zoned R twenty, how many lots could a responsible builder put on this? And of course, when you ask a developer to come up with that straight plan, they're going to come up with a plan that looks like it's, it's not something that would probably be very marketable, but it's going to maximize lot count, because that's their motivation, is to maximize lot count. And in this case, they came up with over a hundred and ninety lots, and Larry, I think, properly said, several of those lots at least really don't work, but there are a hundred and ninety that I see could work. Cobb County staff has reviewed that, and has acknowledged and agreed that there are a hundred and ninety lots that could be built on under a straight plan construct. But having said that, that's a mass grading, clearcutting, you know, kind of a hodgepodge design that probably none of us would really care to really live in. Then the question has come up, well, Cobb County staff in their analysis mentioned the number a hundred and sixty-two lots. First off, it was not a recommendation for a maximum, it was, it was a statement as to what this property could hold. And in that calculation, in, in, as, as people went back and looked at it, it was actually miscalculated, and it should have been a hundred and, I think, a hundred and forty-four, is that right, Jason? Hundred and forty-four. The way that number was calculated was, on average, you have half a lot per acre in an R eighty subdivision, and on average, you have one point seven five units per acre in an R twenty subdivision. So, if you just integrate those two numbers with the acreage and the, the two parcels of this total, total parcel, you come up with a hundred and forty-four. Now, Cobb County staff's recommendation was that this entire parcel properly should be rezoned R twenty. And the logic for that is virtually, but not all, virtually all of the lots around this and subdivisions around it are R twenty. The exception to that is Winthrop Manor, which is half R twenty and half R eighty, and it's built out to R eighty, but it's, the fact is, it's half R twenty, roughly half, you can see on the diagram, it's kind of a U shape, a big U shape right there, and the other part is, is R eighty. I think if somebody were to take this to court and challenge whether it should be R twenty or stay R eighty, I think the, the likely scenario is that it would come out R twenty. I don't know that for a fact, but that's, that's my impression. In any event, staff recommended R twenty, and I think R twenty for the entire parcel is the right number. Okay, so, let's go down the path of, what are the implications of rezoning to R twenty? If we just say R twenty, and Larry has this, and Pebblebrook have this great plan to build this out, roads on the ridges, and minimize the, the bulldozing and so forth, but then something happens, and they decide that they can't do, they can't follow through anymore, and so they end up selling their rights to the, or they end up not buying the property, and it gets sold to somebody else, but it's been zoned to R twenty. Now, we can have a mass builder come in and, and just simply bulldoze the entire parcel and build however many lots, they might be more than a hundred and ninety lots in there, they might be even be more creative than, than Larry's engineers were for their straight plan, and we would have something that would eliminate all the trees, and none of us would like that. So, my thought, and I, and I believe that the Planning Commission is supportive of me on this, is that the plan that we put forward should be R twenty to the plan. In other words, it's specific to the plan that the applicant has proposed. And any changes to that, in particular lot count, could not be made, you know, the, the district commissioner can make minor changes to it, but can't change the lot count. So, the lot count becomes the really important issue. So, we have a hundred and ninety lots on a straight plan, we have a hundred and ninety lots that Pebblebrook has proposed. But they're proposing a very innovative approach to how to develop this property. We don't have too many examples of ways to reward, if you will, it's more expensive to approach it the way, to develop it the way Larry is, is talking. Usually, you know, we would like to have a way to compensate for that more, you know, the more expensive approach, compensate for that by giving a small bonus, if you will, on what kind of density you can have. The only example of that that we have is the Open Space Community District. And this is not an Open Space Community District application, I'm not suggesting this is an open space community design, because it's not, but it has the basic attribute, you know, there's a common, common feature between this hybrid approach, if you will, and what Open Space Community is all about, and that is, if you do smart things to preserve the topography and the natural features of the land, sometimes including cemeteries, sometimes including archaeological sites and so forth, if you do the smart thing, you can, there's a mechanical way of calculating what the lot count should be. And for an R twenty subdivision, that's simply the average of one point seven five units per net buildable acre, and if you satisfy certain requirements, you can push that out an additional ten percent to get one point nine two. Now, Garvis, in his opening remarks, said that this acreage, this, this proposal is one point eight five, I think he said, one point eight five units per acre, one point eight four, somewhere in that range, and it's, he said it's below the one point nine two that would be allowable under Open Space Community. Well, that's before this moving piece of how much wetlands there are kind of has settled down. That was assuming that the wetlands were closer to six units, six acres, not fifteen point nine, which is what, you know, I understand from Dave Braden is the number we should be using. If you use fifteen point nine as your wetlands calculation, then the net buildable acreage, I'm not going to bore with all the numbers, but it's the total acreage minus that number, and that leaves you with a hundred and seventy-nine lots that you would have on this parcel. Larry's proposing a hundred and ninety. Larry's proposing 190. I've been pretty consistent all the way along with, in fact, I'm probably responsible for the 16.1 number surfacing because for the last month or two, I've been telling Larry and Garvis and Pebblebrook that I can see a density in here that is consistent with the open space community way of calculating things because we're talking about an innovative way of doing this, grading. And so they took that as, okay, let's work on what the wetlands number is and get that whittled down maybe if we can because that will help our lot count. Well, we now have an answer to that. So I'm going to put a stake in the ground that in the interest of all of our interests of keeping traffic intensity and the impact on schools managed as well as we can, I'm going to say that I can see offering, you know, an OSC-like 10% bonus, but I have a hard time justifying a number, a density beyond that. Right now, the density with 190 lots is closer to 2.05 or 2.06. I would like to see it reduced down to 189. That's 11 lots less than what it currently is, but I can see both sides of it where, you know, it needs to be as high as it can be to justify all the development costs and everything else that Pebblebrook is going to go through to accomplish this, but low enough that it's justifiable in the eyes of every resident in Cobb County who deals with traffic every day. And we're all really, you know, we've seen the traffic rise this in the last few days now that school's back on. So having said that, I don't think we have a plan that we can recommend deletion to R-20 subject to the plan because we don't have a plan yet that reflects the changes that I'm thinking that we need to have. So I'm thinking that we need to get the stormwater management issue resolved with respect to additional detention. We need to get the lot count down and we need to understand how close we can get to 189 or 1.92 units per acre, per net buildable acre, before we can move ahead.
179 or 189?
I'm sorry, 179. I said 189, yeah.
Sorry, folks.
Too many numbers floating around. 1.92 is the units per acre that I'm talking about. So having said all that, I'm thinking that the proper thing to do here is, we've heard this, we've gotten it out in the open, that we would hold this for a month to allow the applicant time to take care of all these issues and to come back to us with maybe a plan that can be put on the consent agenda a month from now. I have confidence that that's possible. So those are my thoughts. I took a long time saying all of that, but now I want to thank you for listening to me.
Can you repeat that?
Starting where?
You see, you see how complicated these cases could be, but to Skip's credit, you can tell he's worked on this really hard. He's met with a lot of you, with Larry and with Garvis and has worked on this very hard. It boils down to the issue of the fencing that we brought up, the detention and stormwater management that you summarized, the number of lots and the density. If we can resolve those issues, which are not now resolved, I totally agree, this is a candidate to be, we heard the case, to hold it for 30 days and I'm curious what you folks think. Judy?
First of all, let me say that in meeting with the residents, very nice meeting that we had and they stated their opposition. It wasn't so much the density that was the problem. It was, at this point, when we had the meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was how do we get it down to where we have buffers and where we have the lot size to meet, our lot size? Those were the issues that I was looking at. I'm not a proponent, I told you, of buffering residential against residential. In this case, I sort of was in favor of it because of the site plan would be to a site plan and he would be gaining some additional lots. So that was one of the reasons that I did look at a buffer between the residential. The other thing is that we need to work really hard on this, is we have a developer who will work with the land, not against the land. We don't find a developer too often that that happens. We get a developer come in and they'll just grade it down, take all the natural elements out of it. And this is such a pretty site that we want someone who can come in there and do it where it would benefit the whole neighborhood. And I think we're almost there. I think, yeah, there has to be some work done. We have to be more in touch with the Winthrop Manor subdivision. They have to get more involved. I think the issue of the buffer, where it's a maintain buffer, a 50-foot maintain buffer, undisturbed, as John said, undisturbed buffers are really hard to enforce as the years go on. I think a maintain buffer is one where you can't build in, but you could take out dead trees and stuff like that and be maintained. I think that would be more that, the way I would go at it. And I am just repeating everything that he said, I know. But I don't get much of a chance to talk anymore, so.
This is my only case.
Yeah, I know, this is your only case.
That is not true. We have trouble shutting her up sometimes, so.
So the issues are out there. We know what the issues are and I think a 30-day hold is the way to go. I don't think, if I thought that we could all come together and have a prayer meeting and get this thing resolved in two weeks, I'd be all for going ahead, but I don't think that's going to occur.
Let me, let me take one moment here. I remember I also met with Larry and Garvis and Skip way back several weeks ago, and I remember asking Larry, if we, if we think R-20 is the way to go, can you assure us that we'll have lots that are close to 20,000 square feet each? And he said he could. And I was very impressed with that. That's a good builder that'll do that for you. I have seen in the past, and y'all may remember this, we've had cases like this where instead of fencing, we put piers that were built, either stone is really pretty, brick is okay, across that border that we're talking about here, perhaps eight or 10 of them, and they're four feet tall, they're absolutely permanent, you couldn't, you'd have to dynamite them to get them out, but they're very attractive nestled back in the woods with a little sign that says that to the homeowners, they're not allowed to go beyond this and intrude beyond this with building and construction and that sort of thing. That's an alternative to a fence. I have seen that work quite nicely. They can be very pretty. If Larry, again, this is something we'd have to talk to Larry about, but if he'd be willing to put the money into that, that would be an attractive feature nestled behind every house. Perhaps eight or 10 of them across those 20 houses, that's something to consider as well. Kristi, Gault, anything?
Judy stole my thunder with the maintain buffer, naturally maintained. And why that's important is if we say undisturbed and kudzu or something else invasive species gets in there and starts killing the trees, you're not allowed to go in and get rid of that kudzu. Naturally maintained, you can do that, so just wanted to add that. Other than that, I think you're on the right track with everything.
Okay, why don't you make your, make your motion?
Okay, I'm pushing the wrong button. I'm ready to make a motion. I agree with that idea of maintain, naturally maintained. But I would like to leave that up to Garvis Sams and Pebblebrook and the neighbors to finally resolve and come back with a, with a proposal on that. So, okay, my, my motion is that we recommend hold C-47, well, that we hold for us, C-47 for 30 days to allow the applicant time to develop a revised site plan and letter stipulations that provides for a maximum of 179 lots of at least 15,000 square feet, that resolves the buffer landscape and fencing issues with Winthrop Manor and Chatham Springs, and finds the, and works to determine whether additional detention ponds may be necessary or not and if so, where they would be located so that we have a site plan that we can definitively say this is R-20 subject to the site plan. That's my motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Not seeing and hearing any, please register your vote. That's what we're going to do. So we'll see you folks in 30 days, hopefully with a new site plan that everyone likes. We're going to take a quick break. We've been at this for a while, so we'll take about a 10-minute break and then we'll come back and hear our next case, which I think is LOFT 11, John, is that right? So we should be able to get that one in before lunch. So let's take about a 10-minute break. If you could find a seat, please, we'll go ahead and get started. We may be able to get in a couple of cases before we break for lunch. We'll try it and see what happens. John, what's our next case, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Last case on the held case agenda is LUP 11. Jessica Brennan requests a land use permit for the purpose of in-home hair salon, Land Lot 239 of the 17th District. Property is located at the southwest corner of Vanessa Drive and Klein Drive. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 11? The director shows no one opposed.
Hello again. We do not really need to go into all the details that we heard last time. A short summary might be called for, so if you want to give us that and tell us what you've done since we last met. Go ahead. Give us your name.
Salon that I like to put into my basement. So I think Kristi was the only one that was not here last time, so I'm going to try to win your vote today. I basically have been doing hair for about 15 years, 16 years now, and have been working in Kennesaw because that's where most of my clientele was. I've been in Smyrna for about three years now and have built quite a large community. My husband and I are pastors and I'm just trying to kind of do this the right way. Have a lot of friends that just, you know, throw a salon in their basement, have their friends and family over and do it that way, but I'm just trying to live beyond reproach and trying to do this the right way and the legal way and would love to be able to do that. I have four children, so I'm really only wanting to work a couple hours a week. They take up most of my time, but I do have two in private school this year and that's really the main reason that I will be working, is to be able to put them in private school. Since we spoke last time, I got several signatures, which I think we got copies of, and I have talked to pretty much everyone minus a couple houses on both cross streets. And I was able to get 18 signatures. If you guys want to see that, you can. Just pretty much, I didn't have a single person that opposed to me. I know Dalton said that he had gotten an email for the case last time, one person opposing this. But since, I've talked to everybody about it and they're thrilled, they can't wait to come get their hair done and walk down the street. I know that driving, my driveway or parking was an issue, but like I said last time, there'll be one person at my house at a time. I'm not going to have three people there, two people there. Obviously, unless it's a family and they've ridden together. I don't plan to have any men unless it's a child with their mother and just for safety purposes, as well as not wanting a man in my home without my husband there, so. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just for the record again, anyone here opposed to LUP 11? Not seeing and hearing any, it's back to this board. This is in District 4, so Gault, if you'll handle our discussion, please.
Okay, thank you. And I see you have been out working. Here's the petition. I'll just pass it down so people can look at it. There's 18 signatures, I think, that represent 11 homes.
Yes.
I just quickly put down, you have most of the homes that are pretty close to you. There's, there's a couple I want to ask you about, the one directly across the street, 43 Vanessa.
Yes, sir. I, I kind of know them, not really, and I have been to their house twice, knocked on their front door and just haven't heard a response. So I'm not sure if they're the ones that emailed, I don't know, that are opposed to it. I don't know that they would be. They seem very friendly and I'm not real sure.
Okay.
I did try twice.
And your neighbor adjacent to you on Klein, 2804? Or is that?
The backyard.
Yeah, the backyard neighbor.
Oh, backyard neighbor. Oh, yeah, I got both of theirs. Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't see 2804 on there. On there.
The ones with like the pool directly behind me? I got both of my neighbors that are touching my property that I know of. Yes, sir.
Okay, maybe I just missed it on there. Okay. Well, I think you've done a really good job of, of getting out and getting some neighbor support and that. As you know, it was a very close call last time.
Yes.
I think you said you wanted to work Thursdays and maybe some on Saturdays.
Yes, sir.
One Saturday. So I'll go against what I did last time. I think I'm going to make a motion that would give you a year to try it and see how it works.
Ah, thank you.
So, anybody have any questions before I do that? Any concerns?
Yeah, I'd like to make this.
Okay.
Do you want a second on that?
Well, I haven't made a motion yet, but.
I just want to say that I also am going to change my vote. I've thought about this for a month and, and I, as much as I dislike the idea of having any kind of business in a residential subdivision or setting precedent for that, I think in this case, there are enough extenuating circumstances that it's totally warranted, so I support.
Thank you, Skip.
Okay, and you can have a seat.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Make the following motion regarding LUP 11 to recommend approval for 12 months, subject to all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Hours of operation, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Thursday and Saturday, and those were the hours she had in her application. Maximum of six customers per day, which is what she had in the application. No street parking and no signs. And that's my motion.
Do we have a motion in a second for approval of LUP 11?
Yeah, I think we could add that to the consent.
Okay, and second's okay with that, I'm sure. So, motion to approve and add to the consent agenda for the BOC. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion? Good to go. Thank you very much. We do have time for another case. I'm going to recommend, John, if you don't mind, we pulled Z-62 Venture Homes from the consent agenda because we had, we thought we had opposition. I'd recommend we hear that one next. So let's do Z-62, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. Rezoning case of Z-62 Venture Homes, request rezoning from R-20 to R-5 for the purpose of a single family subdivision, and land lots 549 and 562 of the 19th District. The property is located on the easterly side of Milford Church Road, east of Power Springs Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case of Z-62?
Yeah, I thought I noticed the lady who raised her hand left, so maybe she's changed her mind, I'm not sure. Again, anyone opposed to Z-62? Okay.
I'd like to just, yeah, let's read it back into consent.
Can we do that? Debbie, can we do that? Add it back to consent agenda and move forward? We pulled it from the consent, so I kind of think we need to hear it.
I think we can, I think we can hear it quickly.
Okay, well, we can do that. Can we do it without the applicant speaking?
No. No.
I cried.
No, 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 that's.
Can we do it without you making a speech?
Let's see how quickly he can talk.
Much less than 10 minutes.
Gault, I thought you used to like to hear me speak. My name is Sean Randall. I'm the chief operating officer of Venture Homes. I will be very, very brief. This is a 10-acre site. We're very excited about bringing this in front of Commissioner Terry and the rest of the planning commission. The current plan is in conformity with the current land use plan for this parcel. We have met and received all the staff comments and have obtained staff approval, subject to their recommendations, and I'm available to answer any questions, but we would respectfully ask that you approve this zoning as submitted. I think there's one change to the stipulation letter that when, meeting with Gault Porter, we agreed to limit, let me see if I say this exactly right, but we'll, we'll put it in the stipulation letter, that no less or no more than one-third of the product built can have a front elevation with 60% or less masonry. So there was some design standard information, but we'll put that in the revised zoning stip letter and have that available for the Board of Commissioners.
Did we resolve the guest, we had guest parking issues, was that resolved?
As it needs to be.
Okay, distance between the homes.
Yes, that was resolved on the ladies' site plan. So the fire marshal, we've got 20 feet between the structures.
Okay, so we're good to go there.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had. Go ahead, Gault.
Okay. With that, unless anybody has discussion, I'll just make a motion and, and make a motion that we recommend approval of Z-62, subject to all staff recommendations and comments, and also subject to the letter from Sean. and also subject to the letter from Sean G. Randall dated July 29, 2016, with one modification in item number four, where it says, "It is acknowledged that some attached elevations do not necessarily have 60% masonry, but the applicant shall be governed by this general style of product constructed on the property as per Exhibit B." Add to that our new line, "No more than one-third of the homes will be less than 60% masonry."
On the front elevation.
On the front elevation.
Yes.
Yes. And that's my motion. And I guess we could include it back on the consent for the BOC.
Okay, can I get a second? Second. One or the other. Let's go with Skip this time. Second from Skip. We'll go with Judy as our second. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, let's register our votes, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next case that's on the agenda is Z63, I believe. That one's going to take a little while, so I'm going to recommend we go ahead and take our lunch break, come back in one hour, and then we will hear Z63. So we stand adjourned for one hour. Thank you very much. Who's next on the agenda, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Res zoning case Z63, Yosef Kagan requests rezoning from R12 to R12 with stipulations for the purpose of single-family residential. Land lot 827 of the 16th District. Property is located on the east side of Johnson Ferry Road, north of Lake Ridge Court. The applicant is present. Earlier, there were two people here in opposition. All those listed, address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'm Yosef Kagan. I'm here on behalf of One Johnson Ferry LLC. I'm here to talk about the opposition, which I received last evening. From what I understand, there were two major concerns. First concern being that I thought that maybe it was an original rezoning that happened in 2015 was a bait-and-switch tactic where we got it approved under one site plan and then I wanted to switch it. I could assure you that it's not the case. We bought it after it was zoned, and I had no part of that original rezoning. It happened kind of organically that one of the stipulations was I had to meet the neighboring property owner to discuss the landscape plan. And he's like, "I'll blow your mind with this, but I'll give you an easement where you could get access to Bishop Lake Court," which the benefits for subdivision that I'm working on of the nine homeowners is they get to go south on Johnson Ferry. If they were to come out onto Johnson Ferry and try to go south at 8:30 in the morning, they'd have to make a U-turn and let somebody, they'd have to have two people let them go south, which never really happens. So here they get to come out through Bishop Lake Court and they can make us left at the light. Now, the main, so from what I understand from the opposition, the main concern is traffic count. So we'd have nine extra homes. Let's say you have two cars per house, talking 18. Now we have two access points, which are gated, so we won't have any cut-through traffic. So we have 18 cars and two access points. Let's say you have half of those going at one time. You have maybe two minutes of extra traffic versus all the pros that we get is, first of all, the existing homeowners that we're annexing into their subdivision get to have the maintenance costs spread out now through 13 homes. Also, they, in the event that anything ever happens with the power lines, they have alternate exit. And for, obviously, for my homeowners, we now have alternate way to getting south on Johnson Ferry. That's basically my argument. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Yosef. Let's hear from the opposition, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Randy Turner. I practice law with Turner and Ross. We're located in East Cobb at 2265 Roswell Road. I represent Mr. Norm Cohen and Mr. Jim Dubose. Mr. Jim Dubose is one of the original developers of the Bishop Hollow subdivision. To understand this, I think, development or this proposal a little more clearly, what the developer is seeking to do is to take what was approved last year as a cul-de-sac road servicing these nine houses and extend that street onto private property, creating a private drive now that would hook into another private drive, which would tie into the existing cul-de-sac on Bishop Lake Court. Bishop Lake Court is a narrow street that was developed into two-acre lot, estate lots, two-acre-sized estate lots. Mr. Cohen and Mr. Dubose are owners there. The property owner, the Paulos, who also own a house that actually overlooks this development, are also strongly opposed to permitting this additional subdivision now to be, to have access to the street, which has never been designed to have that volume of traffic. This proposed development is, in fact, is bigger than the entire subdivision served presently by Bishop Lake Court. So this is a significant change in zoning for this property. And while I completely respect the fact, talking with Mr. Kagan this morning, that if he was not involved in the rezoning of this property, which took place very little more than a year ago, then I respect that. Nevertheless, from the standpoint of my clients, they knew that this property was going to be developed eventually. The rezoning request that came in in 2015 was to eliminate the traditional R20 zoning that has been typical for properties in that area. But everyone, including my clients, recognized that that is somewhat of an unreasonable zoning classification for that property now, especially given the fact that it fronts on Johnson Ferry Road. So my clients very reasonably took the position that this was a fair rezoning of the property and accepted without interference the additional density, as well as the, you know, the additional visual impact of building these nine homes on essentially three and a half acres of land. So this came out of the blue to be presented here now, a year later, that we're going to create essentially, the developer intends to create what is essentially a convenience or a supposed convenience, which I'll talk about a little bit more in just a moment, for some kind of a supposed convenience for the subdivision. And all of the negative impact, all of the aggravation associated with that convenience will fall onto the existing property owners on Bishop Lake Court. There is nothing very attractive about the intersection between Bishop Lake Court and Bishop Lake Road. If you're familiar with this intersection, it's extremely congested. Often, the traffic turning south on Johnson Ferry Road, on Bishop Lake Road, from Bishop Lake Road is already backed up to or beyond Bishop Lake Court. And there's no prize for anyone thinking that they're going to come through this development, pull over to Bishop Lake Road and make an easy left turn to get into a left-turn signal to go south on Johnson Ferry Road. So I think there's some illusion here that this is actually going to be much of a convenience or advantage to the property owners there. Nevertheless, we have to anticipate that if they're going to create this private road, we're going to have great many cars who are going to attempt to use it and use it from time to time. Bishop Lake Court was never designed for that kind of traffic volume. As again, this subdivision being proposed there is larger than the subdivision that this little cul-de-sac dead-end road serves today. The, and what we're creating to permit this use of Bishop Lake Court in this fashion is to create essentially unnecessary, what I've described as unnecessary risk from traffic, traffic accidents and backups at Bishop Hollow, excuse me, at Bishop Lake Court and Bishop Lake Road, which exist to a very minimal extent today. But making a left-hand turn off that road again is going to be a very dangerous situation for both the new occupants of this subdivision as well as the existing owners now in that subdivision. So my clients come in with the perspective that we understood the reasonableness of this rezoning in 2015. The developer and the county obviously made a decision that the rezoning, that the development plan approved in 2015 was in the best interest of the community. It was an economically viable development. It's economically viable today. There is nothing unique about a subdivision on Johnson Ferry Road having difficult entry and exit points on Johnson Ferry Road. You cannot design your way out of traffic congestion on Johnson Ferry Road, anywhere in that corridor. This is not only, I would suggest, not a very good fix or not a fix at all, but with the assumption we have to have is that this is going to be a heavily traveled and used entry and exit point in that subdivision. Why else would they be building it if it wasn't? Then the amount of traffic that we're talking about will essentially double, if not triple, the amount of traffic that uses this road now. It's a very, it's a winding, vertical, horizontal curved road going into Bishop Lake Road. So my clients are coming here today viewing this as a very sudden, abrupt change in a development plan that everyone was comfortable with. What he proposes to do now is not suitable for this subdivision, Bishop Hollow subdivision. It's not suitable. It's not suitable for that street. I'm not sure that it makes any sense as a viable alternative for entry and exit in a subdivision. But again, we have to assume that it's going to be because that's what they're going to construct there. So we're hoping that you will not permit today for this development plan, which was approved in 2015 and should be a continuing economically viable use of that property, a sound development plan to be altered in this way in order to create, again, a convenience for these nine homes that assigns all of the impact and negative consequences of that convenience onto another subdivision. If you have any questions with me, I'd be happy to address them.
We may call you back up, Randy. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Kagan, you want to come on back up, please? You stated it was not your idea to open this up through to the Bishop Lake Court Drive. Someone approached you and suggested.
I was sitting down with him to discuss a landscape plan, and he mentioned, "What do you think about this?"
Okay, and you obviously liked the idea.
Yeah.
Okay. When you and I conversed, I told you at that point, or I asked you, "Have you heard of any of the neighbors that are opposed?" You said, "No."
That's right.
Something obviously changed, and at the last minute. You and I both heard about this late last night. And the question I have for you is, you're required to send out letters to every resident within 1,000 feet. Did you do that?
Not only that, sent out letters. And the gentleman that I'm working, homeowner I'm working with, he sent out a letter as well, saying, "I'm around if you want to." He couldn't make it here today, he'll be here next time, Jeff Williams. He said, "I'm around to talk about, discuss with you, any, anything that's going on." And he spoke to two gentlemen that are here today, and they didn't give any opposition then. So it was completely out of left field when I saw it.
Yeah, me too. I'm very available. I'm easy to find. My phone number and address is well-known, and I hear from people all the time. And I knew nothing about this either. So this last-minute email was a surprise to me as well. Tell me about the nine homes and the road that's going to go through there. I understood that it was going to be a gated community.
Correct.
Is that still your intention?
Yes.
So a gate on Johnson's Ferry. Where you connect through to Bishop Lake Court, it's going to, I'm assuming you're going to continue it for a period or a space and then have another gate?
Correct.
So it's gated on both ends?
Correct.
So the idea that there'll be cut-through traffic here really is not so.
Nonexistent, right.
Plus, when you come out on Johnson's Ferry, is there not a median there?
Correct.
So you're not able to turn but one way, to the right. So again, cut-through traffic would not make a lot of sense.
Right.
So what we're really talking about is nine new homeowners that may occasionally go back through this gate into the Bishop Lake Court area.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Have you spoken to these folks before today, these?
No.
Okay. I'm in possession of a letter from the president of the HOA that we're talking about here. And I'm going to read, it's a long one, but I'm going to read the last sentence. It says, "For multiple reasons, we strongly support zoning case Z63 and respectfully request that you approve it." How many people live on Bishop Lake Court? Do you know?
So there's two subdivisions on Bishop Lake Court. This one from the HOA, Jeff, there's four lots and three of them, there's three homes on it.
So this fellow, Jeff Williams, he represents how many?
Four lots, three homes.
Okay, four lots.
Yeah.
The other end, which I think is the enclave?
Well, no, this is the enclave.
This is the enclave.
Yeah, the other one is, it's either four or five.
And I think that's where the folks that Mr. Turner represents.
Correct.
Live, okay. And do you know how many people are there?
I think it's four or five homes in total.
Okay. All righty. Well, I wish we'd had a chance ahead of time to talk to these folks. I think we could have worked this out. But given what I know here, anybody have any questions? Mr. Kagan, go ahead, Skip.
I'm just wondering if we can, Tim, if we can back out on this just a little bit so that we can see that subdivision that it would attach into the cul-de-sac. So this is, this is the cul-de-sac right here that goes up.
Correct. So there's right where your mouse is, just south of that is where the gate is currently. And then there's a private road heading into the enclave. So we're going to be.
Where's the private road that goes into?
Well.
Bishop Lake Court is a private road.
Yeah, if you keep going, no, no, no. I mean, is there anywhere I can point to it?
Talk to the guy behind you right there.
Okay, yeah, that's, I understand that. That's a private road. And then there would be a gate right where it intersects the cul-de-sac.
Exactly. So also part of, part of the easement agreement I have.
And then the cul-de-sac has, you don't know how many homes, but it looks like it's, it goes on up past the top of our screen.
Right. I think it's about four or five. Maybe they could confirm.
So I guess my question really is, a question for DOT.
Yeah, so we spoke with Fred Bentley, and he kind of recommended it. So it was going to be originally a public road, and we recommended, let's do it private, and that way we could gate it on both, and then we don't have the cut-through problem.
I'm just wondering if Ashley has any comments on this or any perspective from DOT. She's our DOT rep. Can I call her up?
Sure, absolutely.
Ashley White with DOT.
Thank you, Ashley.
I didn't have any issues with it. From my understanding, they had an easement already, an easement agreement. And I guess at the time, the recommendations were made. There was no opposition from the community, so I didn't have any issue with that cut-through.
So this little small private road, it's large enough to handle an additional nine homes on there, in your opinion? Or do you have to look at that or what?
I believe so. It looks, it's narrowed in 24 feet, I know. But I believe it would handle, you know, cut-through traffic from nine homes.
Is there, what is the width of that road? Do we know?
I'm sorry?
Do we know what the width of that little private road is?
I'm not sure.
Driveway, it's a driveway.
It's just an easement.
And, okay, so it should handle an additional nine.
Mr. Kagan, come on up. You might can answer that.
Part of the easement agreement is to widen the road to 24 feet and to bring it up to county specs.
So the conclusion from that is that by what you're pointing to do, the easement in this little private road would be large enough to handle an addition, excuse me, an additional nine homes. And so the issue really is whether the homeowners in the cul-de-sac north would like the idea of seeing additional cars go through there or not. But the traffic, I mean, the road can handle that traffic.
The road can handle that traffic, especially if he's going to widen it to 24 feet, yes.
I just, I really wonder, though, how many times people are going to access Bishop Lake Road through this? I mean, we really don't know. I suspect it's not that much. We're not talking about increasing traffic on this road very much at all. I just don't see that. I think it's, I think the pros to this far exceed the cons, and I think the request is a reasonable one. I think it is for convenience, that's for sure. I think it is a way for them to share the expenses of maintenance in that area, that's for sure. But I also think it's a public safety issue. And I. But I also think it's a public safety issue, and I think if there is a problem, and we need fire, emergency vehicles, police, whatever, to come and go, or even the residents to be able to exit that area quickly, that becomes important. That's another way for them to leave the area. And improving the road, as Mr. Kagan said he's willing to do, to bring it up to code at least 24 feet wide, Mr. Kagan, and are we talking about curb and gutter or just widening the road?
Just widening the road.
Widening the road, to do at least 24 feet.
Yeah.
To county standards.
Yeah.
All of that is good, I think. I don't...
Question. If you're, it's gonna remain private?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then, so why are you doing, bringing it up to county codes? You're not gonna try later on to...
That's what Fred Bentley recommended when we do it, and that's part of what the...
What we usually see is when you do that, they wanna dedicate it back, they want the county to accept it later on, and there would have to be some kind of agreement that the county never would accept.
The county just said, even though we're not gonna be accepting it down the road because it's gated, we still want it to be according to our specs.
All the other stipulations that we put into place a year ago on this site, those still remain in effect.
Correct.
Correct. So we're not making any other changes?
Correct.
Okay, no variances? Okay. Any other questions?
One other question. Was this site not available to you at the time it came in for zoning?
I was only, oh, this? No. For original reason only, I wasn't even a part of.
Right, I understand that.
And yeah, only one of the stipulations was get a, the landscape of the, next to the tennis court over there approved by the neighboring HOA. So that's when I reached out to Jeff, who's the president of the HOA, and he recommended this to me, so.
This started, this started out, as I recall, y'all may remember it, Jimmy Nays' firm represented these people. Started out 10 or 12 homes, and we negotiated it down to nine, which I thought was a pretty good thing for the community. The community loved it when we did that. So all the steps, they'll remain in place. Okay, any other questions? Anybody? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do, in repeating myself, I do think that the pros for this far outweigh the cons. I think it's a, it is a convenience issue, that's for sure. I think it's a public safety issue. I think that's another point of view that is important to consider. The road will be improved, I like that. And it appears to me that there'll be very little impact on traffic. So for all of those reasons, I'm gonna recommend approval for Z-63 as presented, R-12 with the stipulations that Mr. Kagan laid out for us, and I would recommend this for the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners. Well, we'll try it. No? Okay, well then I'll withdraw that part, but I recommend approval of Z-63.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you incorporate all the 2015 stipulations in that motion? Are they in a letter or something? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Kristi?
I don't know that I necessarily have a problem with it, but I also am not so sure it's a great idea to connect these two communities for a couple of reasons. One, I think Mr. Turner's comments about turning left are so true. By the time you wind around and go up Bishop Lake Court and try to get out on Bishop Lake Road just to turn left at the light, you could've done a U-turn. Like, that part doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But what I do see is people being able to access Bishop Lake Road and turn right and get out towards St. Anne's Church to the light, to get to Roswell and 400 in that way, and not have to go all the way through Roswell Road, Johnson Ferry, past the avenue. So it might actually put R-12-type traffic on Bishop Lake Road where it's not today and maybe where we didn't plan for it to be. So I'm, I'm just kind of on the fence about it.
It's not going to invite cut-through traffic.
I didn't say cut-through, though.
Because it's gated.
But this is nine additional homes.
Right.
So R-12 is great. I think it's a good solution for Johnson Ferry and for this parcel, but then connecting it back to Bishop Lake, I'm just not, after hearing everything today, I'm not completely sold on it. I'm not really against it, but I'm not 100% certain either.
I think at the time it was zoned, they had an expectation that there wasn't gonna be any traffic coming their way, and that was why they didn't oppose it, was because at no point did it seem like they thought they would end up with nine homes coming through their neighborhood. And now we turned around, well, I don't think it's a bad idea. I do see some pros and cons of it.
Public safety part of it, maybe, with emergency vehicles, might be a reason, but it occurs to me that you could turn right on Bishop Lake and get out toward Roswell Road without having to go through the main Johnson Ferry intersection, and that might be inviting to people, so.
I really wish the opposition had showed up a little bit.
I do, too.
If we had had the time to look at it more.
It's more than a little disconcerting that we heard about this last night very late, when there was no time to talk to any of these neighbors about it, no time for Mr. Kagan to look into it and negotiate some sort of a settlement. I wish we had done that, but that didn't happen, and here we are. So my motion stands. I'm still in favor of Z-63. We have a second. Any further discussion? John?
Can I say something?
No, we're done with comments.
Mr. Chairman, could you just clarify that your motion to approve it is subject to the seven things that were on the consent agenda to begin with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And all the stipulations from the previous zoning would be in effect?
Yeah, and that is in here.
Okay, that's, that would be my motion. Okay, who seconded it?
I did.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's all vote, and see how it shakes out. Okay, well, it passes three to two, but it passes. Okay, thank you very much, folks. John, what's next, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning case Z-66, Pulte Home Corporation, request rezoning from R-20 to RM8 for the purpose of attached residential in land lot 748 of the 17th District. Property is located on the southwest side of West Atlanta Road, west of Atlanta Road, and on the west side of West Village Way. Application representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-66? Raise your hands. Let the record show there's three people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
John?
Is that four?
Can we count four and then call for support if you don't mind?
Okay. Can I get a show of people here who are in support of Z-66? Please raise your hands.
Four.
Four. Let the record show there's four people here in support.
I didn't raise mine, but you can count me.
No. That's a no.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, today, my name is James Bally with the law firm of Sam's, Larkin, Huff and Bally, and I'm proud to be here today on behalf of Pulte Homes on Z-66. Along with me today, there are representatives of the Cobb County School District in the audience today that support this application. It's before you for 46 single-family homes. The location of the property is on West Atlanta Road and a private road at this point in time called West Village Way. You see the site there depicted on the overhead. It is immediately adjacent to West Village, directly across the street from the new Wellstar site. And what you see there noted in the blue are home, are lots that are still zoned R-20, but all owned by West Village Associates at the current time, with the remaining lot or lots at the top being owned by the Owens family. Land use plan, as you see, we're immediately adjacent to the Community Activity Center. We are located in a medium-density residential land use category for the time being. It's been that way for some number of years with changing conditions in the area. Directly behind our site is a, what I guess is a vacant or rarely-used metal building warehouse site. That's owned by the West Village people. Directly across from us is what I was talking about, a four-story medical complex, 165,000 square feet, and you can see there on the renderings presented by Wellstar. And then, again, as I discussed, this is a better aerial where you can see what's actually on the ground. West Village, which we all know has been developed, not counting the commercial, at 22.83 units per acre. And again, you can see the overhead of the lots that own and basically surround the site are owned by West Village or one of their related entities. I want to address something that is the elephant in the room. It has nothing to do with zoning, but we need to talk about it, and I just want to briefly hit upon it. This is the site of the previous Fitzhugh Lee School. In 1896, the Manor family donated the land, and it's currently owned by the Cobb County Board of Education. There were reversion clause in some of the title work that allegedly caused issues if certain tracts were not used as a school. I want to make this very clear, these issues do not relate to zoning, as we've discussed, and this site does not include portions of the property where alleged questions remain. That being said, I appreciate the historical affection for the site, and I understand it, but that's just simply the facts. And I want to address one other thing. There's been a misconception, and you're gonna see some of the opposition today based on that misconception. There's a misconception that the school could've been used as a modern school by the Cobb County Board of Education, or that it could've been used by St. Benedict's Episcopal School, and that is incorrect for a variety of reasons. I'm not gonna go through them all, but one of, just briefly sized and scaled, would not fit or work for a modern school. The title work, which a lot of people don't realize, and our due diligence, also includes a prohibition against the site being used by a single denomination, which certainly St. Benedict's is. And so that prohibition is there. And third, and maybe more importantly, while the demolition has begun, if there were to be any acquiring of the site by private school, they would be subject to, as it's a child-occupied facility and is not grandfathered in when we make renovations under the renovations, repair, and painting provisions of the EPD and federal regulations, it would be absolutely cost prohibitive. Just the demolition is costly, but certainly to remove that asbestos lead-based paint or to be able to utilize it as a school would be in the thousands, hundreds of thousands, if not more, dollars. Our proposal is 46 single-family homes. You see before you today, selling price, $450,000 to $490,000 and up. This is a new, modern architectural style that has been utilized by Pulte. They are two to three stories over a two-car garage with the option, as you see there, for an upper space on the, what you see depicted as a sunroom or other, or other uses that could be utilized there. They are brick and have superior interiors. These are some of the options that will be offered on the interiors on the units and the homes that will be built there. I want to just let you know, Lennox Buckhead, this same prototype is going in, selling price at 600 and above. We think that these units, these homes will, will be easily at the four, upper fours, if not half a million dollars. I want to hit briefly on some of the benefits of this neighborhood, and I want to talk about this. This is owned by the Cobb County School System. And at closing, you're gonna have an immediate deposit of funds into the general operating account of Cobb County School System and a 2017 transformation of this parcel from one costing tax dollars to one generating tax revenue. And if it costs to maintain the building, certainly that's a negative, and if it's just sitting there, it's a, it's a neutral effect, and this will have an immediate effect. I've changed that for the good of the Cobb County School System and all of Cobb County. This site is also a transition from the higher intensity, often more appropriate discussion, as we've heard earlier, than density use that West Village is into this single-family home neighborhood away from the 22 units. We have a donation of right-of-way as part of this application. This is a big one that allows West Village Way to become a public road to serve the area residents. Right now, it is a private road, and that is not the case. We also have, when you compare it, if it were to be utilized as a school, and someone were to pay all of that money to do the remediation required, there would, this site has approximately a two-third reduction in the traffic compared to what would be there if it was utilized as a school. And I would argue that if you did a private school, you would have more traffic than that. Converting this site also to this development is able to convert peak-hour traffic trips to pedestrian access. And I want to talk about that because I think that really is the amenity, if there's ever an amenity of a development, this is an amenity, and it's the West Village development itself. It's, as you can see from the aerials, it's basically one block from Starbucks. There are numerous restaurants there, Thai West, McCrary's, West Village Tavern, Five Guys, Blue Moon Pizza. There's Fitness and Gym Center, there's a bank, there's a dentist, other professional services, all then walking distance of Z-66. So what does this do? It takes traffic off the roads, it puts the pedestrians on the access, and it certainly will affect, if not morning peak, it will have a dramatic effect, I think, on afternoon. I want to hit briefly on some of the stipulations that are filed, timely filed with Pulte, by Pulte on this. All the homes will be for sale, 10% rental restriction, the mandatory HOA with landscaping, the entrance, ground-based monument-style sign, the landscape plan that will be approved by the county arbors and the district commissioner. We hope to have more information on that before the Board of Commissioners, but as of now, we stipulated it must be approved by the district commissioner. The elevations are part of the, of this application and put into the stipulation letter, and there's other protections that are included. We won't go through during this presentation. Also, I want to mention one thing, and we've heard a little bit about it today. We're gonna hear about it maybe on this and maybe on the next one. But there is a rule, and the Cobb County Attorney, I hope, will back me up, that both the opposition and the applicant are required to have written material filed by the Wednesday prior to the Tuesday hearing. This is fair to you who have to vote on it, it's fair to staff, it's fair to the applicant, it's fair to the stakeholders. And we, I just want to remind that, while you have the option to hear it, you certainly have no requirement to do that, and I think maybe there should be a bigger focus on that to allow those points to be addressed by all sides. Want to talk a little bit about support. The one, or the two lots there that are owned by the Owens family, who have been there since 1927, the last residential owner occupied property around our site has asked for a 25-foot landscape buffer to join their site. They do have a large creek buffer that's wooded, they've asked for that. We don't think it makes sense to do that along all of the commercial that's gonna be developed, commercial, but we've agreed to do that. It's not in the stipulation letter. I agreed to do it on the record today, and I'll have it updated by the time of the Board of Commissioners. He's also asked for no Sunday work. We've agreed to that. That will be in the letter before the Board of Commissioners, but I agree to it on the record today. We've got three-quarters of a century of ownership. They now have no objection. They are the only residential owner occupied property left. Oakdale Ace Hardware, Mr. Nally was nice enough, he's in the audience today. Many of you who have been around for a long time would argue, and I think a lot of people would say, that the Nally family is a central part of Oakdale, and you certainly can't think of Oakdale without them. They made a half-century investment into their business there, and they urge approval, as you can see from the letter, it's part of the record, at 46 homes. The staff analysis equals yes. The staff has recommended approval. It states that it will prevent a use suitable and that it is adjacent, and notes to what I've stated, the 22.93 units an acre in the medical facility. They've stated it will not cause a burden of use of school streets or adjacent nearby property. And here's one I want to hit on. In the staff analysis, it says that Z-66 will mostly comply with the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan. Mostly is not a death sentence. The Cobb County Comprehensive Plan is a guide, not a mandate. And that is why we rely on the opinion of our professionals who are hired by the county to do that job, and who are then required by legislature and the law to apply the next element in the analysis. And that next element codified in Georgia Code is, are there existing and changing conditions which give supporting grounds for approving the proposal? Answer to that is yes, and that's why your staff recommends approval of 46 homes. We ask you follow that recommendation and recommend approval. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bally. Went over about 30 seconds, so we'll add that to the opposition. We'll hear from the opposition now, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Rose Barnes, Oakdale Community Association, and I have lived in my home in Oakdale within a mile of this property for 37 years. In spite of manipulation to inflate the acreage to 5-point acres, this application is for 46 units on an actual 5.1 acres, or nine units an acre for an RM8. For the protection of the adjacent residential property and for the RM8 code, the number of units should be a maximum of 40 units, which equals, equates to 7.9 units an acre. of units should be a maximum of 40 units, which equals, equates to 7.9 units an acre. This lower density would allow for outdoor amenities and possibly a place to meet neighbors. You will notice there's been no mention of any outdoor facilities at all. The proposal to allow some designated, some undesignated units to be four units is a poor marketing ploy. Not only the units would be mismatched, but some unsuspecting early owners might lose their million-dollar view. West Village is a good amenity, but the best amenity with this property is its million-dollar view. We concur that with DOT, that West Village Way, the only access to the property should remain a public road. It is now owned by the school board with a concomitant right-of-way and setback shown on the site plan. We would also request that the access to this road be widened at the access point. It is now a driveway and not sufficient for a real, for a cut-through road. As per county standards, West Village Way and West Atlanta Road should have sidewalks, curb, and gutter, along with the other guttering and curving in sidewalks. The county standard 25-foot landscape buffer to all residential properties should be enforced. Future residential redevelopment would be negatively affected otherwise. All these properties now, the other properties are not developed, they will be, and they need protection. There should be fencing and/or a landscape berm adjacent to the adjacent roadways to enhance the appearance and provide some protection, with these features approved by the county arborist and district commissioner. There should be no construction or vehicle parking on West Village Way, as well as the other adjacent streets. Wording referencing minor modifications by the district commissioner should include prohibition of changes to the zoning stipulations also. There should be no Sunday construction work. Neighbors who must endure the disruption and noise six days a week deserve to enjoy one day of quiet and protection, the protection of the noise ordinance. Losing the historical school on this site is a tremendous blow to those who live in Oakdale. Developers should be more than willing to provide a thorough historical study to commemorate the legacy of the oldest school in Cobb County. That was not mentioned in the stipulation letter. With our recommendations in place, this project could be of benefit to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Rose. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Tony Waybright, I'm representing Paces Green and pinching for Suzanne Ballou, that you would normally see up here when she is, when she's available. Just recently, Mr. Bally's partner was up here on Z-47, and he was advocating that the land use plan represented the board's policy regarding the density on a property and that it was appropriate to follow that policy. We agree. This density is listed as medium-density residential. When the densities and the land use plan were adjusted in 2004 and 2005, when West Village was done, those densities were selected because it was considered compatible with the other densities that were going in. The school board and no one else in that area objected to maintaining the densities as medium-density residential. The applicant also presumes that West Village, when it is developed in the remaining PVC section between West Village and the applicant, would be commercial as opposed to perhaps being townhome. And remember, there are townhomes and single-family already in the PVC. So it makes presumptions. Townhomes have been effectively used in our area of the county. They are typically put in when they are the last corner or the last parcel being filled in at a particular intersection, but not as something in the middle of other undeveloped property. So Paces Green is opposed to Z-66. The land use plan calls for RA5 as a maximum, five units per acre. That's where we think it should be. The other issue that concerns us is that it creates a precedent for allowing a developer to stack their density on one portion of their property and then come back in later or to sell their property for somebody else to come in later and apply for additional density. Staff has calculated the density at eight units per acre, but they are counting the .58 out parcel that is across the road. Any other developer that came in and said, "I have five acres on this side of the road and five acres on the other side of the road. I want to zone this acre but count all my density," would not be allowed to do that. You're allowed to count the acreage that you're zoning, and that's the way that we normally practice that. In 15 years of participating in zoning decisions and zoning actions, we've never seen that occur in front of this or any other panel. Mr. Bally also mentioned the school board as if the school board, being the property owner, was something special. You can look back at all of the other zonings in this area, and you will see that the school board has made comments, the school board staff has made comments indicating that other residential zonings were opposed because it would increase the density and increase the number of students attending the local schools. Less than a mile from this zoning, in the month of June, the school board had comments on a proposal to split one property into two and go from one single-family home to two single-family homes. They indicated that was objective, was objectionable, because it would increase the density of students attending the schools. And now, because the school board owns this property, suddenly the staff doesn't make any comments on 46 new homes. So we're not here to let them sell their property for more money than they have prohibited other homeowners or property owners from selling theirs for higher density. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else? You've got about three minutes.
My name is Bob Gregory, and frankly, I have a couple of grandsons at St. Benedict's School. And yes, it is a St. Benedict's School, but we take all denominations. I'm concerned about the density in housing. Now, this might be medium-designated. I'm new to the zoning regulation for Cobb County, having lived previously in Athens, Georgia, for about 21 years after retiring from the Navy. The only thing that lawyer didn't say was that the only thing not in the area, other than Starbucks and restaurants and so forth, is a school. A school that could be used for both public or private uses. The ability to expand the private school inventory in the area is non-existent if the Pulte plan is accepted. As a former chairman of the Athens-Clark County Board of Equalization, I find it hard to believe that the county school system really needs the money for the sale of this property to make ends meet. I think the appropriate land use would dictate the building remain an educational institution and hopefully, under the direction and guidance, hopefully, under the direction and guidance of St. Benedict's. And I have point papers for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Anyone else wishing to speak to this zoning? Okay, not seeing and hearing in any. Back to this board, I'll leave the discussion on this one. I heard from a lot of people on this. There are a few that went way above and beyond to help all of us understand the ins and outs of this particular zoning. Tony was one of them, Suzanne Ballou that he mentioned, Mary Rose, Randy Nally, Mickey Owens, two of the property owners in the area, and Father Brian Sullivan from the local church, St. Benedict's Church. I spoke to each of those, most of them in person. I got lots of other emails from many other people, lots of phone calls. I feel the need to repeat some of what James said, frankly, because I had phone calls yesterday from a number of folks who said, "I can't come, but I'm going to be watching on television, and I really want to know, why can't you stop this? We need to save those old historic buildings." Well, I wish I could. Nobody is more of a historic preservationist than Mike Terry, but I will tell you, that cannot happen in this case. James was right. There were actually two families. He mentioned one. The Browns and the Manners came together in 1896, and they each donated some land to the county. We didn't have a school board then, to the county with the stipulation that it be used as a school. If not a school, it had to be for some other public purpose, and they mentioned a courthouse or a non-denominational church, but they really wanted it as a school. So that's what they dictated. The land that they donated grew over time to be about two acres. Then the school system built the current school building that's there in the 1930s. Franklin Delano Roosevelt was by and large responsible for that. So yes, it is a very historic building. It's very old. It is the oldest remaining school building in the county. There's no question about it. And it is very beautiful. David, the pictures I gave you, put up the pictures of the school. I want people to see what we're talking about. This is a gorgeous old structure, and I want you to know what we're talking about here. The school system, over the years, has added to the original roughly two acres, and it now is about 7.2 acres. That's what they own totally in this area. That's the way the main building looks. That's the gymnasium. It is a gorgeous building. Scroll on down to see, that's the gymnasium. If you're about my age or perhaps in your 50s or 60s, maybe you went to a school that had a gym like this. All of that is still there, and it's intact. So it's a gorgeous building. I wish that we could save it. However, here's what the school system has told me in no uncertain terms. Number one, 7.2 acres, which is the total tract, is not big enough to build a school. Today, when they go out looking for land, they're looking for 10, 15, 25 acres, because that's the way they build schools these days. They don't want a little seven-acre tract. So that's point number one. Number two, this old building, as gorgeous as it is, as historic as it is, has a very high maintenance cost, very high. It's become totally prohibitive. Number three, there are schools in the area that service this area quite well. They don't need to put a school here. You have Teasley, you have Campbell Middle, you have Nickajack, you have others. You even have St. Benedict's, which is a private school and doing very well. So they don't need a school. They don't have enough land. They don't need a school. The maintenance costs are very high. So those were the issues faced with the county. The county does, however, need the money that would be generated by the sale of this property. But you have the issue of the roughly two acres that's controlled by the Brown and the Manor family. The heirs, the heirs of those two families are scattered all over the country. There are hundreds of them. They have to track them down. They have to get them to sign off on this. They've been unable to do that completely. They have some, but there's still others that they're looking for. They have a genealogist, I understand, that's looking for them today. So in the meantime, what the county has done, put up that map that I gave you. What the county has done, the county school system has done, they have carved out that upper-left-hand corner that you see with the little point on it, with the yellow highlighter around it. That's the Brown and the Manor site, and they set that aside. That is not a part of this zoning. That's why it's not 7.2 acres, it's 5.1. So we're only concerned with the 5.1. The school system does own the little tract on the right, that little triangle, but that's not really suitable to put anything there, because there's a road that goes through there that is a private road, and it really connects the backside of West Village to Atlanta Road. And that's a very heavily-traveled road. So that's not a part of this either. So we're only looking at the part that's right in the middle, and that's why we can't save the school. It's not on the site. The school is not, it's not in a part that we can save. So the school system has every right to save it. Now, we just heard from Mr. Gregory that it really wouldn't raise that much money. Do they really need that money? I have seen the quote, "It is going to raise a lot of money if they sell it." The high bidder was Pulte Homes. There were three, at least three bidders, maybe four. Pulte was the high bid. We're not talking about a small amount of money. We're talking about a large amount of money, and yes, the school system could use the money to build a school somewhere else where it's really needed. That's the bottom line. Now, having said all of that, that's interesting, but having said all of that, I want to look at the actual case that we're considering here today. Yes, this land use category is MDR. You're absolutely right. Medium-density residential means that you could allow up to five units per acre on the site. But there's more at play here than just that. I frankly wish this land use map had been changed a long time ago, because over the last decade, perhaps 15 years, everything around this has changed dramatically. We heard other people up here and in the audience earlier talk about the term and use the term intensity. Everything around this site is extremely intense, very. Just to the south of this and bordering this five-acre site, you have West Village. West Village, the density there, almost 23 units per acre. Now, that's intense. Directly across the street on Atlanta Road, you have the Health Park. We saw the images that Mr. Bally put up. Now, it's not, that's not up out of the ground yet, but they're beginning to raise the steel and grade the site today. That's going to be there. If you back it out a little bit farther and look at a GIS map, you have John Whelan has built many high-intense, high-density homes also in this area. Plus, we talked about, and you heard them talk about, the land to the west. If you look at those parcels where it says Track 2, from there down is all owned by West Village, as is everything to the south owned by West Village. I inquired, what were they going to put there and when were they going to put it there? They don't know yet, but it will be high-density housing. So this whole area has changed dramatically in the last decade, decade and a half. So yes, it's currently MDR. It really shouldn't be. It really ought to be high-density residential, perhaps something else. So it is MDR. Frankly, what they're proposing to do here at eight units per acre is really okay based on what's around it. It's surrounded. I've talked to the one homeowner, Mickey Owens, who owns the one lot just to the south of the Manor and the Brown property. He is very concerned, because he owns the land and has owned it since 1927. His family lives there now. He has a son, daughter-in-law, two grandchildren that live there. He's not going anywhere. So he did ask if we could negotiate for him a 25-foot screened landscape buffer. I think that's a reasonable request. He and also Mary Rose mentioned no work on Sunday. I think that's also a reasonable request. So we're going to handle that in the stiff letter. But all of this history, as interesting as it is, has no bearing on this case. What does have bearing on this case is what's around this site today and if it fits this area. Frankly, it does. It fits. James, come on back up. I want to ask you a few questions. There were some issues raised, as I was doing this investigation, about stormwater. Mary Rose mentioned the million-dollar view. She's absolutely right. If you stand in front of that beautiful old school building and you look to the south, you are looking at Atlanta, downtown Atlanta. You can see everything from Buckhead all the way around. It's a beautiful sight, but it flows downhill. Everything's going to flow downhill toward West Village. What are we doing to be sure that stormwater's contained?
Well, number one, we're going to comply with every one of Stormwater's comments that are in staff's analysis, but number two, there are, there is going to be underground stormwater retention on the site in between, I'm trying to say this off the top of my head, I believe 42 and 45, and then the units that are 38 to 35. There's an open area there. We, our engineer got with Mr. Braden at Stormwater, gave him an engineered plan. He's had a chance to review that, and that's what's going to occur there. Anything else that's needed, if anything else is, will be done in compliance with what Stormwater has recommended.
John, impervious, is the percentage allowed 40, 45%?
45%.
45%. Are you okay? Is your site plan no more than 45% impervious?
Yeah, we are not asking for variance to the impervious.
Okay, so we're okay.
And I don't have my engineer here today, but we will confirm that, but I believe we'll get with Dave to make sure, but we have not asked for variance. It better be, or there'll be, you know.
Mr. Waybright mentioned the small half-acre portion that I showed in my plan that I put up. Are you using that portion or not using that portion in your calculation for density?
I am not. I am not utilizing. Well, and it's not me. It's the county that verifies what the applicant says. That has not been utilized in, to the density calculation. There's a provision that has been implemented and has been implemented for over a decade, if not longer, by this present commission and previous ones that allow for, when there are redevelopment issues on the site, and the applicant is putting a lot of money into that to get an additional density calculation that's figured. A formula I don't have in front of me, but involves the right-of-way, the donated right-of-way, the redevelopment right-of-way, and that applies in this case. As you have pointed out, the building has to be demolished. There's a lot of redevelopment that has to go on. Pulte is paying for all that at closing.
So there is, you are allowed to use this other method for calculating density to get your under eight?
Well, it's at 7.99 is what the density calculation is. It's 46 homes. You know, it is, it's a system, like I said, that's been in place for over a decade.
Who currently owns that little half-acre corner? Is that the school system? Do they own?
Are you talking about the one on the other side of what's now the private road to the right?
Right.
I guess that would be. The school board does.
Is Pulte, do they have first right of refusal on it? Are they buying it?
It's my understanding we have a contract on that, but it's not in for rezoning, and I can't tell you, looking at that track, what the acreage is. But I think it all comes down to a situation where we had, there's an issue with that road. Residents like to use it. Area residents have used it for years, but it's a private road. And so when you come in and you have an issue with a private road... And so when you come in and you have an issue with a private road, you want to make sure that you have both sides of it under contract when you don't know what has to happen there.
So it's currently a private road?
It's currently a private road. We have it under contract. When you get into putting in utilities and whatnot, you want to make sure you own both sides of, of something like that. And, but as part of this application, we are donating it to the county, and it will remain a, become a public access point, be utilized by the area residents who have come to depend on it. And, and everyone I talked to, Mr. Nally and others, wanted to make sure that would continue, and it will if this application is approved.
So Mary Rose and others that mentioned that road needs improving, if you're going to make it a public road, it becomes Cobb County's responsibility. Improvements then would be the responsibility of the county.
I, I believe that that would be the case going forward if there were any future. We have got to donate the right-of-way and the current pavement that's there. If there are any improvements, you know, in a, in a future splotch or something, they would ensure that they have the right amount of right-of-way to do that. And I believe that Ashley DOT has done that in their comments.
Someone mentioned sidewalks. I know you'll have internal sidewalks.
Right.
I believe you're also going to require or going to give us, give the county sidewalks on both West Atlanta and the street we were just talking about. You're going to have external sidewalks.
We're going to get with DOT, and we're going to get with DOT and see what they want and certainly work with them. You know, a large part of this site is pedestrian access to West Village, and it only makes sense that you would have that. One thing that has changed, and we need to get, to see if they've changed any of the comments. Initially, there were two access points to this. We heard some of the neighbors who actually lived in the area who came to the community meeting that was held, had some comments about that. We've removed one of those entrances in response to that. So the question becomes what then is going to be required? But we're not asking for any variance from the DOT comments.
The rest of the questions that came to me, I believe, are covered in your STIP letter or we've already covered it here. The landscape buffer behind Mr. Owens' home, he did send me a letter. I think you have a copy, maybe it was an email. I think you have a copy of that. Do you think we can give him his required planted?
Absolutely. And I said it on, on the record, but I wanted to keep that timeliness rule. And I told him that it would be amended after this hearing, and we'll have that in accordance with rules.
Okay.
Which, it doesn't make sense, obviously, to do it when you're going to have other commercial against you or, or other high-density residential.
Any plans for fencing anywhere?
There may be some, some decorative fencing, but there's none at this point in time. We want to make it, like I said, pedestrian access friendly, where you don't have to leave unit or home 45 and walk all the way around a fence. You want to encourage people to walk to dinner, to.
I noticed in, in staff's comments that our planner, our historic preservation planner, put some comments requesting that Pulte, the applicant, provide the county to our planner photographs and a history of the site because it is a very historic site. If we're going to lose it, we need to at least record it, and I hope you're prepared to do that. Because I think that's important to do.
Pulte's done it on other sites. They're prepared to do it here. Portion's already been done, as you know, with Smyrna, and a lot of things have already there in the Smyrna Museum, but we certainly have not asked for variance from that.
Okay. Any other variances that I need to know about?
None, other than what staff noted, we talked about. We're not going to hide the ball. The 25 landscape buffer doesn't make any sense when you've got it all owned by a commercial entity, but it certainly makes sense against the residential, and that's what we've agreed to do.
I did get a call last night from someone asking about the, we call them hammerheads, but they're no cul-de-sacs. Rock Toler, if I could wake you up.
Yes, sir.
Come on up. There was a question about whether our fire department would have good access, let's say, to this site should we ever need to go in there to fight a fire. Are you okay with the site plan?
Rock Toler, I represent the Cobb County Fire Marshal's Office. You used a, a term that, that I wouldn't use, but acceptable fire department access in accordance with what we look for. You say good fire department access. Obviously, good fire department access is when you can drive all the way around a building 360 degrees. So acceptable fire department access is what I would say in accordance with the International Fire Code and our development standards.
Okay, so cul-de-sacs really would not be required in this case?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody have any other questions for James? The public comment time is over with. Okay, we're, we're through with public comments, so I appreciate it, but I can't take any more from the floor. Any other questions for James or comments from anyone?
I'm just curious which access is being removed from the site.
The original site plan had an access on West Atlanta Road. That's going to disappear, and the main access will be off of that little side street, West View.
I want to make sure that's the way we were going when I heard.
Yeah, that'll be the one access point. That is a highly traveled, that's the, the main entrance into the back part of West Village, and it needs to stay open. And so it makes sense to put your main access point right there. Plus, there's a red light on Atlanta Road, and that's, that's where people can come and go most easily. Okay, anybody else? Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve Z-66, subject to the comments and recommendations of county staff, including zoning department, fire department, stormwater management, DOT, water sewer, water and sewer, and the county preservation planner, and subject to the agreed to stipulations found in the letter from Mr. Bailey dated July 27, 2016, and the revised site plan, which does show that entrance gaunt that's attached, and subject to some alterations and additions to the STIP letter as follows. You ready to write, James?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go to the STIP letter dated July 27. On item number one, it is mentioned that this will be a three-story over garage. I would like that to read maximum height not to exceed 40 feet. Now, that's something you're going to need to take up with the BOC, but I really, I've gotten a lot of pushback from people on the density, but on the height as well. So let's, don't exceed 40 feet, which is the standard for the zoning you're requesting. Also, you mentioned three-sided architecture, meaning mainly three-sided brick. I'd like that to be four-sided architecture because there will be homes behind this eventually, and they need to be looking at a good-looking building. Let's go to stipulation number, number nine. Talks about, let's see here, all the entrance landscaping and other parts of this being maintained by the HOA, and the term maintained by the HOA is not in there. So at the end of the second sentence, it says implemented and maintained, and then add the words by the HOA. Number 10, there will be internal sidewalks. I would like to add at the end of the word sidewalks, curb, and gutter. So there's no mistake about what we're getting there. So there'll be internal sidewalks with curb and gutter. At the end of that sentence, we should also add sidewalks, curb, and gutter will also be installed along the frontage roads of West Atlanta Road and West Village Way per DOT standards. And on number 13, has to do with construction vehicles. That should read all construction and employee vehicles and delivery vehicles and other construction equipment must be parked and otherwise located on the subject property. And then at the end of that first sentence, where it says they will not be parked on West Atlanta Road or Atlanta Road, put a comma and say, or any other adjacent properties. There's lots of open parking around there in West Village, and we don't want you to have those construction vehicles down there as well. On number 14, item number 14D, no work on Sunday, period. Number E, 14E, says if there is blasting, and there's none expected, but if there's blasting, that folks would be notified. It says that only residences would be notified in advance. That should also say, and all businesses within 1,000 feet. And there's lots of businesses, so they need to know it too. Number 15, this is where I would add Mr. Mickey Owens' request for the additional landscaping. At the end of number 15, I would add the following. Additionally, per RM8 code, a 25-foot planted landscape buffer consisting of mature evergreen trees, approved by the county arborist, will be added at the western property boundary with the two lots currently owned by the Owens family identified as 4435 Oakdale Road. Further, every attempt must be made to retain and keep the mature and healthy trees and underbrush that exist there currently. There are quite a few trees there. We hope we can save those. Go down to number 18. It appears the detention facility that will be added, which does not show on our current plan, will be below grade, but I want to add, because that's not certain yet, I want to add at the end of number 18, any above-ground detention or retention, and there is a difference. Stormwater facilities will be fenced and landscaped with approval of same by the district commissioner and the county arborist. All fencing will be vinyl-coated chain link and at a height of not less than four feet. Now, that's if it's above ground. If it's below ground, that would not apply. Go down to number 19. I want to add an item. It's A, B, C, D. I want to add an item F. This has to do with approving minor modifications, except for those that, and this is an addition one, would be in direct conflict with or contradiction to any county code or zoning ordinances. I always like to see that one added. We're going to add a new one, number 20. Applicant will provide to the county historic preservation planner archival quality photographs of the existing school and a written history of the property and the school buildings clearly outlining their historical significance. And I will say, if you get, get to that point and you have a problem, call me. I have all of that, and I'll be glad to share it. That would be my motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Judy. Any discussion?
Clarification. Is what you just read about historic preservation consistent with Mandy's comments that are included in the staff comments?
It's a little more stringent than Mandy's, but yes, it's, it's consistent, yes. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and everyone who participated. Okay, John?
Mr. Chairman, did you want to hear the next zoning case along with its special land use permit application?
Yeah, please. Z-67 also has SLUP 9 with it, and we can hear those together.
Okay, we hear those together, but we're going to make separate motions at the end. Res zoning case Z-67, Stein Investment Company, request rezoning from TS to ONI, conditional for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-storage facility in landlots 764 and 765 of the 17th District. Property is located on the west side of Beach Haven Trail, south of Winchester Parkway, excuse me, south of Winchester Trail, and on the east side of I-285. Additionally, SLEP 9, Stein Investment Company, request a special land use permit for the purpose of climate-controlled self-storage facility in landlot 764, 765 of the 17th District. Property is located on the west side of Beach Haven Trail, south of Winchester Trail. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to these two cases? The record shows there's three people opposed. All those registered, address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Mr. Chairman, thank you again for the record. James Bailey with the law firm of Samzlarke and Huff and Valley here today on behalf of Stein Investment Company on Z-67 and SLUP 9. This is a TS zone piece of property that's seeking to go to office and institutional for a climate-controlled self-service storage facility. The property is located within a regional activity center on the future land use map for Cobb County. What you see before today, the, the site is a somewhat unique location. It is immediately adjacent to Interstate 285 and its right-of-way, where they're going to be building a wall along the edge of our site. It is 162 feet from the center line of I-285, and on the other side is bounded by Beach Haven Trail. You have RM12 immediately to the north. You have RM8, Old Ivy across the road, RM12 in PVC in the neighborhood. And again, the property is currently zoned TS, as I stated before. It is in a regional activity center, which is Cobb County's most intense future development category. Allowed uses include high-rise office buildings, regional malls, and residential developments. You can see that the regional activity center goes up. Beach Haven includes a portion of Old Ivy. Tourist services, let's talk about that briefly. What is allowed right now on the property is in a regional activity center and zoned tourist services. Current use is allowed without any rezoning whatsoever with just a land disturbance permit, heavy automotive repair, indoor and outdoor, truck and trailer leasing and parking, multi-level hotels for extended living, convenience stores with gas pumps, numerous other commercially intensive and high-traffic uses with a building that can be up to 50 feet tall with no zoning whatsoever. Give you some of the, the ground viewpoints surrounding the property. This is the Winchester Apartments, RM12. To the north of the property, zoned RM12, which has a maximum height of 40 feet. Old Ivy at Vining's, which we discussed earlier today, portions are currently zoned RM8, which has a maximum height of 40 feet. And that percentage, earlier zonings in previous years have allowed three- and four-story buildings with one floor being parking that is within the Old Ivy at Vining's development. So let's talk about what this building is going to look like. This is not going to look like your typical self-storage building. It has a mixture of brick and stucco. The two sides you see before you today are the ones, the front is the one that's showing with the word brick. All of the brown that you see pointed to is going to be brick and is going to be a nice architectural design. The height of this building, as measured by Cobb County Code, is 40 feet in compliance with RM8 and the RM12 surrounding it. What you see, the windows facing the bottom picture are all faux, or if they are not faux windows to have the appearance of an office building, they are, and it's in the stipulation letter, will be not visible through them so that residents in Old Ivy will not be able to see into the building. It does sit on a grade. You have the other four sides that are in the stipulation letter. This, this is the brick even on the side facing I-285. And if you can see on the bottom elevation, there isn't, what I talked earlier, a wall coming there. That will come up to the second story, which is one of the reasons why, even though we're 40 feet, we needed to be that height so that we could be seen from 285. Current homes on Beach Haven Trail, right across the road from our site, are, as what you see depicted before you today. But we need to understand the drop in contour. This site sits in a whole high point on Old Ivy's 908, 900 at the front, and then at the midpoint down there at our property is 866 feet, which is a 42-foot drop in contour, which not only will our building comply with the height requirements of what would be RM8, it is going to be seated substantially lower from the I. What I'm talking about, and I want to get to this a little bit, ONI sometimes states that buildings should be, but not shall, should be consistent with adjacent property. There are adjacent buildings. There are no adjacent buildings to us, but there are some nearby, and that is the RM8 40 feet. However, due to the zoning stipulations in Ivy Walk, what you see before you today, there are buildings in Ivy Walk that have four-plus stories directly adjacent to the two- and three-story homes in Old Ivy that are directly across the road from our site. So we believe we would meet that even if it said nearby and not adjacent. There is an existing mature buffer. This is on the other, on the current side of Old Ivy. You can see those trees between the homes, looking at our site, already in place, will remain. There is a existing mature buffer south of the proposed site that will remain in place when the site is developed, and there is trees located to the front of the site that's within the right-of-way that will remain. So there will be significant mature trees that remain in the line of view between 285 and our site. What I'm talking about, you can see before you today, all that you see in green is going to be undisturbed. The mature trees will stay. It's approximately 1.4 acres. There will be landscaping around the front of the building to screen the entryway and also toward the rear of the building. And while there will be stormwater detention toward the rear of the site, that will require disturbance, it will not be utilized once that is in place and functioning, and we believe that is a significant benefit to the surrounding property. I want to talk to you about the landscape plan. That is a landscape plan that's hard to read from here, and I apologize for that, but it's labeled and it's in this presentation and will be in the updated stipulation letter. I did not have that on last Wednesday to file, but you can see this is depiction of some of the landscaping that is going to be implemented there at the front of the entrance in between those mature trees that are currently on Old Ivy and will be in front of our building. We have stipulated that. The district commi- Old Ivy and will be in front of our building. We have stipulated that. The district commissioner will approve that plan as well. Let's talk something about the benefits of Z-67. A self-storage facility will offer a more attractive and low-impact use, which will benefit the surrounding area and what is currently allowed. A significantly reduced traffic count compared to what is currently allowed in a tourist services, as our site will have approximately 10 to 12 trips per day, have eight to 10 parking spaces. Stipulation letter provides numerous protections that we've already talked about and which none exist today as the property is currently zoned. We've hit upon the large portion that will remain undisturbed, allow for the mature buffers, and less than half of the site of impervious coverage, which a lot more is allowed under the current zoning and any other commercial zoning. Low-intensity environmental lighting directed to the interior of the site, so there will not be lights shining into Old Ivy, and no visible windows, what we've talked about before. There will be no noise, no outside storage, and removes the commercial uncertainty that's associated with a commercial zone property that would allow a five-story building and a myriad of other more intense commercial uses. So, let's turn again to the staff analysis. The proposed development will not have an adverse effect on the usability of adjacent or nearby properties. It will not result in a burden or an excessive of burdens of use on streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. That includes traffic. It will provide a step-down zoning from what is zoned there now and what is out on 285 now. And I want to read this, that staff opinion that there are existing and changing conditions. Affecting the use and development of the property and the applicants used would be suitable, given the character of the area, which includes apartment homes and condominiums in the immediate area. Now, I agree with that. I also agree with their last sentence. It is a quiet, low-traffic generating use. Again, that is our staff professionals. DOT has made comments about this. We have not asked for a variance for those DOT comments. Those include a deceleration lane to help at the entrance, even though we have 10 to 12 trips a day. We are not here today asking for a variance from that. This will have zero to no traffic. And I ask that you follow staff's recommendation for approval and recommend approval for Z-67. It's where it needs to be. If ever a self-storage should be approved, this is it. And before I finish, I want to briefly address about 11 o'clock last night, we've got an opposition letter. It wasn't, I didn't get it until this morning, from an attorney who claims to represent Old Ivy across the road. He was contacted last week by my office, asked to verify whether or not he represented Old Ivy, so that I wouldn't contact his client if they were represented. I did not receive a telephone call. Included with that is that there was a conflict of interest with him representing them and opposing our application because his firm represents my client. And instead, today, we received a last-minute, eight- or nine-page letter, which is all wrong, and I don't want to use my time to go through it, but it shouldn't be allowed. I object to it. It shouldn't be put into the record. We've got a rule for that, and if they expect you and your staff to review eight- or nine-page letters, they should come in before midnight the day before the hearing. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you follow your staff's recommendation of approval and approve this application. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Let's hear from the opposition now.
Members of the commission, my name is Martin Shelton of the law firm Wiseman, Noack, Curry, and Walco. I do represent Old Ivy at Vining's Neighborhood Association, which is the overall, Neighborhood Association encompasses all 295 residential units that surround this proposal list. We, I apologize that we sent a letter in 11 o'clock last night. We were unable to put together until we had the staff's recommendation because of the sparsity of the application that was put in there. I will not disagree with Mr. Bailey that he may have called my office last week while I was in St. Simons, didn't get back until Monday, and I didn't have any voicemails from him, and, you know, so I put that to miscommunication. So, I mean, I'll take responsibility if I missed his call, but we did our best to provide what our clients want. They didn't, they were unable to identify whether or not they were in opposition to this until they were able to read the staff's report because the applications which were presented and available from the public that we got about, we got the end of the prior week from the county, didn't really contain enough information for them to figure out what was really even going on next to them, other than what they said in their analysis, which was also very sparse. And the primary, you know, they've asked for me to speak in opposition for it, I mean, both because they have concerns about what's going on, and because they have concerns about whether or not that, well, the concerns that an approval would be unconstitutional, that it would affect their constitutional rights and respect the value of their property. But by and large, a lot of this is because with so little information provided to them up to this moment, because we've gotten more with this presentation, up to this moment, they haven't really even been able to effectively analyze or configure out or even understand what's really going on on this property. They can look, they know the property. They can look at it. They know, for instance, when we talk about stormwater, that what the proposal that they receive shows that there's going to be fill in the property, that it's going to adjust the floodplains, that they're going to have to have a stream buffer variance, that they're putting in a tension pond, all of which goes into a stream, although it slopes down from Old Ivy, it goes into a stream which goes back into Old Ivy. And they have significant concerns about the flooding that's going to occur from the development because there's been a lack of analysis for them to look at. And they are concerned about oversaturation of storage facilities in this area within a two-mile radius of where this thing will go. There are eight or nine storage facilities already existing. The character of the neighborhood, this may be zoned for TNS, this area that's got streams and some ravines on there that they're going to have to fill in to build anything, but everything around it is residential. And so, I mean, I think that, as somebody pointed out to me last night when I met with this large group from Old Ivy, that, you know, it's a use that was chosen a long time ago, and the character of the neighborhood itself has developed differently from what the county may have planned two decades ago. So, in the sense that they would love to see the TS zoning designation go away. They are not prepared to do anything other than to oppose the storage facility that they proposed here because they simply haven't been giving enough information to go through and to determine the impacts that it has on them, okay? And understand that what we're talking about is what we're getting from the materials that we had from the county, which consists of two very short applications and the staff's report. Most of what I saw on the screen in Mr. Bailey's presentation was from a revised plan, which we've never been given. And some of what they have proposed, I think, are things that, you know, that my client and the members of Old Ivy would probably, you know, feel good about, you know, would help to actually bring them along to accepting or being more comfortable with what's going on there, but they haven't been given a chance to look at it or evaluate that at all. They have, they are concerned with the traffic issues, not so much in the number of car trips that are generated from this. I mean, currently, there are no car trips generated from the woods. So, I mean, the storage facility is certainly going to increase the traffic. It's the nature of the traffic that they're concerned about. The entrance to the facility on the design plan that we have shows it directly across from Old Ivy, where already trucks can't pull into Old Ivy. They have issues with trucks turning around and causing significant damage to their entrance, and they're concerned about how that's going to interact with an entrance across from them. They have concerns about the way that the traffic actually flows on the road and the safety with getting in and out of their existing residential neighborhood and how that's going to be magnified when you add in moving trucks and other things with a storage facility. Now, you know, they also have concerns about, they have concerns about the height and light and the noise in the facility. Some of those may actually be addressed with the revised application. They'll grant you that, but again, we haven't had a chance to go into it. The stream buffer and wetlands impacts which occur on the property, the things that they're going to do are going to change, they will change the characteristics of the stream. They will change the floodplain impacts. I mean, I note that the staff recommends that they will need to secure an amendment revision from FEMA in order to do this, which means that they believe that the nature of the floodplain, that area, is going to change. And that is not something that there's, we haven't seen any hydrologic analysis. We haven't seen anything that actually tells us what's going on with that so we can know what's going on. And, you know, if this site, when it is developed, if they, it's very likely, you know, they will increase the volume of water going down the stream, but if they've also reduced the amount of flood capacity that's within this property, then we're going to end up with a lot of homeowners at Old Ivy suing the people who own that property, and maybe the county. It's something that could be avoided if we put a little better effort into planning for that, making sure we don't get into the stormwater issues. Now, the applications that we reviewed, we believe that they have procedural defects in them, that there's, let's see, the legal description or warranty deeds in there, as was required by the application itself. The site plan failed to be made in the minimum requirements that's set forth in the code 134121-4, in terms of whether or not it adequately identified the streams, buffers, and wetlands. And there was no traffic study provided, even though it would appear that it is greater than 50,000 square feet, and that's what your code says is required for that. And the impact analysis that is provided doesn't go into meaningful analysis of these issues that I've mentioned here in the sense that it doesn't go through and talk about whether what the impacts are to the neighboring facilities with respect to the impacts, the wetlands and the streams and the rest of that. We have gone through that in what we submitted last night. If you, I would ask that you consider that. If not, we will take it up with, later on, with the Board of Commissioners if it's approved. We think it's appropriate to either deny this or to defer it so some of these issues can be addressed. And with that, I will leave it so that I reserve some time for some of these other people who want to speak. With respect to the conflict of interest thing you raised, my firm has never represented the Stein Investment Group, not even a single time. They represent another homeowners association, which is affiliated with another company, which is affiliated with the Stein Group, and our client has not called us and told us they have any problem for it for doing. We do not have a conflict at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon again. I'm Mary Rose Barnes, Oakdale Community Association. OCA board stands in opposition to this application. Personal note, I travel this road now with trepidation. It is narrow. It is winding. A lot of development in the area, a lot of development now, ones that are considered in the future, and it's not going to get any, traffic is not going to get any better. The property is encumbered by floodplain, creek, and possibly civil war trenches. The use is too intense for this location. There will be times that traffic is very, very heavy, and we're talking about large trucks that are sometimes difficult to navigate, even possibly people driving U-Hauls that don't know how to drive trucks. Even more attractive architecture than was presented. Enhanced landscaping to protect the neighborhood, and a decelerance won't solve the basic traffic problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Rose. Next speaker?
Sandra Hembry. Having had the opportunity to visit in Old Ivy, both as, for personal reasons and professional, as a real estate professional, Old Ivy was developed. It is a nice complex, and there have been a lot of good people that live in that complex. However, since it was built, Beach Haven Trail has become a hodgepodge of different uses and whatever, and so you've got different characteristics that, should I say, may not present Old Ivy in its best, in its best light today because there are so many other things going on in the area. I have to, I have to, piggyback on, the road, Beach Haven Trail, has a curve that is very difficult. Most of the times, the speed limit, it is a curve. I can, I know from personal experience, whenever you're going to take anything to a storage place, either in a truck or a car or have, moving down to do it, you're tired, and it is, it is not, it is not a road that is conducive to trucks that have things that need to be stored. I would like to see this developed in another use. There are problems. There are certain complex things about the entrance into Old Ivy, and yes, the trucks would have presented problems at times, and they don't need any more trucks in that area. Thank you for listening to this little old lady, just knows how to drive through. Oh, one more thing. This road is beginning to be more and more of a cut-through road because both Atlanta Road and Cumberland Parkway, which just goes in between the two of them, are getting, are getting busier and busier. So, everybody in this area is looking for a way to get somewhere quicker. And so, it is more of a cut-through road than it has ever been. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay, I don't believe we have any other speakers, so it's back to this body. This is also in District 2, so I'll leave a discussion on this. As you heard Mr. Bailey say, this is in a rack, a regional activity center, and it is currently zoned TS, which is tourist services. And as James outlined, there are so many uses that could go there without ever coming before us or the BOC. Just need to pull some permits and get busy building. James mentioned a few that I don't think would be appealing to the existing neighbors. So, it goes without saying that that would be the case. You don't want a big car lot, truck leasing facility, paint and body shop, a bus station, convenience stores, all of this, hotels, motels, a mall, all of this could be built there now. So, a low-impact, high-quality storage facility, I think, would make much more sense. It's one of the better uses. Wherever we have approved these in other parts of the county, we've never, to my knowledge, we've never had somebody come back and say the traffic is killing us. James mentioned that their studies show 10 or 12 trips a day. All of the other uses that Mr. Bailey mentioned and that I just mentioned would generate thousands of trips a day. So, I think the traffic issue is a non-starter for me. I don't think it would be a problem at all. I think it would be a benefit to have this use here rather than any of the things that could go there under TS. When I consider, too, that probably, I'm guessing 30% of the site will be undisturbed, plus they're going to enhance part of that with additional plantings. We heard a mention of possible civil war site. I was talking to Mandy, our preservation planner, ahead of time, and also to James. It's difficult to tell where those trenches, civil war trenches, are exactly, but it's our opinion, it's my opinion, that they're not where they're building. They're to the northern half, northern third of this site, and they won't be impacted. They'll be left undisturbed, so I think we're okay in that regard. But there are some other things we need to talk about. James, come on back up. I think Martin raised some interesting points that we ought to cover. O-N-I, which is what you're requesting for your zoning, does have certain requirements for a climate-controlled storage building. I believe you're okay on all of these, but I had a lot of people ask me to be sure. You have one main entrance, as is required. All the windows are one-way windows. You mentioned that earlier, so that's okay. That's to prevent putting flashing neon signs facing Old Ivy or Beach Haven, so that will be taken care of. Complementary architecture is also something it says you must have with adjacent buildings. Now, I know these Old Ivy buildings are across the street. I don't necessarily consider that adjacent, but they're going to have to look at this. Those people are going to be looking at this. Talk to me about the architecture. Is it an all-brick facility? What is it?
It's not an all-brick facility. Often, you see these uses, when they're close to 285, they're all stucco, or they're some other kind of ephes-based material. In recognition of Old Ivy, the applicant has gone, and you can see, that is brick. That is not, you know, siding. That is brick. Some of the lighter color will be a stucco mix. I don't think it makes sense to do four-sided brick next to 285. It does make sense to try to make it look better. It is not, you can see all of the money that will be spent on the windows, architectural design windows, to make this look more office-like or residential, however you want to describe it. But they have a significant amount more money to do this than what you would see in some other areas. And so, they've recognized that, and they've agreed to do so. And I believe, I don't know if I mentioned this before, the district commissioner will approve the final elevations as well.
I would hope we're not going to see a bright pink building there.
You're not.
Some of these storage facilities that you see up and down Roswell Road, for example, are brightly colored to get your attention. We can't have that here. They've got to be earth tones, muted colors.
And we have stipulated that by putting those into the stipulation letter as part of the stipulation letter. And again, the good news about this is we want 285 side to see it, not Old Ivy. So, that's why we stipulated no signs on. So that's why we stipulated no signs on this side, no visible windows.
Okay. But a monument sign?
Monument-based sign in the middle. Any wall signage would be facing 285 on that other side.
Good. Outside storage? A lot of these places allow cars, campers, boats?
None of that. It's in the stipulation letter.
Okay. No overnight accommodations? You can't rent a space and then live there? You can't manufacture there?
Maybe to be safe. But no.
Talk to me about the landscaping, which is very important to the people in Old Ivy. They're going to be looking at this, so we need some enhanced, very nice landscaping.
And you can see, and we don't have it in front of us, but they've identified what those plantings would be. They're more than what I think would be required to go there, but they're agreeing to do that. They're concentrating it around the entrance. Because if you looked, you saw a side previously, a lot of the entrance is already shielded or will be by that mature trees that are already on the Old Ivy side. So then you match that up with the landscaping you saw earlier, and I think that's going to provide a very beneficial screening. Now, remember, unlike other sites, a large portion of this site is going to remain, you know, the 40, 50-foot, whatever they are, tall trees that are there now. And we're not talking about replacing them with 14-foot, you know, they're going to stay.
Going to be an employee on-site?
There will be one to two employees that work the office. This is not a, you know, you don't have 15 people there. It's not any kind of a high-intense employee situation.
Hours of operation?
Nine to seven. Typically, the hours may be less than that, but we don't want to come back and try to hide the ball. If we think that a person sitting behind a desk does better for the customers, we would do that. And again, no noise. They're all inside, sitting at a computer, just like the guy across the road, sitting at his computer. So it's not, it's not a situation where you've got high traffic because of those.
I only bring that up because Mr. Sheldon mentioned unwanted activity and the noise issue.
There's zero noise associated with these sites compared to any other use. I don't think, I mean, all of the activity goes on inside. All the doors are shut when you're opening the interior. I mean, there's just no noise. There's no access. I think we put after midnight, we don't like to, don't want them out there at all hours of the night.
So it's closed from midnight until when?
From midnight until nine, I think, the next morning. It may be earlier than that, but the first employee would get there at nine. It would certainly be no earlier than the morning commute.
Okay. Exterior lighting? I think we covered that in the step letter. I believe we've covered most everything. Utilities that may be on the roof would be screened, I would assume?
Yes.
If there are any air conditioning units?
And what you can see there is a roof line, and then you see the architectural pitch-roof designs. Those are designed to make it look better, nicer, and also to screen the utilities if they're located there.
Talk to me about the stream buffer and stormwater management. That is also a concern many folks have expressed to me.
They are correct.
You've got a buffer. There is a stream that comes under I-285 today. What's going to happen to that stream?
It's going to be piped and moved. It's going to be evaluated by state and federal agencies that do that. It's an expensive process. It will make this current situation better. I believe that it's a process that has to be done. It will then allow a large portion not to be disturbed, and will make it better.
So put underground?
Underground.
Away from the building, so you're not building on top of it?
No. It requires the whole thing to shift. So you're going to have a new buffer area where it goes, and that will move those out, provided the permits are done. At zoning, this zoning has no effect on that. We have to comply with stormwater, but still have to go get the review by the state, which on an area like this, this close to 285, where you've got an older system that they really would rather have updated, I don't think is going to be an issue. But it will all be safe, engineered, and proper, and, you know.
Every speaker mentioned the road. It's very narrow. It is. It is winding. This is close to a curve. It is directly across the street. I would say, too, the fact that trucks may have a problem getting in Old Ivy is probably partly because it's a gated community.
Right.
And when they pull in there, they can't get in. They have to stop. They have to do whatever is necessary to get the gate to open. This is not going to be gated, is it not?
It is not.
So trucks should not be backing out into the road. They should be able to pull straight up in there if there are trucks that come and go.
And it will have a deceleration lane to get them off the road so that those trucks that are backing up into Old Ivy can get around them.
Okay. I do know that there was a neighborhood meeting held. I do know that you sent out your letters to everyone within 1,000 feet. I did not hear from anyone. I didn't hear from the attorney. I did hear from some people that live close by, but not the Old Ivy folks. The comment was made that there's a lack of information. If you just asked, it was there. No one asked. No one called me. No one emailed me. I don't know about you. You said you didn't get a call either. But there was a community meeting held. I don't know if anybody from Old Ivy came, but they certainly could have, and it was advertised. So I think information was available. Everything that we just covered here could have been had at that information meeting. So that's fine. Where will your dumpsters be? Inside or outside?
There may be no dumpsters on-site. If they are on-site, they will be, and it's in the stipulation letter, completely screened from view. I don't know if there will be, but if they are, they'll be completely screened from view with architectural screening.
Okay. Any other questions for James? Anybody? Thank you, James.
Mr.?
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion then. My motion would be to approve Z-67 for O&amp;I zoning, subject to staff comments and recommendations, including the zoning department, fire department, water and sewer, stormwater management, DOT, and the historic preservation planner comments, and subject to the agreed conditions found in the letter from Mr. Bailey dated July 27th, and the revised site plan that is attached. And I understand there'll be a few tweaks done to that before the BOC hearing, and I think that's fine, with a few alterations, as we always have, to the stipulation letter of 727. Stipulation number one talks about the height of the building being three stories over a basement. At the end of that sentence, I would add for a maximum of four stories, as the code allows. Also, there's in that same number one, it talks about using real brick, not faux brick, and that's important. I want to add to the end of that that the brick color and the other ephys, which is the stucco and so forth, should be earth tones in color, or earth tones, and will be pre-approved by the district commissioner. Let's see, number three, it talks about, this is use-specific. At the end of that, we should say with no special exceptions allowed. That means no retail on the site. Also, number four, stipulation number four, there's no mention of an on-site employee, so that needs to be added. At the end of number four, there will be an on-site employee present during regular operating hours. Number seven, which has several parts to it, 7A, I want to reference the unused or undisturbed portion of this site and add at the end of 7A, any future use of the, let's see, any future use of the undisturbed portion, northernmost portion of this site must be approved by the BOC as an other business item. So if six months from now, they come up with a use for that, they have to come back and let the BOC have a look at it. Let's see. Number seven, E, talks about on-site storage. To me, that wasn't very clear. I'd like to delete that entirely and replace it with the following. There shall be no vehicles, including automobiles, recreational vehicles, boats, campers, buses or buses, stored on the site, and likewise, no combustible or flammable products can be stored on the site. Number eight has to do with signage. There's a sentence that reads, signage will comply with Cobb County sign ordinance and will be located on the west and south portion of the building. That portion, south, should be eliminated because that's the part that faces Beach Haven, and James agreed to eliminate that. So it should, the word "south" should be eliminated. And then at the end of that, a sentence that reads, there will be no signage on the building facing Beach Haven Trail. Number nine is redundant. It's what's stated above, so that can be deleted. And in its place, we should put no overnight accommodations on-site, and no manufacturing on-site would be allowed. That's really a part of the code, but I was asked to put that in. Number 12, let's see, I'm sorry, number 10E, it has several parts. 10E should read, during the construction phase, all employee vehicles, delivery vehicles, and equipment will be parked on the site and will not be parked on Beach Haven or Log Cabin Drive or any of the adjacent properties. Stacking of vehicles on these roads will not be permitted. Number 12, there's no mention of the decelerated lane, although DOT did request it, but that's a good place to put it. At the end of number 12, just simply say, and a decelerated lane will be added on Beach Haven Trail per DOT standards. And I believe that will cover it. I believe the step letter takes care of everything else. That would be my motion. Can we get a second?
A second for discussion?
Second from Gault. What's your discussion?
My discussion is the hours of access going all the way till midnight. I think that's a little late. I'd say maybe 10 o'clock or something, you know, coming across.
I asked about that earlier. That same wording is used on the last several climate-controlled buildings that we did.
Well, we did one last month, though it wasn't. We cut it off earlier last month.
The ones I had, I know it was used because I asked for copies of it. Anybody else have a problem with the midnight? It closed from midnight until, I believe, James, it says 6:00 AM. I believe that's what it says. And no access allowed at all during that time period. Anybody have a problem with the midnight?
I don't really have a problem, as long as we're being consistent with the way we handle these, depending on where they are and what they're adjacent to.
I found several examples of where that's what we did. Gault says he had one where, what did yours say?
I think we cut it at 10. I believe we did.
Anybody? John, do you know what the standard has been? I found midnight on several.
It does range. Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Bailey a question? You know, the one that comes to mind that was the most sensitive one was the one we did on Roswell Road last year or the year before. Do you recall the hours of that one, Mr. Bailey?
I believe it's midnight as well. And the reason for that is oftentimes, people moving from one job to another get on the road with a U-Haul truck that has to be back at 7:00 AM the next morning. They arrive on-site at 9:30. We don't want to make them have to pay a whole nother day of U-Haul truck if they can get their stuff in and out within a reasonable hour. They will have card access only when there's no, so you would already have to be provided identification and everything else, and have a unit there before you would have any access after 7:00.
I think it's okay to leave it at midnight, and then if that is an issue with any of you that are here for this case, you can take it up before the BOC hearing. But I believe I'll leave it at midnight. Okay? Anybody else have a?
I had another question.
Yes, ma'am.
With regard to the signage, it seems like there might be some misunderstanding. I don't know, but it sounds like we're prohibiting signage altogether on Beach Haven.
No, there will be a large, well, a monument sign on Beach Haven, but nothing on the building.
Okay.
The people at Old Ivy, the one I did hear from, I got a call, said we don't want to see a big sign facing our building.
Sometimes they'll have a sign just above the front door or something smaller, not necessarily on the roof line, but something that just identifies, I don't know. Maybe that's something to think about over the next couple of weeks. That's exactly how that'll be handled.
A monument sign facing Beach Haven and Log Cabin Drive, which really starts right there at the curve, Log Cabin this way, Beach Haven that way. I think that would be fine to have something on the building facing 285.
We, and part of it.
And you've agreed, nothing on the building facing Beach Haven.
Yeah, well, I said on the west side, which is the longest side that does, in fact, face Old Ivy entrance. The entrance that, the south, does not face the Old Ivy entrance and is, in fact, located behind that area, those large, tall trees that are located on the Old Ivy side. I think it's reasonable, in exchange for all of the architectural money spent on the side facing Old Ivy, to allow them to have a sign. Now, they're not here today to ask for a variance to the sign ordinance, as you've seen before, but they are asking, and I think it's a reasonable request, to be allowed to comply with the Cobb County sign ordinance on the south and east side only. You would have absolutely no signage, which is quite frankly unheard of, on the long side that is actually tilted toward Old Ivy.
This is the south side.
I think you ought to be allowed to have a signage as long as you meet the code, and whatever the code says.
I'm looking at the site plan, and the south side is really the smallest side.
Right.
And it faces the curve. It's not really directly across from Beach Haven.
Right.
I think you're right.
Thank you, sir.
So I think, I think as long as it complies with other standards for Cobb County, I think you're okay. Okay? Anything else?
Yeah, that was one of my questions, and that's been answered. The other question was, you were stipulating that there will be a person on-site during the day.
During regular business hours.
And I thought James said they may or may not want to do that.
No, I said that we wanted to have someone during regular business hours there. In the past, we have had a range that was not 9 to 7. And we would ask that we be allowed to have somebody 9 to 7. But, you know, if we're required to do so, that makes it easy. But sometimes, you know, if we begin to understand that there's not anyone coming to sign up after, you know, 3 o'clock on a Sunday, maybe it makes sense to not have someone there and only allow access by card. We wouldn't want to be prohibited from doing that, but we would, you know, the other way if it turns out that someone needs us there from 9 to 7.
Okay.
I think we're reaching the same thing, but I'm saying it maybe backwards, which I do on many occasions.
Anybody else? Okay, you've heard a motion. You have a second. All in favor of the motion. Well, I pushed it twice. There you go. Thank you, Dave. We do need a separate motion for the SLUP, which is required for a self-storage building. The same thing applies there, so I would enter, I would make a motion that we approve SLUP 9 as presented.
One second.
Anything else need to be said about the SLUP? Same conditions would apply as we just discussed.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. We do have a second from Christie. Any further discussion? All in favor of the SLUP. There we go. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, John, what is next, please?
And the next case has a SLUP with it also. Do you want to hear that together and make a separate motion?
What is it? Z-71?
Yes.
I don't see why not. Has it been two hours already? Anybody need a break? Let's keep going. Do you need a break?
No.
Okay.
I'm good for eight more hours.
Okay, let's go. Let's go. Yeah, let's do SLUP 10 and Z-71 together, and we'll do separate motions again.
Resoning case of Z-71, the SAE School, request a resoning from GC NR 20 to NRC for the purpose of a private school, and landlots 68, 69, 164, 165, 166, 180, and 181 of the 18th District. The property is located on the southwest of the side of Veterans Memorial Highway, east of Hickory Trail, and on the southwest of the side of Veterans Memorial Highway, and on the north side of Queen Mall Road, and with its accompanying special land use permit, SLUP 10, the SAE School requests a special land use permit for the purpose of a private school, pre-K through 12th grade, in landlots 68, 69, 164, 165, 166, 180, and 181 of the 18th District. Property is located on the southwest side of Veterans Memorial Highway, east and west sides of Hickory Trail, north side of Queen Mall Road, the east and west sides of Azalea Drive, north side of Black Hawk Trail, and on the east and south side of Black Hawk Court. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to use Z-71 or SLUP 10? Let's record, so there's three people opposed. Four. Let's record, so there's four people opposed. All those written addresses to the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Again, good afternoon this time. I said good morning. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams with the law firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bailey, and I represent SAE. I'm proud to represent SAE School in connection with this application for rezoning and an application for a special land use permit. application for a special land use permit. Mr. Jimmy Arispe, who's the CEO and head master of the school, is here with me. Actually, he wears so many hats, I couldn't name them all, but he's with me here today so we can respond to any questions you may have at the appropriate, at the appropriate time. As most of you are aware, SAE is an established and highly regarded private educational institution, which for years has been searching for a permanent home in this, in this sub area of Cobb County. And then what they've been looking for is a permanent, purpose-built, well-designed school as its home. And they've had some interim locations, they've had some disappointments with respect to some properties they, they thought they would be able to entitle and it just simply didn't turn out for them. With these applications today, what we have is an assemblage of approximately 48.69 acres of property and it's well-suited for SAE's stated purposes. And as you know, your, your staff has recommended that the, both the zoning and the, and the special land use permit application be approved. A preponderance of this 48 acres, as you can see by the zoning map that's being displayed now, are zoned commercially, oriented commercially and within the confines of a neighborhood activity center under areas under the future land use map and zoning map. And in reality, whether they're zoned or not, it's certainly a transitional area with, with of course residential back towards the southern end of that. During the penance of this application, we've established dialogues with numerous groups. When you have a 48 acre assemblage that's as diverse and as oddly configured as this, it's hard to touch base with everyone. So what we've tried to do is consolidate our meetings around the Mableton Improvement Coalition, who has guided us in the right direction in terms of people who have issues and folks who have problems and folks who have questions. And hopefully we've been able to answer those, those questions. In addition to the dialogue with, with the Mableton Improvement Coalition, we've had a dialogue with the county's professional staff. Now, the Mableton Improvement Coalition has approved or adopted a position of neutrality here, and I like to say that's tantamount to approval and, but the thing is not, it's not tantamount to a recommendation for denial. So, so they're, they're neutral here, which, which I think is a, is a good thing. And as late as this weekend, Robin Meyer of MIG provided me with some additional, additional issues that they want us to present. It's not necessarily part of the stipulation letter, but I hope to incorporate them into my presentation. To the extent that I don't, I'm quite sure she will. With respect to the discussions and dialogue, we have drafted a rather recent stipulation letter that was submitted last week on, on July the 26th. An SAE is amenable to those stipulations becoming conditions and a part of the grant, not only of the rezoning, but of the special land use permit as well. First of all, the, the property will be utilized specifically and exclusively for school purposes. Some of the massing plans and the architectural renderings and elevations that you receive with our site plan showed an amphitheater. I won't say that's, that's on our wish list, but it, but it's on a list of possibilities, but I don't want to be held to that because there's a possibility that amphitheater may not be built and I wanted to make that, make that plain to you right now. If we could put it on the site plan, Dave, when you get a chance. The, the site plan reflects that this assemblage will be developed in three separate, three separate phases. The first phase will begin with a warehouse. It's located, as you can see, on the, on the northwestern part of the property, up near the, the top there. This is a warehouse. It's about 97, 98,000 square feet in, in size. It's perfectly situated in terms of us being able to retrofit and rehab it and repurpose it for, for school uses. The property is going to be developed in, in three phases, as you can see. The first phase is going to be probably, well, not probably, we anticipate opening in 2017 and we'll do our darndest to do that. And I can promise you, our headmaster, Arispe, is certainly headed toward that direction. The Phase 1 that you see depicted here on this, along with Phase 2 and 3, Phase 1 will be about a $21 million project in and of itself. The, the property will be used exclusively before a private school as long as owned and operated by SAE. Any subsequent uses, if for whatever reason SAE decides to divest itself of this property, will have to come back through the rezoning or other business process, whatever your staff determines. And that's a, that's a stipulation, a condition that, that the Mableton Improvement Coalition were interested in. We're not duplicitous or disingenuous and we don't have some ulterior motives, but some of these properties had to be rezoned to classifications because they had no present ability for entitlement or utilization because of their positioning within a neighborhood activity center and you know how that goes. So as a technical housekeeping matter, some of these are zoned and, and I guess since they're not in Phase 1, they could be considered as standalones and utilized for commercial purposes, but I'm telling you, and it's part of our stipulations at school, school use only. And that, that was important to Mableton Improvement Coalition. The school site will begin development of Track 1, Phase 1, and the building I said was, I think I said 97, 98, it's 96,945 square feet with associated parking, outside classroom areas and sports fields. Ultimately, we think that Phase 1 will have 750 students and approximately 800 faculty and staff. We've agreed that if for any reason it exceeds the 750 students, that we'll conduct an additional independent traffic evaluation for that and ultimately for Tracks 2 and 3. We have submitted, of course, along with the application, a traffic impact study prepared by Calix that was filed concurrently with the, the application for rezoning. The buildings are going to be consistent with the architectural style and composition that I've handed out to you and what I've handed out are what call massing plans. Frankly, that's terminology I wasn't exactly familiar with, but, but we've got the, the first three renderings, elevations of the school buildings themselves and the balance of the exhibits for the massing plans, which really show you bird's eye views or groundhog eye views, just depending on what your, what your perspective is, but gives you an idea of the positioning of the buildings and juxtaposition to, to the various streets thrown and in juxtaposition to each of the other buildings as well. This is not in my stipulation letter. I do have a, the formulation of a, of a landscape oversight committee, but we've also decided to set up a, a architectural oversight committee, simply because even though these are renderings and elevations that give you an idea of what the school's going to look at or look like, it doesn't really cover the, the composition, the materials, the colors. And so we'll have a, an architectural oversight committee that'll be comprised of a representative of, of SAE, a representative of Mableton Improvement Coalition, a representative of the Community Development Agency with commissioners, district commissioner being the final arbiter with respect to that. And that's not in my stipulations, but, but I wanted that to be very clear to you. Signage, of course, the, the main signage will be along the frontage on Veterans Memorial. It'll be ground-based monument-style signage. It'll be irrigated, it'll be lighted, it'll be incorporated into the landscape plan. We're also going to have additional signage along other points of ultimate ingress and egress that will be smaller in size and will be just announcing the coming development of the phase that it's, that it particularly describes, particularly on Hickory Trail, announcing additional future development of Track 2. Landscaping, I've kind of told you about that. We'll have a landscape oversight committee, the same participants will be in that, but we wanted to have two committees and maybe people by the same folks. It may not. I mean, someone may appoint different folks with different areas of expertise, but a representative of MIG, representative of us, one of community development with the commissioner again to be the final decision, decision maker. And when I say landscaping, I'm, I'm talking about landscaping in, in terms of, of the overall development of the property during the plan review process. There may be some minutia in, in other plannings as we go through the, the process and the build-out and development that will be added as well. DOT has asked for, doggone it, this is the third one, I've run out of time, Mr. Chairman, but I'm going to wrap it up real quick, I promise. Compliance with everything DOT has asked, which means 40 feet from the center line of the, of, of the roadway center line on Queen Mill Road, we will have review and approval on internal traffic circulation plan, and that is included on this exhibit that you see right here. It shows the drop-off and, and pickup of, of students. And we've also agreed to do whatever we can to ensure that there's signalization at the intersection of Buckner Road and Veterans Memorial Highway, but we were a little taken aback when we got that, that part of the county's wish list and, and MIG's wish list was that we contribute $100,000 to that. And I'm not in a position, Mr. Arispe's not in a position to agree to that. That was, that was new to us. Will, will give us some thought, but we really want that. But until we get that, for school events, traffic events, in terms of athletic activities in the school itself, we will have a, hate to call it a rent-a-cop, but a, but a, but a police enforcement official who's off-duty who will, who will take care of traffic situations. Deceleration lane on Veterans Memorial, sidewalk, curb and gutter, the usual stipulations regarding no parking off-site during construction. We've got a carpool finder service, HOV for three lanes, students for more. Now, we've probably got the most complicated pickup and drop-off scenario you have ever read in your life. I understood it. My wife read it last night. She says, "That just doesn't make sense to me." And I said, "Well, you need to read it more closely." She did and she still didn't understand it, but Mr. Arispe understands it, his staff does, and it's worked for them before in terms of how this is set up. It's, it's very well calculated. It's very much complicated, but the students and the parents understand it, which is, which is important. Compliance with stormwater management, we have to connect the sewer because it's in the basement, in the basement, in the basin. We'll be submitting a photometric plan. We've got the construction hours set out, no, no building on Sundays or national holidays. We're going to formulate a protocol for the co-utilization of the buildings and the, and the athletic fields as well. Our, our hours are 7:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. MIG has asked, except at the southwest corner where the warehouse is, as you can see in Phase 1, in Black Hawk Trail, instead of at 7:00, they would like for any activities outside to begin at, at noon there, and I think the residents have, had input into that. So to wrap it up, the district commissioner will make minor modifications. We've got boilerplate provisions that you usually utilize on that. So to close, SAE has received an enormous amount of public support for this. Whoever is here today in opposition to it, you've got my pledge and Jimmy Arispe's pledge that we will meet with them and address and hopefully resolve their concerns. But we do ask that you follow your professional staff's recommendation, use of planning commission, recommend that the application be approved. And then one more thing in closing, I just wanted to tell you, it's good to be back here.
It's good to be back.
Hi, yeah. Thank you very much.
It's my job to tell him, "Wrap it up, Garvis."
It's wrapped up. Just, just please.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's hear from the opposition now. We'll add about three and a half minutes to their time should they need it. Thank you for your patience. Give us your name, please.
My name is Jim Butler. I live at 520 Villa Avenue in Mableton and I'm also the owner of that property. It is near this area and also in the Veterans Memorial Corridor. With all due respect to Mr. Sam, I would like to say horse bucky to what he had to say. There are so many objections to this property, this projected development, I hardly know where to start, but let's start with the corridor. It was discussed earlier with the Elite Auto, what the appropriate uses are on this corridor. 1.7 miles to the, to the west of this proposed development is Leland Elementary School and across the street, the Kids Are Kids Private Daycare. If you live in this area or if you commute through it, you know, it's just been a tremendous mistake to build a school on a four-lane, busy commuter United States highway. It's a disaster for the people who live there. It is an inconvenience for the people who travel through and most importantly of all, it's dangerous for the kids who go to those schools. And I drove it this morning on the way here. The flashing yellow lights are up, but there are already kids breaking across the highway. When Leland lets out, they have, they put in a yellow light there, they have monitors to, to monitor the traffic to make sure that it's safe. Buses come out 10 or 15 at a time when they finally stop traffic. Traffic's backed up all the way to Dodge and Road and beyond for that. Most of that is for Leland, but across the street at Kids Are Kids, you have vans, you have numerous parents coming to pick up or drop off their children. It's just not a good idea to build a school on that busy a highway. Now, let's look at the project itself. Oh, by the way, there's an alternative. If you go half a mile east from here, there's another private school where you turn into Brock, if you go up, turn left on Brockner and then right, there's an access road behind the Walgreens and behind the Wendy's. And on the left of that is a private school. That's a safe place. You're off the main highway, you don't have, when you leave, if you want to turn right or even left onto Veterans Memorial, you can, but you don't have to. You can go to Brockner, turn left there and then proceed where you want to go. That's an appropriate location for a school, not on the busy highway. Now, looking at the plan that's been introduced here, and by the way, I didn't get a letter and, and for the esteemed gentleman to say that, that the fact that the Neighborhood Improvement Committee is neutral on this, is tantamount to improve approval is nonsense. Approval is approval. Being neutral is not approval. I haven't been contacted by those people. I haven't gotten a letter. I'm with a person who lives in the, in the development. He hasn't gotten a letter. I own two rental homes in the Black Hawk Hills area. Hickory Trail, which is the only entrance of any practicality to that neighborhood, serves about 75 people. There are about 75 homes in there, more than 75 people. In addition to that, just to our east is a gated community. They have a back entrance and for whatever reason, they decided not to gate the back entrance. So if you want to get into that development without having to go through the gate, you come through Black Hawk Hills all the way to the back and then take a right turn and then you can go in. So in addition to all the traffic from 75 homes, we have that additional traffic. Now, Veterans Highway at this area is a long downhill slope. Speed limit's 45 miles an hour. People routinely go 55 and 60 down that slope. I can't imagine, even with the, what did he call it, an exit lane? How are we going to get safety for the people who are turning in, for the people who are turning out? And then once they turn in, what are they going to run into? This proposal includes both sides of Hickory. Well, are there going to be, what happens when there's a sporting event? How many hundreds of people may want to come to that? Where are they going to park? And the, and the warehouse, kids are going to go across Hickory Trail to access that? That's nuts. If there's a different access, there is a side road here, if there's a different access to this property, it might make sense to put a school there, but it needs to be off the main highway. And like I said, once people turn into Hickory, how many parents' cars are going to be there? How many vans or buses are going to be there? What about special events? It's going to be a nightmare for, for it access and the same thing going out. People may have to wait, I don't know, five, 10, 15 minutes just to get up to Veterans Memorial so that they can get in, get out and, and go to shopping, whatever. This project is just ill-advised in the way that it's been presented. I fear for the safety of the children. It's inconvenient to the people who live there. It's flawed from the beginning in putting a, a school on this busy a highway and I ask you to deny the application. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Robin Meyer with the Mableton Improvement Coalition. We appreciate very much Garvis including in his remarks most of the things that we covered. I just want to clarify a couple of them for the record. The first is that whenever there are any differences between the site plan and the drawings that are called the massing plans, that the site plan itself would take precedence over the drawings. And specifically, there will be no amphitheater in Phase One. That the tracks that are subject to rezoning in this application would be, there would be a condition attached that it is for private school use only. Thus, any other use would need to come back through a public hearing process. And as far as the traffic light is concerned, that has been the single biggest issue that we've heard from, from the neighbors. We believe that the off-duty officer at Hickory Trail will help with the left turning into and out of the school on Hickory Trail. But in the end, there desperately needs to be a traffic light at Buckner Road. That's, I understand that there are metrics that have to be met, and I certainly hope that DOT can keep a close eye on them and that those metrics will soon go our way. And then, just one last thing is that I would like to point out that the GIS map that you're seeing on your screen is not exactly correct if you compare it to the site plan. There are three lots directly below the warehouse building that are not included right. That little hand is on those three lots. Those are included in the site plan, so I have to assume they're also included in the zoning application. So, if we could touch that up before the Board of Commissioners meeting, it would help those of us who've gone cross-eyed late at night trying to figure out exactly where the lines go. Thanks.
Thank you, Robin. Do we have another speaker? Give us your name, please.
Jolie Thompson, and I'm the director of primary school that is less than 10 of a mile from the site that we are discussing. So, we have also a lot of concerns regarding the traffic. We, as a school, we have at least 140 parents in our school. And if, we are located directly across the street from that location, and it's already a busy intersection, and we have different hours, parents don't always come at the same time. So, if we already have traffic issues with only 140 parents that we have, I can only imagine, as they say, 750 students plus faculty, 100 faculty, the traffic definitely will be a nightmare. Also, that road, as they were saying, is really a hill. And when people drive by there, like, really 55, 60, sometimes even faster. So, the safety of the children and the families, in case of evacuation of the building, how are they going to evacuate 750 students into that busy street? So, public safety also plays a part in our concerns. Also, in their application, they say the land will be used for a private school, pre-K and AP. And as, you know, they are having also a preschool, they're operating as a preschool infant through, I don't know at this point, but they have also a preschool operating in that school. And in less than three miles, we have five other preschools. We have a private school, we have field private school, in less than three miles, I think it's two and a half miles. We have public schools, middle schools, and as the commissioners say, how many schools do you need in the same area? We have over 10 schools between private, public, and preschools, all serving the same community. So, even though this is going to be a big, you know, obviously a big private school with athletics, and it could benefit the community as well, there are many other sites that could benefit better since we are overpopulated by schools right now. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have a couple of minutes left. Any other speakers? Okay, not seeing and hearing any, we'll close the public portion. This is in District Four, so Gault Porter will handle our discussion for us.
Thank you, Mike. Let's see, I think before I start discussing it, I'd like Jimmy Risby to come up and just give us two minutes on the school and what you do and how you're a little bit different.
Thanks for having me. As Gault mentioned, my name is Jimmy Risby, and I'm the head of schools for the SAE school. And we opened in August 2013. We're a year-round school. As Garvis mentioned, with our carpooling plan, that it's a little complicated, and it's complicated because it's different. We're different. We operate year-round, as I said, and that spreads out the traffic flow for us and the arrival and departure of kids and families. So, we are a project-based learning school. Our kids take martial arts. Our kids are creating things instead of just sitting down and memorizing information and facts and spitting it out on a test. So, we do things a bit differently and are very, very proud of that. We started with about 100 kids in August 2013, and we have close to 300 kids, preschool through 11th grade, starting on Monday. We, as Garvis mentioned, when this, when we finish developing this facility, it will house approximately 750 preschool through 12th grade students. And I respect all the opposition and the input from the community. Maybe I'm missing something, however. I thought schools brought spurred development and brought spurred housing and brought spurred pride in the community. And our philosophy is rising tides lifts all boats. And I believe that's why you see Home Depot and Lowe's setting up shop next to each other and QT and racetracks and car dealerships and fast food restaurants, the like. And so, I appreciate and encourage competition, if you will, whether it's private schools or public schools. It makes all of us better. If we were the only one in town, then heck, we wouldn't have to do anything for anybody or listen to anybody's comments or inputs or suggestions. And so, that alarms me a bit, but I guess, hey, this isn't our first rodeo, so we're kind of used to it as well. But really appreciate the time and the opportunity to come before you all with this proposal. I think this is just a magnificent place for this type of school, our type of school. And we are a middle-of-the-road, if you will, private school. Our tuition is about $10,500, average is about $10,500 per year. And we do have scholarships for students. And so, we like to say that we're a private school for the middle-class family, and we hope to stay about that tuition point for as long as we possibly can. We're making a good financial decision so that we can do that 20, 30, 40 years from now. And so, we look to be a crown jewel for this part of Southern Cobb County. We're on Mableton Parkway right now in a rented facility. And we want to be around, and we want to be a place where people, private or public schools, staff, people, community, can come and share our facility, share our building. We're by no means, while we are a private institution, we are a nonprofit school, and so nobody owns the school. Our board, our board is responsible for oversight of the school and have entrusted me to run the school. And so, we hope to become a part of the community for a long, long time.
Thank you, Jimmy. And I was asked to just clarify one thing. You do have kids as young as infants.
We do, yes. We have our staff who bring children, their own children, to the school, and most of the infant classroom is, I think maybe we just have one infant who's not a staff child.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I think that's all the questions I have for you. I just wanted to give everybody up here a little bit more information on your school.
Sure. Awesome. Thank you for the opportunity. Good to see everybody.
I think I'm going to ask Ashley White to come up, and we'll discuss a little bit of traffic concerns, since that seems to be an ongoing issue here.
Ashley White with the DOT.
Thank you. And I know you're investigating some things, you know, possibilities for them that, you know, have been looked at, and I know that takes time and there's no answers back yet. I know there's a possibility of a traffic light, if it's warranted, just for the school. That was one possibility. Another is maybe putting up the flashing school signs, if that is warranted. And I know all these, by warranted, I mean it has to go through a whole process and see whether it meets the minimum standards for adding that. You know, what's your thoughts on the traffic here and how this may affect it?
Well, we do have specific criteria that has to be met if flashing beacons are to be installed. And right now, they don't meet those requirements. But I think as the property is developed and they include sidewalks and things of that nature, there's a possibility they can have flashing beacons there. I personally would prefer to see a signal at that intersection with, I think it's Buckner Road. And you brought to my attention that GDOT is, I guess, proposing to put a signal there at some point.
Well, not really proposing. The community's hoping for one there.
Okay. Yeah, so I haven't reached out to GDOT yet, but I will reach out to them and see if that's something that they can incorporate into this plan.
Okay, okay. And what do you think, do you think it's necessary to have the off-duty officer directing traffic? Or have you looked that deep into it yet? Or is that something that would come at plan review?
It's necessary. I would prefer to have the flashing beacons, but I guess in the early stages of the school opening, we definitely need some kind of, someone directing traffic. It's definitely necessary, yes.
Okay, okay. Because I know that's something they have stipulated to doing if it's necessary, so.
Right.
And I guess we'll leave that to DOT to analyze and determine the hours that they need somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, since you're in the best position to figure that out. Okay, and I'll just mention, I pointed out something I just saw late last night. There's a little typo in the DOT comments, and you're going to correct that typo before the Board of Commissioners. It's not a major deal. It was a cut-and-paste kind of error where it says Blackhawk Trail when it should say Hickory Trail.
Right, I'll correct that.
Yeah, so that's minor. Does anybody have any questions for Ashley before I let her sit down? All right. Good enough, appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. I have a question for John. The special land use permit will cover both the infant ages as well as the regular private school, or do they need a separate land use permit?
This is really, the special land use permit is really just for the private school that takes the place of K12.
Okay.
What you can do is put a condition in there to limit the number of children who are less than pre-K age on the property. I'm not sure if Jimmy has a number or not.
Okay, we'll see. Come on back up, Jimmy.
So, the question is, do we have a number for kids younger than kindergarten? Is that correct? Yeah, we would have, I don't believe we would ever have, even when we're at capacity at 750 students in that facility for more than 300, four years old and younger.
More than how many?
300.
300? Okay, that's a lot.
It is a lot.
Yeah, that's almost half, you know, Skip said 45% or so of your 750. So, that's really a huge part of it.
Right. I don't want to give a low number and then us go above that, and then we're having issues with it. But I can tell you that, as with most of the schools in the area, there's waiting lists. And so, we don't want to have to turn families away, and so we want to be able to build it for that demand.
Okay. Out of your current, I think you said you have about 350 kids right now?
We have 300. And then, we only have 60, we only have 60, maybe 70 by the end of the week, preschool-age children.
Okay. So, that's more like 20%.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going to go above 150. And actually, our classrooms that we're building in that facility aren't going to be for more than 150, and we're not going to be licensed for more than 150. But again, the demand along the Veterans Memorial corridor is pretty, pretty high.
Okay, so we'll have to, go ahead.
I have a question. Out of all these 300 children that are below pre-K age, are they all kind of filtered into kindergarten? And, okay, so it's just really like launching pad?
That's great. It is a pipeline for us, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Were we talking, you said only your staff brought a child in or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
How did we get to 300 then?
Again, when we, when we move locations, we do believe that the demand for our preschool specifically is going to be exponential.
Okay, when, give me the ages you're talking about.
Infants to four-year-olds.
So, that's not pre, okay. So, you're going to be, you're going to be a daycare center.
I'm sorry?
You're going to be a daycare center.
Part of our facility is, yes, ma'am. We do call it, we do refer to it as a preschool because, as John pointed out, those students would be going into our, into our K12 program. There's some smart infants, let me tell you.
I have a question. Can I ask? And this is outside of zoning, but just out of curiosity and because this is a different scenario than what we're used to seeing, how are the kids younger than age two or maybe four and under in terms of state licensing and so forth? How is that different than just a school that we're used to seeing where it's maybe five years old and up?
Significantly, and it's actually the below five years old, which carry with it the same oversight, if you will, from the DECAL, which is the state, the state oversight department, Department of Early Childhood and Learning. And so, we have to, as young child providers, have to meet very, very stringent requirements in oversight, and they come out for frequent oversight visits to make sure that we're adhering to all the policies and regulations. Versus K12, as a K12 private institution, the only oversight, if you will, that we have is for accreditation purposes, which is by SACS or GACE or Accrediting Agency like that. And it's really up to the private school whether or not they do try to get those accreditations, which we do. And so, we will have that oversight as well, but not all K12. Private institutions have to go that route.
But you're working through both, obviously, right now, so that wouldn't change?
No, 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 not at all.
Just be a growth in the number of students.
Not at all. That's correct. We're under DECAL's, under DECAL's oversight right now. And then, we have the GACE accreditation, which we got here one, and now we're in the process of getting the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools accreditation as well.
Jimmy, how long do you think it'll take you to get to 200, 300 children?
So, right now, we do have, as I said, about 60 preschool students. It's hard, it's hard to tell. It's hard to tell. I would be very surprised if day one, when we don't open up in this facility, that we don't have 150 easily preschool students.
Is that going to be, are they going to be in a separate campus from the older children, which they should be?
Right. So, again, per, well, this is actually, I think, part of the engineering and architectural requirements. And Rock can clarify this too, because we went through some of this, these questions early, earlier in our current facility, that the structure, the interior structure of the preschool is, holds with it different requirements from a K12 structure. And so, when we're modifying this existing warehouse, it will have to be modified. this existing warehouse, it will have to be modified differently than the, for the preschool, differently than for, for the rest of the K-12 structure. But specifically to answer your question, Mr. Terry, they will be housed in the same warehouse initially.
This is all with oversight from the state licensing boards, separate from our zoning. That's the only reason I ask, because I wanted to make sure there wasn't something we needed to be concerned about. But it sounds like it's all covered by the other things that you have to go through.
Yeah. Believe me, yeah. Rock is going to come out and, and require us to do much more than, than anybody. And, and, and so our architect has to adhere to those requirements, our engineers as well, and then of course, DECAL being another layer.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions? Okay, you can have a seat again.
I think I understand why Yoli is so concerned. I think it's pretty clear. You're apparently, Jimmy, you're apparently going to compete favorably price-wise in that very young children's market.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And from-
I'm sure that'll be true. Okay.
Let me ask a question. You said that when you get to 750, you could have as many as you said, 350 young children, four ages?
300, 300, yes, sir.
300 daycare. Conversely, I mean, it sounds like you're having a hard time really making projections because, you know, of, of the new market and so forth that you're kind of moving into. But I'm just wondering, conversely, when you get to 750, what are you going to be thinking about how many, how many, you know, K through 12 kids you might have?
Yeah. The, the first few years is, is going to be pretty telling for us as far as our projections.
You're kind of building the pipeline.
How we grow. And so, right now, our largest bulk of students are at the, the sixth and seventh grade level, which we have about 40, 45 students collectively in sixth and seventh grade. So we do plan, when we reach 750, we have to stay, we have to stay at 750 in that building for, for three to five years financially to, in order to expand. And the expansion includes over on the Queens Mill side. And that's where our high school will, will, will be developed. And so there's, it's not going to be kids on top of kids forever and ever. But, but financially, we do have to, to max out that facility initially. And again, for, for three to five years in order for our numbers to work.
So, so your strategy to grow, sounds like it's to really emphasize, really to emphasize bringing in the younger kids, the preschool kids. And then that's going to generate the cash flow, whatever you need, in order to expand, to be able to take better care of the older kids as you build the new facility?
I, I think that's a fair characterization, not only-
So they're kind of the engine for your growth?
Yes, sir. Not, not only of ours, but, but I would, I would imagine that, that most of the private school's growth has, has been charted like that.
Okay. Thank you, Jimmy.
You're welcome.
You can have a seat. I have a question for John again. When we've added this pre-K to other special land use permits in the past, have we put a limit on the number of pre-K? Or, or is there anything you recommend?
The one that comes to mind is the, the private school we did on Macedonia Road a couple of years ago. But that school's a lot smaller than this one.
Right.
And I don't recall how many they had. They did have a number. But that compared to this is way different because this is so big.
Right.
If you do consider putting conditions on it for the pre-K kids, you may want to say a maximum of 300, you know, if there's any more than 300 to ask them back to the Board of Commissioners to be approved and resolved.
Okay. Okay. And I do remember we put a, a number on that Macedonia case as well. And I don't remember what the number was now. So. Okay. Well, anybody have input on the number that we should?
The number doesn't really bother me so much, not in the pre-K, because I don't remember us putting a number on like the churches that have come in that have the pre-K. So I don't remember us putting a number on them. As long as they meet all the requirements, the state requirements and the county requirements, then I think-
I can say on pre, on some of just the land use permits, I know we've put some limits on-
This one's sort of hard because like he said, this is a new, this is sort of like the, this is where they're making their money.
Right.
In order to do the private school. So if you wanted to do 300, that's fine.
Okay. Any other input on that?
As long as they meet their licensing requirements, which they will.
Everything they have to meet, yeah.
Okay. You going to weigh in on it, Mike?
This is not what I thought it was. This 150 to 300 infants, which is really a daycare facility, I've never heard of us approving anything quite like this. This is really a different animal.
I thought it was much smaller till we got up here. So that's why I'm struggling a little bit. I thought it was a-
Yeah, the SLUP, the SLUP is, John, the SLUP, can we do the SLUP for, put a time limit at one year, see how it looks or not? It's a SLUP, so that's a little different.
We can, we can. We've done that in the past for certain things. But with this, there's such a huge financial obligation to begin with. It'd be hard for them to come back every year and do it. No, I'm not even sure if they can get financing if this only good for one year.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think they-
What would it, what would it do if we limited, instead of 300, something less? 200?
Or maybe 250, which is a third.
This is, this is, we've never seen an animal quite like this. Not in a school of any kind.
But they're year-round. It's a different type of school.
They're not off for the summer or that. So that's why we don't see it. I think that's what makes it okay to do it.
I think part of the problem that, that I'm seeing is that for something like this, which is a little bit more unusual from what we've seen, we're kind of missing a business plan, which we don't normally acquire. But if I saw a business plan, that would help me understand this a little better.
I think, I think we're getting outside of what we need to be doing from a zoning perspective.
And I think that's the essence of the problem.
And as far as the number of kids, if we kept it to a third or maybe, you know, 25% of what the total student population would be?
Can we do a percent rather than a total?
Yeah.
Why don't we do a percent? If, if Jimmy thinks that over a few years, it could grow to 750 kids, maybe we do a percent of that number as a maximum rather than a number of 300. I don't know. What do you think? I mean, John?
I kind of like the percent. It works for me.
It's going to count.
I like how they point at each other. Too bad we don't have code enforcement here.
And we should be careful.
They can say the number of kids they have. So, so that, I guess that would prevent it from going right away to all daycare and no private school, which, you know, the SLUP's really geared more towards private school than, than a land use permit for daycare. So I think it's reasonable to put some limit on, on the number. I'm thinking maybe no more than a third of the students be pre-K.
250.
I'm just thinking using the percentage or, or third, you know, that-
I think a number is better now that I think about it.
Okay, 250. And I, I think Jimmy can probably live with that, can't you? Okay. He says, let's see what other, I think, I think they covered most of the other issues that were still outstanding. I, I do want to thank them for working diligently for months with all the community and back and forth and, and the community for working with SAE on, on so many items. Of course, this is about the time we say we really like the school, but we're going to deny it because that's our habit. Just kidding, Jimmy.
Jimmy's the hardest working man in the private school industry. I will tell you that right now. He has worked very hard to grow his school and is to be commended for that. He does, he does a great, he and his staff do a great job. Mr. Butler raised some questions about travel being dangerous to the public and the schoolchildren and so forth. The school that he, I think the school that he referenced on Buckner Road, I believe, is Whitfield. And he said, that's a perfect place for a school, and it wouldn't have the same impact from a travel standpoint and, and so forth as this school would. I couldn't disagree more. I've been at Whitfield when school is coming and going and all the parents and the buses and so forth. And it's, it's hectic. And, and at either end of that road, you have Oakdale Road on one end and you have Veterans Memorial on the other. At those two major intersections, when school has let out, it is packed because of Whitfield. So, but it, it doesn't last very long. The buses come, the parents come, and, and it cleans out relatively quickly. It's, you're going to have that wherever you have a school. And contrary to what we heard here, Cobb County builds schools, very large schools, on major thoroughfares all the time. And it's just a matter of traffic control. I think Ashley is going to look into something on, at Buckner and, and Veterans Memorial, whether we need a light or not. Can only be proven over time after the school has been constructed. You can't just come in and automatically say, let's put a light there. It has to be justified. And it may very well need to be. We may need a light there. That will be justified over time. And I would certainly support a light there. I've been there trying to get out of that, that Buckner owned veterans many times. And it's tough certain times of the day. But I think all that is, it, it happens early morning, it happens late afternoon, it doesn't last very long. It happens at every school in Cobb County. Jimmy's SAE school is no different. So I wouldn't be too overly concerned about the travel issue for the public and for the schools. That's all I had to say. Anybody else?
I, I was going to say, I forgot to just clarify that, that this project's really a three-phase project. And the site plan that we're approving is just for phase one. The other two phases will need to come back. Also, the zoning does not cover this entire thing. It only covers the parcels that are currently GC that need to be rezoned. And that's three kind of spot, spots of, of property that it covers. And I guess one other thing I didn't mention in the DOT comments, it talks about upgrading Blackhawk Trail because the original site plan had the parking lot coming out on Blackhawk Trail. They've reworked the site plan and it now comes out on Hickory Trail, keeping the traffic off the residential street back there. So I don't, and it, and I think it said in there if there's access to it. So I don't think I have to change the comments. I just wanted to make that clear. There's also a comment regarding traffic light. And that comment is if the traffic light's specific to the school, that they pay 100%. But I think if you're talking about reworking Buckner, or Buckner Road to, to come down and the site working, which this site doesn't even touch that intersection right now, they'd have to acquire some more property, but, and, and work out something. I think that's a whole different scenario as to whether, who would pay for a traffic light because the community really needs one there already. And the addition of the school may help justify the warrant for that light with Georgia DOT. But, but they'd have to put in a road to connect over there. So just want to make those couple of comments about it. But I think with all of that, I'm ready to make a motion. I'll make two separate motions since we have zoning and a SLUP for, motion regarding Z-71 to recommend approval subject to all of the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict for private school use only, subject to the letter from Garvis L. Samms Jr. dated July 26, 2016. Site plan and architecture to be submitted as an other business item. The site plan as attached to Mr. Samms' letter regarding SLUP 10 shall be approved for the portion of Z-71 that falls within phase one, because we already have a site plan for that. District Commissioner to make minor modifications, except for those that increase overall square footage of a non-residential project, cause a reduction in the size of an approved buffer adjacent to the property that is zoned in the same or more restrictive designated zoning, cause relocation of a structure closer to the property line, an adjacent structure that is zoned in the same or more restrictive zoning, increase the height of a building that is adjacent to a property that is zoned the same or more restrictive zoning, change in access location to a different road. And I think that's the, trying to make sure I didn't forget anything on that motion off of the notes. Just give me a second. I think what we talked about only applies to the SLUP. I think so. So that's my motion for Z-71.
Okay. So the comment about the number of children will be on the SLUP?
That will be on the SLUP.
I got you. Okay. So we have a motion. Any other, have a second, any other comments, questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Okay. Now we'll do the SLUP.
Okay. With regard to SLUP 10, recommend approval subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The site plan submitted with the letter from Garvis L. Samms Jr. dated June 26, 2016. The District Commissioner may approve minor modifications as provided in Mr. Sam's letter for phase one only. The site plan for areas identified in phase two and three shall be submitted as another business item. All stipulations in the letter from Garvis L. Samms Jr. dated July 26, 2016, not otherwise in conflict. With regard to Mr. Sam's letter and attachments, the site plan takes precedence over the drawings. Any referenced in amphitheater shall be deleted. The applicant shall establish an architectural review committee for the purpose of reviewing and approving the design and color of the converted warehouse with it, with the District Commissioner having final approval. The committee shall be comprised of a representative of the applicant, Mableton Improvement Coalition, and Community Development. With regard to the play court at the southwest corner of the building and the area along block Blackhawk Trail marked as playfield/future parking activities shall start no earlier than, than noon on Sunday. And there's hours for it for the other, but we want a little later on Sunday in the letter. Any lighting specific to the playfields or play courts shall only be on during hours of operation provided for in Mr. Sam's letter. With regard, yeah, we don't need that one. So with regard to pre-K students, no more than 250 will be allowed in phase one.
Here we have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions, call for the vote? Okay. Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Garvis. Good luck to you. Why don't we take, we've been at this a while again. Why don't we take a quick 10-minute break and then we'll come back and try to wrap up? Okay, we're back after a brief break. We'll try to finish up here. We only have a few more cases to do. John, what's next on the agenda, please?
Yes, sir. LEP 13, Marietta Affordable Housing, request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults and more vehicles than permitted by the code. And then lot 650 of the 17th District, property is located on the east side of Virginia Place and southwest of Meadowbrook Lane. Is the applicant present? The director said the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 13? The director says no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in? in?
You've been here a long time, haven't you? I saw you early this morning.
My name is Kathy Pacora, we didn't realize how complex zoning and land use issues really were. We, I'm actually a property manager for, representing Mr. Collins on this property, 491, and also the other property, the LU, I think it's fourteen, right? We're actually the owner on that one, so they're both asking for the same issue. What we have is, we have some students, we actually had some college students in this property, and they're Life University students, as well as the Kennesaw State students that are at the Marietta, the old Southern Poly campus, and so, they are requesting if they could add another student, or two, actually, we'd like to do four, in there to help ease the cost of housing for the students, and so that's what we're looking for. With the property, we have actually, we've just started managing, I guess, over, a little over a year or two ago, we actually have turned the properties around, we do our regular drive-bys to make sure that the exteriors are maintained, we mow those lawns, there's no trash, they park on the hard surfaces, you know, there's no parties, no fire pits, they're hard-working, very good students, all, you know, the top of their classes, very serious, you know, wanting to work and complete their education. So, that's what we're looking for, is additional students in there so that they can offset the cost of housing.
You have lots of time, is anything else you'd like us to know?
Is there any?
Anything else you'd like us to know about these students? Now, we're just dealing now with the one, LUP-13, we'll have to hear the other one separate.
Oh, okay. Well, they're good students, you know, they're, every time we do a drive-by, there's nothing that warrants a headcount, or, you know, an internal inspection, the properties are maintained well, we got signatures from the surrounding properties, they were all fine with it, because they're just quiet students, they're just good, and so we'd just like to, they'd like to just add a couple more to be able to help them with the cost.
Okay. Thank you. Stay where you are, I'm gonna have some questions for you. Just for the record, anyone here opposed to LUP-13? Not seeing and hearing any, it is, back to this board, and this is in my district too, so I'll handle the discussion here. Kathy, how many in this location for LUP-13, which is the 491 Virginia Place address, how many students live there today?
Right now, there's two in there. When we signed the lease, there were two, we told them about what the code was, because we understand the code, and apparently they'd added another one. When we got a code violation on this, we actually talked to the students, and one student actually just moved out at the end of July. So, currently, there's two, they'd like to add at least one more.
Okay, so, three maximum?
They would like to do four, if they can.
Like to do four, okay, that's what I'm getting at, okay. Currently, you have two?
There's two, and they're correct right now.
And how many cars, how many vehicles on the site?
Well, when we drive, I guess they each have one, but when we do our drive-bys, you know, there's never any cars there, because they're working or they're in school, so, but I would say, I would say that there's, each one has a car, and there's enough hard surface, there's a driveway, and then there's a second pad next to it.
Okay. No, no garages. I've been over there a couple of times, in fact, and I did park long enough to see some of the students coming and going. I do think they're nice kids, I watched them, wasn't there all day, of course, but I have observed them, I think you're telling us the truth about that. It's a nice, middle-class neighborhood, it's a well-maintained neighborhood, I suspect that there's some other rentals in that area as well, on both, both the streets there.
Yeah, there's a ton of rentals.
I can imagine, that's what it looks like. County code is pretty clear, it states that a dwelling has to have three hundred and ninety square feet for every person that lives in a building, every adult, that's for every adult that lives inside a home. The size of this house would allow for three people. Now, when, when the code violation occurred, I understood that there were four living there then. At that point, you were not in, you were out of compliance with the code.
Right, and we went over and talked to those students, they moved one out, and then, when we, we decided to go ahead and apply, see if we could get the land used, but the one student had moved out, and then the third one stayed until he finished college.
Okay, the, are any of the kids who live there, any of the students who live there now related?
No.
Not? Okay. Again, if, if all the kids that live, all the, I shouldn't say kids, see, these are young adults.
They are young adults.
If any of these are unrelated, that could be an issue as well. Code states that you can have only one unrelated adult living there, only one, so that's an issue as well, I think you were out of compliance on that as well, and then, of course, there's the, the code that says you can, you are allowed, based on the size of the home and the zoning category there, you're allowed to have no more than three vehicles. So, you've been out of compliance on several of these issues, I don't know that you are now, but you have been in the past. I don't think we can allow more than three there at a time, not four, and to have the three, you're gonna have to have one of the three be related to the other one, otherwise you can only have two, okay? So, you're gonna have to come into compliance, and we're gonna have to deny your request for the amount and the number of cars that you're asking for. However, we're not hard-hearted, I have checked with the school, I know when the quarter or semester, I think it is, ends. Kennesaw State actually, registration began yesterday for the next semester, and Life, at Life College, Life Chiropractic, that's a little different, their, their system actually begins in mid-September. So, to be fair to the students, I think what we would need to do is deny the request, ask you to come into compliance, and give you ninety days to do that. So, ninety days, if BOC agrees with our recommendation, give you ninety days from BOC's acceptance to come into compliance.
I think they're already in compliance, they're already down to two people.
I'm not sure that they are, they, they don't seem to-
Well, according to the representative, it's, why would we need to allow-
If they're three there, and they're not related, I don't think that's in-
But she says there's only two there now.
But there's two in there right now.
So, they're already in compliance.
But they may already be looking for a third.
Right, and then the-
But their application is for four, that's what the application is.
Right.
I think we have to deny that request.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but you're gonna have to come into compliance, and if you are, that's fine, I'm gonna ask code enforcement, we'll put this in the record, to come back, oh, about mid-November, we'll do it sixteenth or so, and verify whether you are or are not in compliance, but that gives you a full ninety days to work all of this out. We want to be fair to the students, we're not gonna put them on the street right away, but you need to be in compliance no later than November the sixteenth. Okay, so that's what we'll need to do with this one. So, my motion would be to deny, but allow ninety days to come into compliance. Any further discussion? Can I get a second to the motion? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Hope it works out. Code enforcement will be by to see you around mid-November to see how you're doing. Okay, thank you very much. Now, we can go to fourteen, which really is-
It's the same.
The same, and the same would apply there, but just for the record, John, you need to read it into the record, 462 Virginia Place.
LEP-14 Pineapple Luxe LLC, request a land use permit for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults and vehicles than permitted by code in Land Lot 650 of the Seventeenth District. The property is located on the west side of Virginia Place, south of, South Marietta Parkway, the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP-14? Let the director show there's no one opposed.
Okay, how many, Kathy, are living at 462 Virginia?
In that one, there's still four.
Okay. Again, we know the situation, I've just described it, and the same thing would hold true here, you need three hundred and ninety square feet for each adult in the house, that would allow you to have three in the house, so you're out of compliance. I have seen more cars at this site than I did at the other one, and if there are four people there, that would explain it. The cars do need to be on a hardened surface, they have to be properly tagged and licensed, so, or permitted, so you're out of compliance in a couple of areas, so, again, you'll need to come into compliance, but again, I would recommend at least ninety days, or ninety days, to come into compliance, and that would mean, again, November sixteenth is the date I'm gonna choose to come into compliance, and see if we can't do that. We don't want to kick them out, we just want you to be in compliance. The code is pretty clear, this is to prevent boarding houses from springing up inside planted subdivisions, that just simply is not allowed, okay? So, my motion would be for denial, and give them ninety days to come into compliance. Can I get a second? Second, Skip, comment?
Small discussion. I'd like to see him be in compliance right away, I'm parking on hardened surfaces.
I didn't see anybody not parked on hardened surfaces, I will tell you, the street is-
Well, 462 has the driveway and then the tar driveway.
I think, I think you're okay with that.
Yeah, they're on the hard surfaces.
Just make sure that the ninety days is just to allow for the number of adults in the property, and not for any other code violations that they come in.
And I don't want to see them parked on the street, that is a really narrow, I don't think that street even complies with Cobb's current, it's very narrow.
We don't allow, we don't allow any of our tenants at all to park in the street, because they are so narrow.
Well, there weren't the day I was there, the two days I was there, but there were other cars up and down, at other locations, when that occurs, you can hardly get by, so...
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other comments? See, we have a motion, we have a second, for denial, but ninety days to come into compliance, all in favor? Okay, good luck, Kathy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson? Okay, we have some minutes to approve for July 25th and July 13th, as presented. We have a motion and second to accept the minutes, all in favor? We don't, yeah, let's do this with your hands, so those are accepted as presented. Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay, thank you, everyone, we're standing.